Please call the roll.
Mayor Potem Wilcoxen?
Present.
Mayor Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Sweet?
Present.
Councilmember Tucson?
Present.
Councilmember Dee Simmons? Councilmember Jay Simmons? Councilmember King?
Present.
Five present, we have quorum.
Alright, please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their beloved and which is the best, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we stand.
Thank you, alright. Good evening, I will entertain a motion for agenda approval.
I'd like to make a change to the agenda and add an item if possible, or do I have to make the motion first?
Make the motion first, please.
I've moved to approve the agenda.
Is there support? Is movement supported? Okay, Mayor Potem?
I'd like to add a discussion of resolution twenty twenty-three dash two-two-two to the agenda under resolutions, motions, and discussions.
Support.
Are there further changes to the agenda? Alright, seeing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so this evening, we're starting out with a few presentations, which is why we started earlier, so that we could have public comment at the normal times of folks to get here if they needed to get here from work or whatnot. And so our first presentation will be from Amy Sell with an update on our city manager search. I'm gonna step out. Hello, good evening.
Nice to see everyone again on this beautiful rainy evening.
Right.
So thank you for allowing me the time to come in and just review the current applicant so far. And I'm gonna keep it brief, I can't name names or anything like that just because of confidentiality, but hopefully give you enough information to make any decisions that we need to afterwards.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we had a really solid pool of earlier career municipal talent that's currently comfortable with the compensation range as is. The experienced city managers that had, you know, the deeper exceptional backgrounds and experiences that we reached out to had not been interested due to the lower salary range that's currently being offered. I'd say we reached out to around thirty people and around ten of those expressed concerns with the salary. In the end, none of them ended up applying. I think their expectations were more in the one fifty to one seventy range. With that being said, I have about nine, it looks like nine candidates to give a brief overview. And then after I give that overview, we have, I can just let you know what the options are and then decide what we want to do then. Okay, so the first candidate, currently an interim city manager since twenty twenty-three of August, population around twenty thousand for the community, received a bachelor's degree in poly sci and a master's degree in public administration at Eastern Michigan. Compensation expectations are anywhere from a hundred and fourteen thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand. Candidate number two, so their last position, they were a village manager from July of twenty twenty-two through July of twenty twenty-three. Bachelor's degree in human services management is from University of Phoenix. And then a master's degree in public administration is from the University of Michigan Flint. They didn't express or specify a compensation number, but they did say that they would expect their compensation to be on the higher end of the range.
You repeat the degree, the masters in what public administration you said?
Yeah, so the master's degree in public administration is from University of Michigan Flint campus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's number three, right?
That was number two. Alright, moving on, candidate three. Currently a village manager since twenty twenty-one, so roughly two and a half years. Population around thirteen hundred. Has a bachelor of arts from U of M and a master's in public administration from Western Michigan University. Compensation expectations are to receive something in that middle pay range. Alright, candidate number four. Last role was as an operations department administrator from August of twenty twenty-two to May of twenty twenty-three. Has a bachelor's degree in communications from Central Washington University and a master's degree in public education from Evergreen State College. Compensation expectations are a hundred thousand, but would be willing to negotiate based on city's budget. Candidate number five. Currently the planning director for a city since March of two thousand nineteen. Has a bachelor's degree in urban studies and affairs and master's degree in urban planning, both from Wayne State University. Compensation expectation is a hundred and twenty thousand. Alright, candidate number six. Their last position was as the deputy city manager and chief of police for a city from twenty twenty to the beginning of twenty twenty-three. Bachelor's of arts degree with a focus in criminal justice from the University of Pine Bluff in Arkansas. Has a master of arts in public administration from Webster University. Compensation expectations are anywhere from a hundred and six thousand to one seventeen, but is hoping to negotiate. Candidate number seven. Currently a city manager since January of twenty twenty-two. Has a bachelor of arts in polit- in political science from the University of Iowa and a master's in public administration from Clark Atlanta University. Says that his compensation expectations for this role are negotiable. We did have a couple last minute applicants that we're still gathering some information from, so I'm just gonna share what I have. Candidate number eight, currently a village administrator since June of twenty twenty-two. There is no higher education listed past high school on their resume and they were looking for around a hundred and ten thousand. And that's just based on what we have so far. And lastly, candidate number nine, currently a town manager since August of twenty twenty-one. Has a bachelor of science and public affairs from Indiana University and a master's of urban and regional planning from Ball State University. Compensation is unknown at this time. So the posting closed on Sunday, that means they had until basically Monday morning to get their resumes to us and then we would start the assessing, which is why we don't have more detailed information for those, the last two.
Can you tell me about one again?
Yes. Currently an interim city manager since August of twenty twenty-three in a large community, twenty thousand population. Received their bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in public administration, both at Eastern Michigan University. Compensation expectations are from one fourteen to one thirty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything you want me to repeat, go over, any questions?
Number two, there was a bachelor's in human services and a master's in public admin?
Uh, let's see, number two, bachelor's in human services management and a master's in public administration.
And then number three. They also had a master's in public administration and a bachelor's in what?
A bachelor of arts from U of M and then a master's in public administration from Western Michigan.
And then you go over five again?
Sure. I love it, we're covering all the bases. Currently the planning director for a city since March of twenty nineteen. Bachelor's degree in urban studies and affairs. And a master's degree in urban planning are both from Wayne State University. Compensation is at one twenty.
Thank you.
Very welcome. I think it's, I don't have the exact number written here, but I think it's a medium size, so it's not the twenty thousand and it's not the, you know, one thousand thirteen hundred.
Any other things folks need repeated about this portion? Alright, well then Barbie, what's next?
Alright, so what's next? Your options are, and like I said, this is a solid pool of sort of that early municipal type experience. So you can work with this pool that's applied and then we can continue to assess and then we would share those candidates on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth. And when I say present and share those candidates, that means you get links. Basically, it's a giant spreadsheet and there's links to their resume. There's a link for their questionnaire or survey, so you can see the written communication skills. There's a video interview that you're able to watch. You have our phone interview notes, you have our, the background, we do a cyber review, references. So you basically have all the information you can possibly have. And then the current timeline has, once we present to you on November twenty-eighth, then we determine who the finalists are to interview on December the fifth. And then the interview date is December the fourteenth. So that's option one. Option two. You can extend the posting for another two weeks. We can reconnect with some of those people that we reached out to that were interested. And we can talk about tonight, maybe if you were looking to have those more experienced candidates talking about compensation. And then have that posting close on December the tenth. So this again would push the timeline out a little bit through the holidays. Posting would close December the tenth, we would then present those candidates December the fifteenth. We would review and determine your finalists on the nineteenth. And then interviews would be pushed to January.
Alright, any questions about that from anyone?
Um, I'm curious about the more experienced people.
Yeah, so when I say more experienced, they're seasoned, so they have probably greater than five years experience under their belt. They've had work in larger communities. Again, those people are coming with that more market value for that type of experience. We seem to hear that was around, the market value seemed to be around, you know, thirty, fifty, sixty thousand more than the current range.
So it looks like we have, so we have a discussion about this later on in the agenda.
Okay.
We have a lot of things before we get to that. So as council needing time to kind of ponder this as we move through some of these other presentations, then we come back. Barbie will hang out with us.
No, that's okay, I'm happy.
Okay.
And do you have any other questions for me, information that while I'm up here that you need?
Was there an option three? No?
I mean, option, you can stay as is, option two is extend, option three would be to just restart from the beginning and do that full. But then your timeline is really pushed into January, beginning of February.
Can you, just for number two and three, what the, the pay range is for those?
Sure. So number two, they're the village manager from July twenty-two to July twenty-three. They didn't specify a number, but they did say they would expect the compensation to be on that higher end of this range. And then number three. They were expecting to receive something in the middle of the range. They're currently a village manager.
Is there a compensation for number four?
A hundred K?
A hundred K.
Masters of education.
Yeah, master in public education.
And there was a operations manager for?
Yeah, so last role was operations department administrator and that was from August of twenty twenty-two to May of twenty twenty-three.
Could we potentially like get like the redacted list of everything you just sent us in an email possibly, or no? No?
Into the mic, please. We have people in the back.
Would it be possible if we can get like the redacted list, like you just said it out to us in an email possibly with our mayor said we're just talking about it today, so I guess.
Oh yeah, so we have to discuss this today to figure out which of these timelines we're going to follow.
Right.
So this was supposed to be just a snapshot for Steve, but had come in, so we could decide if we want to go with option four or three.
Correct.
Um, so unfortunately, I don't think we have the ti- the time.
Yeah, understood.
So that we can let Barbie and Amy Sell know what we need them to do next, so.
I got some good note, though.
Got some good notes?
Thank you.
Alright, good.
And I would refer to the lawyer as well. See, he's the expert.
Oh, that's also true.
Yeah.
The posted range was?
Um, oof, I don't have that for it, one oh three something to one seventeen something?
Yeah, about that. Yeah.
So again, we're just trying to provide you all the information we can, so you can make the decisions based on that.
So I know we'll have more discussion later, but I want to say this upfront, so folks can think about it. Let's say we go through these and we say we're gonna go with option one. And then when we're presented with those links, so each of them, we decide, eh, wait a minute. We, are we still able to adjust the timeline?
You are.
Yeah. So again, we'll get more information on the twenty-eighth.
Right.
And then if we decide we want to do something different, we still could do that, so. Yeah.
Yeah, you always have options. We're all, and we're very flexible, obviously, we're here to get you what you want, provide you with all the information and.
Perfect. Alright, anything else before she takes a seat for a bit? Alright, we'll see you later.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Um. Alright, okay, so our next chunk of presentation will be about the youth mental health mini grants. Councilmember King, you have the first resolution that we're gonna consider.
Before I go, is there, is there a option for the public to view the meeting tonight?
Yes, there's Zoom.
Okay, so they just click onto Zoom instead of the website, because I know some people go through the website.
Oh yeah, so because the website was down, our clerk sent us the link to send out to folks who may be asking for it. Okay. So it should be in email and I think it was posted to the Facebook.
It's, yes.
And shared, so hopefully if folks need it, we can try to have someone maybe reshare that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two-two-five, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas in the budget, uh, uh, for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, city council approved a ten thousand dollar grant to organizations that serve the youth in the city. And whereas the youth mental health mini grant committee has narrowed the pool of applicants to three finalists. Our community reads Ypsilanti Coral Association and Elevation Youth. And whereas the youth mental, youth mental health mini grant committee wishes to award the maximum individual grant of five thousand dollars to each of the three finalists. Now therefore, council authorizes a transfer of funds from the miscellaneous revenue account, account number one zero one dash four dash zero 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 dash six nine four dash zero one to the youth program contribution account, account number one zero one dash seven dash seven four seven zero dash eight three six dash zero zero and amount of five thousand dollars to award the maximum individual grant amount to all three finalists, I so move.
It moved?
Support.
And supported. Alright, discussion, questions or anything that folks on the committee want to share? Uh, councilmember Simmons?
Um, so a couple of things, one thing is that we had a lot of great applicants this year. And I know one of the things we wanted to do was to increase our applicant pool for this fund. And so I think that we did see that we had an increase and that we had strong applicant applicants. And kind of going through them, we decided there were some things where some other, some of the applicants had received the award a couple of times previously. Some that we are interested in thinking about how we can partner with, like for instance, the library in different ways, because they play such an important role. But, but really kind of focused in on the three that we'll see tonight. And so we couldn't, as a committee, we weren't able to, what's the word? Choose fewer ourselves, so that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring them forward, so that folks can hear from them directly. And one of the things, one of the things that, the reason we're asking for the budget amendment is previously this had twenty-five thousand and, you know, we have gone down because of past usage. And so we wanted to bring it forward with these three.
Does that capture?
I think so.
Yeah. Alright, alright committee. Well, thank you for bringing that forward. Are there questions from council on this resolution?
Yeah, was it considered to have less than maximal for any of these? Was that a discussion within the committee?
Oh, it was a discussion, but when we thought about it in past years, everybody received the five thousand. And we know they're not gonna be able to apply again next year, so we wanted to be able to give them the maximum amount.
And then secondarily, one of the things when we were kind of thinking about this, you know, at the outset, we kind of also were recognizing that, uh, you know, in terms of for a grant amount for a nonprofit, that you know, five thousand dollars isn't a huge grant. And so kind of minimizing it more without kind of without a specific reason for it, you know, in terms of thinking, oh, like they, they're not gonna need the full amount or they didn't ask for it. That we didn't want to really kind of make that decision too, because we want to make sure that it will be impactful for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion?
I guess question about the previous budget, that was twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or that was twenty-five thousand dollars at the beginning and we would let down?
It was. It was twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Anyone else? Okay, well, once, gone twice. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Six yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucson, you have our next resolution.
Indeed, I do. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two-two-six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas city council approved a grant to organization that served the youth in the city. And whereas our community reads is an organization currently serving the youth in the city of Ypsilanti and whereas our community reads has submitted a grant application. Now therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti city council approves a mini grant to our community reads in the amount of five thousand dollars to support programs assisting community youth through their efforts and I so move.
It's been moved or, and supported. Alright, and I know that we have representation from our community reads in the audience this evening. So if you'd like to come and give us some, share about your program and your application, good evening.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, they canceled the Lauryn Hill concert, so I'm here.
Sure did do that. Sure did.
I was like, good, I couldn't be at two places at one time anyway. Um, so my name is Kalista Marie Walker and I am the founder and executive director for our community reads. And we are a nonprofit, an Ypsilanti-based nonprofit organization. And our mission and our passion and our purpose is to create safe spaces for black children to feel seen, valued, empowered, and celebrated. And what I'm really, what, I just wanted to share a few things that I'm really proud of that we've been able to do with these young people, which are ages basically like third grade to eighth, ninth grade, right, at our core. And over the last few years, we just celebrated three years in October. We've been able to take twelve young ladies to Washington DC after doing an intense fundraiser for like a year. And that was an extremely transformative trip. They got to see Howard University, they met Felicia Rashad, even though they didn't really know who she was. And they got to sit in on a class at Howard University, they got to just realize that there can be a life outside of what your norm is, no matter what that norm is. And to realize you can learn new things and that you can belong in different places and you can show up and succeed. And we had those conversations through journaling and things like that. We also took young men to our state's capital, to Lansing. We went for a black violin concert and ended up in our state's capital. That was not the plan, but they ended up sneaking in because they're curious and it really helped me to see that we belong in spaces that we don't even know we belong in. Even at fifty-five, I realized that because I was scared to death when one of our eighth graders opened the door to the Capitol building. I was like, why are you opening that door? And they were so gracious and they met Jeff Irwin and they got a chance to, you know, go sit in a room and give their thoughts about what they thought would change and make our city and our state better. And they were changed, they were so excited, we were late for the concert, but it was a life-changing experience. And so what I took away from that, like I said, is that it's really important for all of us to feel celebrated and seen and to know that you belong. And that's a huge thing and a few of the ways that I would like to accomplish that is through literacy, of course. But there's a thing called storytime chess. I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but storytime chess is teaching toddlers up to however old how to play chess, but you attach stories with the pieces on the chessboard, which makes it more adaptable, which helps set children up so that they feel like they can be successful. Because chess can be very intimidating, I know it has intimidated me for many years. And it does help them with their literacy also. And the second thing that I really wanted to do was financial literacy. A lot of our children have no idea what a bank account is, a checking account, a savings account. They know how to spend money, but they don't necessarily know the importance of budgeting. How do you carry yourself when you walk into a bank? And so I really wanted to start a financial literacy family workshop to help interrupt the whole streamline of poverty. Opening savings accounts for those children who have been with us for two years or more and allowing them to see the process and there's a bank that will add fifty dollars to their account as long as it maintains a hundred dollar balance and it's a credit union. And so I wanted to open accounts for like, I think it's like twelve to fifteen children. And a part of that would be their families would have to attend three financial workshops in twenty twenty-four with an organization that I'm, they've already met, because she's worked with me at Queens Club before. And so that is really the goal that I have in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, time for questions.
I, I have one.
Of course you do.
Thank you for being here. So for the good of the public, I know in your application, which is available online for folks to look at, some of the things that you talked about were the Queens Club night at the district library on Harris, as well as the work you're doing in Sycamore Meadows. But can you talk about some of the things that you've done or plan to do within the actual city of Ypsilanti, so that folks can hear about what you're doing within our jurisdiction?
Yes, so we meet once a month, every Sunday with the Queens Club and we meet at the back office studio. That is where we meet. And so the children that I work with are pretty much from the Ypsilanti city area. And so I've done many things, we've done storytimes at Growing Hope. Man. Man, we've done a lot of things. Um, we've done storytimes at Growing Hope. We've, uh, you know, I've had them go down to Blackstone Bookstore, you know, and pick out books and we did things down there. I'm, I'm very determined to just expose them to a lot of things so that they don't just see themselves one in one dimension. We've done a lot of things at Park Ridge Community Center in collaboration with Washington County My Brothers Keeper, um, Park Ridge Mentor to Youth. And we've been a part of Brotherhood Circle, which met every fourth Saturday. And then we've, we've had Saturday Club where we met every Saturday with our young men with mentorship. I'm trying to think. It's been a lot. That's all that's coming to mind right now.
That's alright. I just wanted you to share a little bit more because I think that you didn't say a lot about all the other things that you have been doing in the community.
Okay. I'm a little nervous. I apologize.
I'm nervous too. Any, any questions from council?
Yeah, just one. Um, in your, can you speak to, in your application, it lists visitors? Can you speak to what the visitors are doing at the, the meetings? There's a line item for, for visitors and people to come present to kids?
Yes. So part of the storytime chess would be having facilitators that will be trained alongside myself to help teach the children how to play chess. Because different children respond to different personalities. As much as I would like to think I'm universal and I can reach them all, I cannot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions from council? Any other question? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
If there's no further discussion, are, is everyone ready to vote? Perfect. Alright, Clerk Smith?
Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Yes, as the motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, councilmember Simmons, you have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas city council approved a grant to organizations that serve the youth in the city. And whereas Ypsilanti Coral Association is an organization currently serving the youth in the city of Ypsilanti. And whereas Ypsilanti Coral Association has submitted a grant application. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a mini grant to Ypsilanti Coral Association in the amount of five thousand dollars to support programs assisting community youth through their efforts. And ISO move.
Been moved and supported. I know we have representatives from the Ypsilanti Coral Association, if you'd like to come forward and share with us about your association and your requests for funding.
Good evening. Um, I didn't prepare anything formal. I am Crystal Harding and I am the director of the Ypsilanti Youth Choir. The Ypsilanti Youth Choir is funded by the Ypsilanti Coral Association. And I am always so proud to say that the Ypsilanti Youth Choir is a service organization. We are a community serviced choir open to anybody. Most of our members are from Ypsilanti. They are mostly youth. We do have some parents singing with the kids. Um, so it's kind of multi-generational. It's a beautiful thing. We serve. We will be performing Sunday at the tree lighting in Depot Town. We will be performing at the library, uh, tree lighting. And one of the members asked yesterday, two tree lightings? Is it two different trees? I mean, we're, we're that busy. We have, uh, performances at senior residence coming up very soon. Um, we've been invited to perform at the Lucy Lance Hometown Christmas Show. We have, I don't know, ten performances coming up, uh, this holiday season. We're really excited about it. Um, as you know, we performed at the YPSI bicentennial, uh, performances, this event this summer. That was great. We loved performing. We love to serve. We love being in the community and, and we are, we've also done two events, um, where we helped to raise money for special needs adults and children. We have a concert coming up, which benefits the Unique Care Connect, um, Activity Center for disabled adults and children. And just to put on a concert like that, you know, with photography and videography and all of that, you know, that's a couple of grand right there. So when you're trying to serve, that costs money. It's not free. So we are very, very grateful for this grant. Anything else you need to know?
Thank you. I will open up for questions if folks have questions for Ms. Harding. We know all about you.
Doesn't everybody?
You all sing for us for a long time. Alright, if there's no, no discussion, no questions? Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. I think so. Thank you so much. Alright, I'll give a little bit of a a pause in case folks have anything that comes up. Alright, Clerk Smith, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Six yeses, the motion carries.
Congratulations. Alright, councilmember Sweet, you have our third and final grant application.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas city council approved a grant to organizations that serve the youth in the city. And whereas Elevation Youth is an organization currently serving the youth in the city of Ypsilanti. And whereas Elevation Youth has submitted a grant application. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a mini grant to Elevation Youth in the amount of five thousand dollars to support programs assisting community youth through their efforts and ISO move.
It's been moved and supported. Alright, representatives from Elevation Youth? Please come on up. Good evening.
Hello, everybody.
Evening.
First, I just want to really thank you all for allowing us to come out and, uh, and present. My name is Yolanda Ragland. I am executive director and co-founder of Elevation Youth Corp with my husband, Keith Ragland, who is our president and multimedia specialist. Elevation Youth Corp started in twenty-twenty. It was actually birthed though in two thousand seventeen with the loss of my son. So although we've started in tragedy, uh, we are triumphing with our kids in the creative arts. We do have an anti-violence initiative. We have a community service initiative. And we're really excited about our program. This is the third year for our summer program with Elevation Youth Corp. We have worked with, uh, Ypsilanti Eastern Michigan students, U of M students, some of our previous, um, performers. And basically we have, um, workshops for the kids to come to. We do paint workshops. We do, um, video, uh, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. We do video production programming. Um, this year we have done, um, a mental health, uh, workshop with trauma society where we, um, had the kids do poems, but actually talk about some things that are traumatic to them and how to work through that creatively. Everything that we do, um, in the creative arts has an anti-violence, though, um, underlying tone to it. We want the kids to be able to, um, express themselves. And how would you deal with the anti-violence situation? Keith is working with, uh, Ace High School right now. We try to stay engaged with the kids all throughout the year, not just in the summertime. So he has a multi, you want to explain that?
So I teach every week at Ace High School, which is an alternative school. So a lot of the kids at Ace High School have been removed from their original school. So they go to this alternative school to try to still graduate. So at this school, we do a program where we have like a podcast, like it's called Let's Talk About It. We have, it's actually on Facebook. We do like on YouTube show. So every week we come up with a scenario. Some scenarios might be like, uh, domestic violence or like a teen bringing guns to school. And we have the kids like come up with the plot and we'll actually act out the whole scene. So have a whole scene acted out that they do live and the kids film it. They write it and they put it together. Once we do it, we have a sit-down panel and we actually go over the thing, have everybody sit down, talk about what happened. So last year we did it for like the, almost the full school year. And at the end of the year, a lot of kids said they took a lot away from it because they were able to reenact certain topics that are big topics in the school, especially like, uh, the, the teen pregnancies, things like that too. So when we took that and from our summer program, which we do teach videography, things like that, anti-violence agenda. And we now do it all every Thursday at Ace. And we also have another program that we do every Friday night.
At the Community Family Life Center.
Which is similar to that. So we're teaching a community, we keep teaching coding, teach kids how to code through Roblox, something like it, like the Roblox. We teach coding through Roblox and a lot of things with the new Mid Journey AI apps. So we're showing kids this, different things, creative arts.
And we try to stay, you know, engaged with the kids. Like I said, throughout the year, we have the summer program, these two programs that we do. But we also do, um, community service. We have an adopt a highway, um, right off Ann Arbor-Seline Road. So every season the kids kind of get their hands dirty, you know, with that. Um, we also do an annual trunk or treat where we bring all of our community partners together. And, um, the kids can also get involved with that, although a lot of them like to walk around and get candy for that one. Uh, we also do our Easter basket giveaway, um, where we gave out about fifty to, I don't know, seventy-five baskets. We've done that at least three times, um, at different locations. And we're really excited. We always, um, take the kids on a field trip at the end of our, um, summer program. But this year, instead of our coat drive, because we normally do a coat drive, which is really cool. But we wanted to bring all the kids that have been involved in our program throughout the years, because they do kind of come and go and just let them know that we really appreciate them. So we'll be taking fifty kids, um, to the Hip Hop Nutcracker on December ninth, uh, with the Community Family Life Center. Uh, and that's going to be really exciting. We want to do something like that every year. Just because we are, you know, um, creative arts program and we want to show them on a larger scale, um, some creative arts. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. I, my only question would be, how do we see the finished like media project that they work on over the summer? Where do we see that?
There's some on our website, but we actually post it weekly when they come up the project. So it's Ace High School. They share, they share through their, uh, their, uh, their, uh, Facebook page. So they, they share every week. Our website has episodes and we have it on YouTube as well. Elevation Youth Corp, if you look at that. So it's very great, great things. Also they have a lot of topics that.
Yep. You can visit elevationyouthcorp.com or you can go on our Facebook page, Elevation Youth Corp. We always post them there.
Yeah. And we post like weekly up. That's what we do in the classes too.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Mayor Proton?
I guess the same question that, that went to, uh, Community Reads is, um, addressing the, where this happens in the city.
Oh, we've, uh, we actually rented out, um, Dreamland Theater to twenty-twenty-one and in twenty-twenty-three this past summer. In twenty-twenty-two, we were very gracious to get Unite STEM Lab. And during that time, we were able to actually have a, um, STEM program with robotics, because that's what the school was all about. And we had the podcast room. That kind of sparked our interest with podcasts where he carried it over to Ace. So, yeah.
So it's currently, we, we basically located on next street over, doing that theater for some. On the school year, we had Ace and then we just partnered up with Community Family, uh,
Life Center off Harris Road.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment. The one thing I like about all three of these organizations is we do see them in the community at black parties, at like Juneteenth event and just different events around the city. So I just want to say thank you.
Absolutely. Alright, thank you so much. There are no further questions or discussion. Clerk Smith, please call the roll.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Yes, as the motion carries.
Congratulations. Thank you. Alright.
I just want to say thank you to the committee. Bringing these three forward. I mean, I've noticed them in the community and I think this, this is a good crop.
Very much so. And I also like the way that this was presented, um, this go around where we had an opportunity to have each of you come and kind of talk to us before we voted. I think that was, that was wonderful. So thank you. Thank you for being here and thanks to the committee. Um, alright, next we have a presentation on care-based safety. Good evening. Welcome.
I'm Luna. I am the co-director of Care-Based Safety. Thank you so much for having me here. Um, I was invited to present on community response, also known as unarmed non-police response or alternative response. And also care-based safety, who we are, um, what we're doing in the city. Um, I believe a presentation was emailed out to you. So any of the information that I share, you should have in your email. I'll start out just talking a little bit about what is community response itself. So community responder programs position community members who are civilians um, and trained in crisis response to be first responders. Community response often focuses on communities with the most survival needs. So poor or low-income neighborhoods, BIPOC neighborhoods that have been historically disinvested and unhoused tent communities. Um, and community response programs tend to address incidents that are not life-threatening and don't involve weapons. So typically responding to things like overdose, um, providing street medicine and first aid, wellness checks, mental health crisis response, interpersonal and household conflicts and public health concerns. There are typically four types of community response models in our country. Uh, one is co-response or law enforcement partnership. So this is when social workers and EMTs are embedded in police departments, um, or partnered with them. So for example, STAR in Denver, Colorado is one such model. Or the Washtenaw County Community Mental Health Crisis Program here in our community, um, is a similar model. There's also fire department or other government embedded programs. So social workers and EMTs and peers who are embedded in fire and recreation departments. For example, Macro in Oakland has this type of program and, and cares in the city of Madison. Care-based safety falls under or between the last two types. So one being, uh, local community organization hosts, uh, social workers, community members, peers, EMTs who are hired by a five oh one C three or similar agency. So for example, one of the most popular programs in the country is Kahoots. Um, it is a community response model that is part of Whitebird Clinic, which is a health center. Um, and similarly, just, um, south of us in Dayton, they have Dayton Mediation Center, has a crisis response program that goes out and does community mediation. So care-based safety falls sort of in, in this area. We're a five oh one C three. And we are hiring full-time staff who would eventually be these responders. And the last type is grassroots volunteer organizations. So community members collectively run the organization and volunteer their time to respond. So they're not paid staff. Um, and these programs typically operate at night and on weekends when people are not working their full-time jobs. Um, for example, Rep in Minneapolis has been very, um, close to us. We've learned a lot from them and they use that volunteer-based model. Um, we hope to also use volunteers, but not for them to be the first people on the scene. They would do long-term peer support and things like that. So why do communities have non-police response? Sorry, it's like hot, very hot. So why do communities have non-police response? Um, and, and there's a lot of evidence behind um, why communities are doing this. So evidence shows that BIPOC LGBTQ and undocumented people are more hesitant to dial nine-one-one in an emergency, even when no crime is involved due to their fear of involving law enforcement or weapons. People with mental illness are more than twice as likely to be harmed by violence than to enact violence. And yet sixteen times more likely to be killed by the police. Fear of dangerous mentally ill people leads to overreliance on police to address mental health crises. Similarly, once unhoused, people are five times more likely to be victims of violence than the general population. Yet unhoused people are more often arrested than housed people due to their visibility, lack of legal places to exist and survival and coping behaviors that are criminalized, but pose little to no danger to others, such as substance use, survival economies, theft or trespassing. Analysis of publicly available nine-one-one call data spanning nine cities and more than twenty-three million calls suggests that nineteen to thirty-four percent of calls for service could be handled by more appropriate, less expensive unarmed civilian crisis response programs right now. Involvement of police in non-violent situations can escalate the situation and deepen crisis for those involved by introducing fines, arrest and incarceration, especially for BIPOC communities. Law enforcement is often dispatched to address nine-one-one calls that could be more appropriately handled by civilians. A situation that is detrimental to community members and municipalities. Due to a gap in crisis service options, many people are not receiving the care and support that would improve their quality of life. Due to a gap in crisis service options, many people are not receiving the care and support that would improve their quality of life. Part of the reason that care-based safety even exists is because community members were looking around um and saying, who the heck do I call when I get in a fight with my neighbor? And I don't need them to get arrested, or I don't need um any type of law enforcement involved, but there is no service that I can call. Um what do I do when my son, who has a mental illness, is behaving aggressively? And I certainly don't want to introduce a weapon into that situation, uh but I need help and I can't manage it. Uh right now, those folks are not getting service. Also importantly, community response is already happening in Washtenaw County. But it's done by people who are trying to do other programs and are not receiving enough support. Uh so for example, a lot of you probably know Sherry Wander. Sherry frequently, uh she runs a daytime warming center and she's part of Washtenaw Camp Outreach. And she frequently gets phone calls at ten o'clock at night saying, oh no, something's happening and I don't want to call the police. And Sherry shows up. Sherry is not paid to do that. We just hired her, so hopefully she will be soon. Um uh but people are not getting paid to do that work. They are not protected with health insurance. They are not protected with general liability insurance. Um and so we really want to establish a program that can be that responder and make it safer for folks. Speaking of safety, uh a main question that we often get is, is are these programs safe? And do they actually work? So we have a lot of evidence that yes, it is safe. Re- research shows that on average, only four percent of police calls involve violence or violent crime, suggesting that ninety-six percent of calls have the potential to be totally safe. On average, community response models only call for police backup two to five percent of the time. Denver STAR, which is a non-police program, but as I said, is partnered with law enforcement, um responds to calls involving trespassing and other non-violent events, events. In their pilot, they showed a thirty-four percent drop in reported crimes during the six-month trial, fourteen hundred fewer criminal offenses based on pre-pilot rates, and fewer citations for public intoxication and other low-level infractions. Direct costs of the alternative approach were four times lower than police-only responses. And piloted in twenty twenty, STAR continues operation today and has expanded service. A Connecticut Mobile Crisis Unit saw a twenty-five percent decrease in youth psychiatric psychiatric emergency visits. So these are improving safety outcomes. Community response is safe when responders are robust robustly trained in seen safety, first aid, de-escalation, overdose prevention, active listening, non-violent intervention, intervention, and emotional CPR. These are the trainings that we at Care-Based Safety will provide. Responders are constantly connected to support staff in dispatch and leadership to ask for help and guidance at any time. Responders are dispatched in teams of two or more, so no one is ever responding alone. Um and combine both crisis response experience, as in training or certification, with people with lived experience, so who hold peer status and are recognizable to community members. Responders are supported, well-paid, have health insurance, and are covered by workers' compensation insurance, and receive mental health support for vicarious trauma. Responders do not have lights, sirens, weapons, or badges, or other signals that can often escalate fear, agitation, and flight. Nor are they empowered to use force, arrest, or detain anyone. Um having those powers and knowing those powers are coming automatically escalate a situation. Care-based safety won't have any of those. So does it work? What does the evidence say? Um so Kahoots, which is the oldest CRP in the nation, responds to public disturbance, mental health, and suicide, conflict, intoxication, overdose, and disorientation. Ninety percent of their fourteen thousand-plus annual calls for service do not involve the fire department or the police department. In the last three years, they only called for police backup two percent of the time. Successfully, they diverted three to eight percent of the total calls to nine-one-one from law enforcement and cover significant care that otherwise would not be met without their service. Macro, a newer program, transfers less than one percent of their calls for wellness checks, sleeping outdoors, and behavioral concerns to law enforcement. Over eighty-one percent of their service recipients are black. The majority are consensually referred to community partner programs for longer-term support, such as um substance abuse help or homelessness help. Um sixty-two percent of the fifty largest cities in the U.S. have implemented a community response program since twenty twenty. And non-police programs in Newark, New York City, Rochester, Columbus, Cincinnati, Oakland, Madison, Cambridge, Atlanta, Chicago, Minneapolis, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Portland, and more have piloted these programs since twenty twenty and are expanding their services due to high rates of success and high demand. In short, unarmed non-police response is the evidence-based future of public health and public safety, reducing racial and economic disparities and incarceration, meeting basic needs instead of criminalizing survival, and using the right response for mental health and community conflict. And I'm going to try and wrap up here in a second. Um so I just want to talk a little bit about care-based safety and what we're doing. So our purpose is to respond to conflict and crisis with life-affirming care, to prevent destructive conflict and crisis through skill-building and social support, to collaborate with community partners in addressing the root causes of violence, crisis, and neglect, and to build a culture and system of care-based safety for all. Um we started in twenty twenty-one when the Coalition for Re-envisioning Our Safety created a vision for what unarmed non-police response would look like in Washtenaw County. Um both Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti residents um participated in eighteen co-creation sessions with impacted community members, um providing the model of what we um provide here in the city. So it's for community, by community, all community input created the design. Um we use a sociocratic structure, which involves community members directly in decision-making. We have an advisory circle that has expert consultants who are part of the community, both expert in their field. So they might be social workers, or uh public health experts, or domestic violence experts, or and/or um have lived experience using substances, having been incarcerated, having um interactions with police. Um we'll expand um opportunities for the community to be involved in that way. Um and I do want to say, whoa, there's a lot of people here. Um one of our advisory circle members, Corinne, is here. Um I think there are other people here who have participated in some of our programs. Um so we have two parts to our program, community building and care-based response. The community building side of the program is about crisis prevention, building skills so people can address conflict on their own, building community capacity to respond to crisis, um and generally just bringing outreach supplies. So partnering with um Washtenaw Camp Outreach and other programs like that that are meeting survival needs. And then care-based response, which will um eventually be our crisis support. Phone number separate from nine-one-one, you can call and have us come out and de-escalate a situation or provide other support. Um this January, we'll be launching um workshops for the community. And I'll make sure I post this for everybody on our Facebook page, so y'all can see what I'm talking about, because you can't see this. Um but we'll be offering workshops in identifying your own triggers and coping with those triggers. Um n- new skills in addressing conflicts um and connecting to um like community-based solutions to conflict, uh de-escalation, upstandard intervention, harm reduction, and self-advocacy, boundaries for when re- relationships are in transition, pod mapping and safety planning, and trauma stewardship, so after violence grieving, healing, repair, and care um support. So all of those will be offered in January twenty twenty-four. Um and currently, we are raising funds for our care-based response program. We're in the process of hiring a response lead. And then we need at least two additional responders, one dispatch worker, and a wheelchair-accessible vehicle in order to pilot the program. Um we have an immediate goal of raising four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in multi-year funding to sustain a a pilot of this program. Uh we currently are funded by uh foundations. And we've also applied for funding through the city of Ann Arbor. They had an RFP um go out. Uh that application was due in September, and we're still waiting to hear back, but we are hopeful that we will also launch a program in Ann Arbor. Um I will leave it there, but there's plenty more information in the uh presentation I sent out.
So I, that's the first. I don't think we got that um presentation. So if you could send it, that'd be wonderful. Um, thank you so much for the presentation. I know it's hard. We don't have anything to show other folks. Um but I guess I'll open it up for questions, um discussion with Luna from council. Oh, Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Um so I just wanted to say two quick things. One is that I'm so excited um for these uh presentations that we have for care-based safety um and decriminalization. These came um during the solutionary circle um that we were all at. Um and as part of that out-of-conversations, these um these groups kind of came forward and had conversations with folks. And so, one, just to say that this is kind of bringing that, bringing work that was happening in that space forward. And so folks can hear uh more. Um and then the second thing I just want to say, which is that um just to name um for folks that back in the stages, so um some other information I know that will be shared too with council around um kind of research findings from those um community sessions, those co-creation sessions that I was a part of CBS at that time. I'm no longer a part of CBS, unfortunately. But um but also just want to say that too. So it was just great to be a part of the project. Um and to kind of hear directly from the community in that way.
Thank you. Any other questions for Luna from council about this?
I guess the question of um, I may have missed this, where where you're operating now? You're you're looking at a contract with the city of Ann Arbor, and you've had programs going other places?
Yeah, so the um workshops that we're offering are um open to anyone in Washtenaw County. We spend most of our time here in Ypsie. We spend time at the Daytime Warming Center at the Freight House now. Um and building partnerships here in Ypsie is our priority, but we're a pretty new organization. I just got hired in June. So we're still working, working on it. Yeah.
Other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Sweet?
You're planning on this, this, at least what you're proposing now would be a um, you mentioned a separate phone number. That was one of my questions. Um and then managing your own dispatch operation then and i- implementing that and having that number be staffed by someone from Care-Based Safety and then them assigning people to wherever they're ended up going, right? Is that okay?
A hundred percent. So um we have partnered with an app. It's called Patch. And they create a dispatch app for these community response programs. Um and we're modeling our dispatch off of rep who are running, have been running this program for two years in Minneapolis. Um and the call to do that came directly from the community who did not want to call nine-one-one.
I guess I have a question in terms of that. Um so we met and talked a little bit about this before, and I am all for um care-based response. One of my questions, though, is, let's say, this might be going down into like, you know, but it's in my mind. Um, we have community members who don't want to call the police. We have some that do. And so in the event that someone calls your dispatch for a situation and their neighbor may have called the police, has there been conversation with or or plans to meet with our police department to make sure that there's communication around how this process should work or how we can work collaboratively? Um like what steps have been taken in terms of in our municipality to build partnership, I guess?
Yeah, so right now, we're not working on building a partnership with the police department. We are um planning to have, so part of our protocol is that if we showed up on scene together, that I would be called as the director of the program to come and essentially be a liaison. Um and so the reason for that being that what we heard a lot um in the community co-creation sessions is that, at least at first, they would like us to be totally independent, and we want to respect that. And we want to respect the community's desire to see that from us. That said, of course, when we get to a scene, our priority is safety and communication, and making sure that everyone's needs are met on the scene. And so we certainly plan to have a cooperative relationship in terms of communication on the scene of any um incident.
So I guess my my question was less about like working together, but more so having an understanding of each other's process. That way, um you know, if if both were to show up, then what what happens, right? Because I think that's really important in terms of safety for everybody. So that's something that I would, that that was coming up for me as I was listening to you speak about this.
Yeah, I hear you.
Uh Mayor Proton?
I guess another question about the the people who don't want to call nine-one-one, but people do. Um if those are separate numbers, getting getting your number out. Um and how how do organizations go by doing that so that it becomes um an equally known option? Or are there uh partnerships with dispatch so that somebody there does does the triage and and decides which number to go to?
Yeah, so our hope is to um when we get closer to launching, work with dispatch and let them know that we exist. And if they, and we've already started talking to community mental health and their crisis line. We've talked to Huron Valley Ambulance as well. Um so we're working on that. And I do think we want them to know that they have, if they think, oh, it'd be more appropriate for CBS. Here's their number, maybe try calling them. Great. Um and then we plan to do a canvassing, neighborhood canvassing campaign to give out our number, explain who we are, and make sure people in the community have it. And we also have a number of community partners who are deeply connected and and will work through them to circulate to the people that they serve as well.
Well, thanks.
And we also want to create a lot of public materials to make it very clear when to call us and when to call nine-one-one. I know that's a lot of people's concern is that people will start calling us for life-threatening things, and it creates a delay. Um so we'll be making sure that people know, you know, um call nine-one-one if you're in a life-threatening emergency.
Further questions or comments from council? Thank you, Lena.
Yeah, and I just want to say um I'm very pro the next presentation as well and um hope you'll support it.
Thank you. All right. And we'll move right into um our presentation on the decriminalization policy. And I don't know who's put anything on that. Oh, hello. Good evening. Thank you. I already have one of those. Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of people here. I was not expecting that. Um and I I want to start off by saying I'm I'm also very much in support um of of the last presentation. I think it's it's amazing uh that Ypsilanti has a chance to to roll out a program like Care-Based Safety. I think it's something that we've needed in our community for a long time. So um it's very, very exciting. Um I appreciate you guys for inviting me here uh tonight. And I know the the material I just handed out to you guys have seen something really, really similar to it already. Uh the last time that we spoke, uh this has kind of been personalized for Ypsilanti rather than the the Senate bill, uh four nine-nine, which is currently in uh the the Senate Committee of Regulatory Affairs. Um this is a proposed, um it's a proposed resolution for Ypsilanti in particular um that has been drafted largely off of the Ann Arbor Resolution that passed in twenty twenty. Um there's been some language changed and taken out uh to personalize it for Ypsilanti. And then obviously, there's been like some policy changes in Washtenaw County uh since that was passed in Ann Arbor. So uh those those things have been changed as well. Um so I wanted to start off by kind of uh saying that I'm a, I'm the Outreach Director for Decriminalize Nature Michigan. Um we support policy reform uh in the state of Michigan, uh largely to decriminalize uh anthropogenic plants and fungi. And so I know that that sounds like a lot if you've never heard it. Um and we're gonna, we're gonna get into uh, you know, like what are anthropogens? Um what is it? What does it mean? And why are they uh so important to us? Um and and other than that, I'm I'm a longtime Ypsie resident. I've been living in Ypsilanti since two thousand and six. Um I call this my home. Uh I have a lot of love for the city. So um it'd be really exciting to see some some more positive change happening, um which it seems like is is kind of the climate right now. So um so antigen as a term comes from becoming divine within. It's a Greek term. Um it was given uh, these plants and fungi were given that name or labeled as antigens because of the profound spiritual experiences that individuals who were ingesting them were having. Um and and we're going to get into kind of some research a little bit later in this presentation. individuals who were ingesting them were having. Um and and we're going to get into kind of some research a little bit later in this presentation um that talks about like how important spiritual experiences are in in things like lifestyle satisfaction um and quality of life. Uh, but they are essentially plant medicines that have been uh used, the earliest recorded use of these plant medicines uh was ten thousand years ago. Um, and and they include uh psilocybin, psilocybin fungi, um mesclun containing cacti, ayahuasca um and ibogaine, uh so those are all a part of this resolution. Um, these plants and fungi have been used in rituals and spiritual ceremonies all over the world um for a very, very long time and they can be used in society today to treat a number of uh very, very kind of important uh social issues that we're facing right now, specifically mental health. Um, and and I'm going to just kind of list off some things now and then get into the research behind it later, um but uh treating uh specifically treatment resistant depression, um post-traumatic stress disorder, uh major depressive disorder. Um, there is, there is a wealth of uh research data and anecdotal data that's available right now to show that uh these these plant medicines work to treat um all of these mental health concerns, um substance use disorders. Um, whether it's alcohol use disorder, opioid use disorder, um there's also a lot of research that shows um efficacy in treating substance use disorders. Um, they're they're correlated with reduction in suicidality, um reductions in recidivism. Uh, they can be used to treat migraines and cluster headaches. Um, they work well to mitigate symptoms of grief and life anxiety. Um, and like we said before, um ingestion of these of these plant medicines often leads to uh profound spiritual experiences and a feeling of connectedness um that is essential in community building. Uh, so we're going to talk about some of the things that are currently used um to treat mental health concerns, mental health diagnoses, um and substance use disorders uh are. The global pharmaceutical market is about one point five trillion dollars um annually. Um, that money goes directly into manufacturer and distribution of pharmaceuticals to treat a lot of the things uh that these plant medicines have been proven to treat very effectively. Um, despite that very, very large budget, uh twenty percent of Americans um right now, so one in five Americans uh have diagnosed mental health disorders. Um, which that number has climbed rapidly um over the last three years. Um, suicide rates continue to rise, uh especially in uh veteran populations largely because of post-traumatic stress disorder um and associated suicidality and as as we're all pretty well aware of, um overdose rates uh also continue to rise. Um, unfortunately, in in both of these instances, uh communities that have uh more uh black indigenous and people of color living in them are more severely uh affected. And so um again, being a a longtime Ipsy resident and a a BIPOC community member, um this is something that is pretty close to the chest. Um, in Michigan last year, uh there were five thousand deaths that were related to mental health and substance use disorders. Um, so that would be suicide, liver cirrhosis and um fatal overdose. So in in one year, we lost five thousand people in the state um to to arguably avoidable, avoidable um loss of life, avoidable death. Um, access to alternative treatments um would start to mediate um some of this loss of life. And if we can, if we can do that in Ypsilanti, uh then we can hopefully do it in the state and uh soon enough throughout throughout the country. Um, on the legal side, we know that criminalization does not work. Um, it is a, it is a failed experiment, so. One thing um with with the number of fatal overdoses continuing to climb, um they're starting to do a lot of research into why uh they're going up and what some of the causes are. Drug seizures have been shown to actually increase fatal overdoses in proximity of the drug seizure by up to five times, so up to five hundred percent. Um, so it's a great example of why criminalization or how criminalization doesn't work. Um, from a budgetary standpoint, uh it's fifty thousand dollars a year on average uh to institutionalize someone in a Michigan correction facility. Um, fifty thousand dollars per person per year. Um, I had a chance to speak with one of the candidates for sheriff in Washtenaw County and she shared a statistic with me um that was very uh very alarming is, and that's that black men are five times more likely um to get stopped and arrested uh by police in Washtenaw County. Um and and knowing uh the number of uh black community members in Ypsilanti as compared to say Pittsfield Township in Ann Arbor, I think, you know, a lot of those arrests are happening right here in our home. Um, funds for arrest and detention and investigation of individuals who possess, cultivate or share uh these sacred plants could be used um for uh to address housing. Um, we're that the housing situation in Ypsilanti is is close to crisis level at this point and surely the overdose crisis and mental health crisis um are are a huge problem that could use funds, so. Um, Ann Arbor has actually passed this resolution uh all the way back in twenty twenty, so over three years ago, I think it was September in twenty twenty. The Ann Arbor uh City Council um unanimously voted to pass this resolution. Um, a year after that, the Washtenaw County Prosecutor's Office, um in accordance with that resolution decided that uh they were no longer going to prosecute individuals for possession, cultivation, or use of anthropogenic plants and fungi. Um, so for whatever reason, in Ipsy, we we're still criminalizing individuals for those for those things. Um, and the prosecutor in their statement uh when they released their policy said that there's there's no link to violent behavior uh with the use of antigens whatsoever and that there's actually an associated reduction in spousal abuse. Um, so Jeff Irwin, who's actually our district representative in the Senate, has sponsored a bill, like I mentioned earlier, that's currently in committee. And um that is for full decrim, uh it's it's basically the same thing that we're asking for uh here. It's just on a state level, so unfortunately, they're in recess until January twenty twenty four and the hope is that especially with with providing some potential language um that we could get this voted on in Ipsy um well before that and and actually work to um unite policy throughout Washtenaw County. So um the House, there's a House concurrent resolution, uh it's House Concurrent Resolution Number Five uh that involved um twenty one legislative members on the state level uh that called for uh more, basically more funding for non-technological interventions for post-traumatic stress disorder. Um, one of those interventions was psilocybin assisted therapy and this was directed at the federal legislature and the Office of Veterans Affairs. Um, so there is a call um for access to these plants and fungi um in our state right now. Um, municipalities like Hazel Park, Detroit, and Ferndale, aside from Ann Arbor, have also voted uh to decriminalize um these plants, these plant medicines. So there's, there's a ton, a ton of research available. There are hundreds of studies that have been done that show efficacy um of these plant medicines. I'm going to just kind of go over like ten of them if if we if we have time. Um, so a lot of this research is coming out of Johns Hopkins. Uh, Johns Hopkins has uh basically received federal funding in excess of fifty five million dollars to do research um into the efficacy of antigens in treating uh a lot of different mental health disorders. So in February twenty twenty two um they released a study that basically proved that uh two treatments can improve symptoms of major depressive disorder uh for up to twelve months. Um, an earlier study showed that a single dose reduced end of life anxiety in cancer patients and associated depression uh in eighty percent of participants for up to six months. Um, they also showed uh in another study from Johns Hopkins, they showed that there's an improved success rate in smoking cessation with microdose inter- intervention and that was thirty five percent of people who were trying to stop smoking managed to do so uh for over six months. So it was a longitudinal study, they checked back in with participants and six months later, thirty five percent of them were still not smoking, which anybody who's ever tried to to quit nicotine knows that that's uh that's pretty impressive. Um, they did another, another study with three hundred participants um that were diagnosed with severe alcohol use disorder. Um, after uh two treatments, they did a a follow-up assessment. Um, and eighty three percent of those individuals no longer qualified for alcohol use disorder based on diagnostic criteria. Um, which is very substantial. Um Columbia University has done another study on high dose, uh single high dose use of psilocybin um that they they said resulted in a steep remission of depression symptoms for up to three months um in patients specifically with treatment resistant depression. Um, and and you know, a lot of people don't know this, but one of the other treatment modalities that's still commonly used for treatment resistant depression uh in this country is electroconvulsive therapy, um electroshock therapy. So so to be able to treat it with a a plant medicine, a natural medication, um I think, you know, it it sounds revolutionary. Um, but but this, these have been, you know, a part, a part of what we've had access to for a long time. Um, and so I I think, you know, folks, folks deserve to choose whether or not they want to be electrocuted um or maybe take a a plant medicine. Um. Um, so there's been multiple studies on Moga or Ibogaine, which is a a West African, a West African plant um that prove that there is cessation of withdrawal symptoms from opioid use disorder after twenty four hours. Um, this is extremely significant and and extremely relevant uh considering the overdose epidemic that we're facing right now, a huge deterrent um for folks who use opioids uh to seek out treatment is that there is an extensive withdrawal period, um which is one of the the most uncomfortable things somebody can experience in their lifetime. Um, this would reduce that to to twenty four hours um with one application. Uh, so the National Institute of Health has released a study from New Zealand that showed a a marked reduction in opioid use severity in all of their participants a year after a single treatment. So they took, they took folks who were who met the diagnostic criteria criteria for severe opioid use disorder, um and it it was below mild a year after um one single treatment. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, Cambridge did a study on ayahuasca treatment uh that showed that it lowered depression scores in all participants after one treatment. So there's been a lot of literature also that shows that, like I mentioned at the beginning, um a single profound spiritual experience has been linked to vast improvement in quality of life and lifestyle satisfaction. Um, and and as we talked about, you know, the name alone implies that these plants can induce profound spiritual experience. Um, and uh from my personal experience, um I have a severe PTSD diagnosis um and an ADD diagnosis, um which I was medicated for uh for several years and um have not taken psych meds in the better part of a decade because of treatments with anthropogenic plants and fungi. Um, so uh kind of to wrap it up, um overdose and we need evidence-based approaches to mitigate overdose fatalities um and and to reduce severity of mental health diagnoses. Um, we need it, you know, in our country, we need it in our state, and we certainly need it uh in our city, in our home. Um, we we talked about that criminalization does not work and, you know, all of the data and and I'm sure, you know, anecdotal data um would point to the the idea that um there's a more severe negative impact on criminalization in communities that are largely black indigenous uh and people of color. Um, plant medicines have been used for over ten thousand years um to support spiritual connection, um connection to one another in community and a connection with nature, so. Um, considering that the Ann Arbor City Council has already passed this, that the Washtenaw Prosecutor's Office um has shaped policy in accordance with them passing it. Um, I think in in an effort to align this policy and and make it more cohesive, uh voting for this in Ypsilanti would be the right thing uh to do. And so I I urge, I urge mayor and city council members to consider voting on this as as soon as possible.
You sound good. I think um first I want to say thanks for being here and also sharing parts of your lived experience with all of us and this audience, um that type of vulnerability I always want to honor. Um, and also a lot of information that I think a lot of people don't know and don't have. Um, and uh, yes, I'm interested in reading the the rest of this updated information just to better educate myself. Um, and hopefully we can have further discussion about this with council, but I'll open it up to you all. Um, if anyone has uh questions or comments, uh council member suite?
I don't have a question, but I just want to um say that you put a great deal of work into this and I appreciate the detail uh behind it, um especially with the, you know, draft resolution and the amount of content that is in here and and backed up with, you know, research, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mayor pro tip?
Um, lots of folks in the city have uh, so you print, present a lot of information about studies at at various institutions and so one of the questions that people will ask is that um, you know, these are controlled controlled studies and how how do you answer the question of that versus um self-medication? And and how do you um, how do you answer that? How, you know, what? Is there, is there any sociological study in terms of places where this has been decriminalized that they can show uh uh that decrease again?
Uh, so they're actually, they're not all um controlled studies. Some of them, yes, uh in in pretty much all of them, they were administered in a therapeutic environment, but then uh beyond administration, uh there was, there was no real control. And and if you um, if you go through kind of some of the references at the back um of of that that booklet, um there are studies that were basically um just based on on response, so they they interviewed individuals who are self-medicating uh with antigens um who also had pre-existing diagnoses. Um, and then uh assess them relative to diagnostic criteria and and then recorded, you know, like, hey, this is how long you've been using antigens. Um, this is, you know, how much your your scores in those diagnostic criteria have have gone down or or not, and in all of those cases, they they had in fact gone down.
Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments, questions from council? Ain't none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so after all these wonderful presentations, this is our first opportunity for public comment. So individuals will have three minutes to address council. Please come up to the podium when I call your name. Um, you can say your name and your address if you feel so comfortable. I'll start with the list and then I will move to folks who may not have signed up in the audience who may want to speak and then we will see if there are any individuals on Zoom. And so our first person is Deki Alexander. Good evening.
There is this joke, two Jews, five opinions, yet the majority of Jewish individuals who live and or work in Ypsilanti agree on one thing, that the city council, of city council's resolution two twenty two is just drek. One-sided, club-footed, spinning out sound bites full of words which divide rather than bridge, harm rather than heal, and actually hinder any type of cross-cultural relations between Jews, Muslims, and Arabs here in this time and in this town tonight. I'll be speaking on behalf of both myself, someone who has lived and or worked in Ypsilanti for almost thirty years and is the current board president of the Jewish Federation of Greater Ann Arbor. Before I present to you a petition signed by over four hundred and eighty-four community members asking for the total retraction of the resolution, I want to tell you what I'm not going to talk about. I am not going to talk about the ridiculousness of a council in a city of almost twenty thousand to put forth a resolution of a complex international issue they have no control over. I am not going to talk about the atrocities of Gaza, past and present are beyond devastating. The appropriation of the term genocide against the people Jews who were actually genocide, equally devastating. But since you opted to dip your toe, foot, and soul into the Israel and Hamas war, I will talk to you about this council's act in plagiarizing another city's resolution, Richmond, California, one eighty-three, yet deleting from your version any mention of empathy for the Jewish experience and our own generational trauma. Unlike in Richmond's resolution, you omitted the phrase "we take seriously the entreaty" Unlike in Richmond's resolution, you admitted the phrase, we take seriously the entreaty never again and that historical memory of the Holocaust. For most of us diaspora Jews, we grew up hearing and feeling the impact of the Holocaust when six million Jews went methodically slaughtered. We only zero point two part of the world population, just under fifteen million. So when we were rivered to the sea in nineteen thirties and forties. Those of us here know how simply lucky we are to be alive. Most glaring was the resolution's omission of and rare reference to Hamas, including any recognition of the over twelve hundred Israelis killed by them. Basically, you did what Hamas wants to do to Jews. You erased us. And you wonder why we are Molotov cocktail of rage, despondence and disgust at this resolution. If there is one crystal clear message from your resolution, it is your deliberate omission of Jewish trauma, which translated means you, me, we, us Jews are not welcome here. In Ypsie. What else? Could it be? To paraphrase Deborah Lipstadt, your resolution may not be anti Semitic in intent, but it is certainly anti Semitic in impact. In our petition, we ask for three things for this council. Please retract this resolution, apologize for excluding intentionally or not the voices. Of the Ypsilanti Jewish residents from your resolution and participate. In anti bias training whose approach includes anti hate work inclusive of antisemitism. Can you try for all three? Will go a long way towards moving this community forward. I thank you so much.
Thank you. Next we have Tracy Kramer.
Good evening. That's, it's gonna be hard to follow. So I'm coming to you as a resident of the area for four and a half years, but of the city of Ypsilanti proper for since last October. She covered a lot of what I had wanted to talk about, but I want to focus on when some of the language comes up around. You know, ethnic cleansing such as she described. Not only is that historically like. Not only is that historically inflammatory, I also find that in my experience, living here and elsewhere. A lot of people don't tend to make the distinction between actual Israelis in Israel or the IDF or government folks versus. Just whatever Jew they find floating around, right? Like, I've seen this in. Ann Arbor trying to go to Saturday morning Shabbat services and there's the protesters out there. So it's kind of dismayed to find that this was coming up in our city council resolution, right? Like, I've been so excited to be in a city where. There's a lot of, there's a lot of work and a lot of elevation of folks and community outreach and you've, I've. Been really excited to hear about some of the stuff that is getting funded tonight that I had no idea about. I, I love this city and I want, I think, I think we can do better. I think the city council can support Palestinian civilians in a way that doesn't use this kind of language or could. Like. Could more directly provide, like, using, using, just. The language that's used doesn't really provide like a direct benefit to anyone. It just, it just targets a specific. And doesn't offer, and therefore we're going to help civilians by doing X, Y, and Z things. That's as a voter and as a resident here, that's, that's what I would have liked to have seen. It's also like. When I, when I see that, it's like, oh, as a Jewish person living in the city of Ypsilanti, you know, when people are using this language, I'm like, okay, I can either keep this under wraps. Right? About this big part of my identity. Or if like a brick comes through my window, I know it's that I'm probably going to get told, oh, you must have done something to do that. My husband is not Jewish. Uh, this language tells me that. His break through his window is kind of just collateral of how this works out. That's all the points that I had. So thank you. Thank you very much for your time and consideration to this.
Thank you. Josh Winston, Josh Winston? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm the Rabbi at Temple Beth MF in Ann Arbor and uh. Representing uh, of course, um, hundreds of families throughout Washtenaw County and a number of which who of course live in. Ypsilanti and here to talk about resolution two two two. There was a ceasefire uh, on October sixth that was broken on October seventh. There are factual issues in the resolution that was passed. Just last month, Israel provides, and in fact, uh, one of these things around the water, Israel provides just ten percent of water to Gaza. Hamas is responsible for the other ninety percent. They have gone to extreme lengths to ensure that that water uh, is not uh, is not available to their own citizens. Medical needs of Palestinians in Gaza, it is a serious issue, a major issue in the area. Vivian Silver, a peace activist. Whose body was just identified last week because it was burnt beyond recognition. Was an Israeli who helped Palestinians receive treatment in Israel. She was murdered by Hamas on October seventh. Intentions matter. The resolution as passed last month erases my people's pain. Your resolution references the Hamas attack, but fails to condemn it. How is that possible? That you fail to condemn an attack on civilians, an attack that I witnessed. The destruction, just last week I was in Israel as a Kfar Azza. Touring, witnessing what happened there, hearing from residents about what happened there. I heard from. The brother of Hadar Berdychewski. The brother in law of Itai were murdered by Hamas. Whose babies, twin babies, ten month old babies left in their house to cry. So that they could be bait for others to come and try to help them and then were ambushed by Hamas in doing so. That's what we're talking about here. We're talking about. An action by Hamas. That led to the rape. And murder. Of innocent civilians. Whose faces were shot so many times with the intention of making them unidentifiable. That's the kind of evil we are talking about here. Your failure to condemn that evil. Your failure to notice that pain. Is a shame. And I hope. That you'll respond to the. Petition that has been presented to you to retract this resolution, to return to the priorities of local government, addressing the local needs of your citizens. To apologize for excluding intentionally or not the voices of insulate Ypsilanti residents from your resolution and participate in anti bias training. His approaches to include anti hate work inclusive of antisemitism. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelius Williams? Cornelius Williams? Oh, did you want to give comment again? Oh, you're, you're right, you're on here. Okay. It's all good. Okay. Bonnie Wester.
So many of you were here last week when I tendered my verbal resignation to the city. I would like to apologize for that. It was tendered in the heat of the moment. My resignation, in order to be official, would need to be written and give you sixty days. I did not write it down, nor did I give you sixty days. So I apologize for that and I hope you can take this as a retraction of said resignation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Ragland? No, oh, sorry. Yes, we, yeah, 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 sorry. Oh, yep, all right. Renee Smith.
Good evening.
I'm Renee Smith and I am the Board Chair of the Ypsilanti Housing Commission. Happy to serve uh, city of Ypsilanti now for around thirteen years. And I'm here to uh, support uh, the appointment of Teresa Gelati. I came to know Teresa Gelati while serving as the Washtenaw County Continuum of Care Board. I co chair that that board as well. I have for five or six years. Work closely with Teresa on the developments in Ypsilanti. She is really in tune with housing needs, economic development. Sitting on the board for thirteen years now, I can say that we've never had anyone other than myself. That has housing, affordable housing experience, business and public administration experience. With Teresa, Teresa on our board, that would bring that experience. I'd like to say that we do have, I have uh, my vice chair, Commissioner Brown here. Commissioner Brown um, um, has a ton of experience in the community. And also working with our residents. We also have our Commissioner Williams here, who's our resident commissioner. So as far as like the heart and soul of, soul of Ypsilanti in terms of people with lived experience, the history of Ypsilanti, we have it down pat. So with Teresa, she would bring uh. A much needed business sense to 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 the uh, housing authority. And specific experience in housing and economic development, which we do not have other than myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Fosler. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Um, it's good to see you again. I'm the Executive Director. I'm Zach Fosler. I'm the Executive Director of the Ypsilanti Housing Commission. And I came for the same reason tonight, um, to issue my support um, for Teresa Gelati and urge you to um, appoint her to the Board of the Housing Commission. We have, you know, Teresa is a a leader, uh, is widely known in this community as a really dedicated public servant. Um, you know, as you probably know, she served. The city of Ypsilanti as a planner and also as a director of the Office of Community and Economic Development for the county. In a part of that role, what she had to do was um, be fairly intimately involved in our own deals. So she actually is a board member who can really hit the ground running. At the Housing Commission. Um, she knows our properties, she knows our programs. She was involved from when we started converting our public housing through the tax credit program over to what you see now, which is. A far better, a far better uh, solution to affordable housing in our community. She's very familiar with um, community development grants, the kinds of grants that the county has, um, like home grants, brownfield remediation funds. All those kinds of things. Um, and really, she's just a collaborative leader in general, you know, she's led, um, she was very involved with the master planning and city of Ypsilanti and beyond that. Other community engagement of and events. And so as we look forward to growing the Housing Commission and growing our affordable housing supply in this community, which we, I think we all know we desperately need. This is a person who who brings um, a deep experience in the development of affordable housing and community development. And really engage in the community so that when we do, when we do reach out to community to decide how should we grow. She's somebody that can really, you know, help us along that way. So with that, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Herga. Good evening.
Good evening. I uh, I came here to uh, speak in support of uh. Cornelius's presentation and uh, to express my uh. Sincere appreciation for his good hard work and I hope that you uh. Take uh, heed of uh, the work that he has done. There are. Always different things that compete with one another. The the needs of Palestinian Ypsilantians, the need of Jewish Ypsilantians, the need of Ypsilantians in general. The simple fact of the matter is that taking any action. On a divisive issue will create division. And. I don't know what the uh. The right, or if there is any right wording or language for. The uh, resolution to be made, but I do know that. Hamas has not engaged in the political process. For seventeen years. Half of all Gazans are under the age of eighteen. To assert. That the Gazans are responsible for what is happening to them is to. Not know what a calendar or uh, or basic math is. I don't want. The feelings of. People who have engendered eighty years of trauma to be discarded. I also don't want the current trauma. And horror that is occurring. By their erstwhile representatives to. Not be recognized and. I wish you luck on this most serious issue.
Thank you. Kat Leighton?
Good evening. Good evening, council. Um, so civic engagement is about being involved and caring. About the community and it allows people to participate in decisions and policies that affect their day to day lives. So I'm asking council to vote against removing the OMA requirements, Open Meetings Act requirements from the YPSI Police Advisory Commission. I'm aware through conversation with council and by watching recordings of past meetings on YouTube or the city's website. That there is an issue with civic engagement. Increased engagement can occur without removing a very significant law that guarantees governmental accountability to a degree. With this resolution to amend the ordinance. Or which this resolution to amend the ordinance was suggested by city clerk. Instead, the city of Ypsie. Of removing the ordinance could actively outreach to communities in all wards. For improved participation outside of a news post on your website or Facebook social media post. Are the council members able to outreach individuals in their own respective wards? Personally, I would have loved to have participated on a board or commission. In fact, I applied a few years ago. And didn't get a response, so I figured more qualified applicants were selected and appointed. But now we're here discussing this because of low engagement and participation. During the October twenty sixth YPSI Police Advisory Commission meeting, a commissioner offered. The concept of individual email addresses for all commissioners as a suggestion. But the city clerk, who I also believe resigned at public comment. At the uh, eleven nine special council meeting stated that individual email addresses for commissioners was not possible. The city clerk also said he'd look into commissioners getting the credentials shared and for their email account. So they can all review emails going into that. And I'm really curious about any updates on those inquiries, but. The last meeting for the commission on eleven sixteen was canceled according to a post by the city clerk. Removing or the Open Meetings Act prevents the lines of communication among appointed and elected officials from being muddied. To the public because it requires correspondence to be accessible as public information. It requires the content of the YPAC meetings to be available to the public. These guidelines that you created are not the same thing as the OMA. One is the state law and one is a failed attempt of trying to keep OMA with made up guidelines. That sounds similar to OMA but are less burdensome and offer the public no real guaranteed visibility. And transparency regarding all communications. To remain aligned with the desired optimal safety and wellness you've expressed for all residents, one, please do not vote to remove OMA. And give count commissioners email addresses. Two, also separately, if you vote to appoint Teresa Gelati, also include amending human relations. Support alternatives to policing, support decriminalization policies and affirm the resolution in solidarity with the Palestinian people of Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Guley. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Um, I'm Jennifer Guley at twenty one thirty six College Wood Street in the city of Ypsilanti. And I appreciate the opportunity to be back before you tonight. I want to, um, although I cannot even begin to speak as passionately and eloquently. As our um, previous speakers. Regarding the pro Palestinian resolution twenty twenty three dash two two two. I do want to uplift their urgent plea for city council to step back. To consider the implications. to consider the implications of the recent action to put that resolution forward in action which was deeply hurtful and insensitive to our Ypsilanti Jewish community. Stepped aside from our stated upholding of the importance of inclusion in our beautiful city of Ypsilanti, a reason why many of us choose to be part of this community. And it simply stepped well beyond the role of a city council in governing a local municipality. And I would urge you to listen and take heed and act upon the actions that they've requested. I am grateful that the budget amendment for the three-point-seven-million-dollar purchase of five-nine-nine South Mansfield will be properly coming forward to City Council for public hearing for first reading of an ordinance on that budget amendment. And I want to simply request that there is clear and public documentation of the detailed financial implications of that cash purchase on our city fund reserves, including updated costs for the renovation, environmental remediation, and moving transitional costs, both for the new proposed DPS site as well as on the existing site, which will continue to be a city responsibility. And detailed information on the financial strategies and timeline that will be considered, made available to the city to cover those additional costs in order for the new site to accommodate the needs of our DPS and staff. It remains a significant concern to me and a growing number of others in our Ypsilanti community that this significant purchase decision was made without this documentation. It's your responsibility as the fiduciary stewards of our city. And lastly, I want to lend support for Ordinance fourteen-twenty-two, establishing the Community Services Department. Quickly, as a former CED Department Director, this is an action that clearly can add efficiencies, and it's a strategic move to bring economic development, planning, building, code enforcement together, maximizing coordination and moving our city forward. But I would urge that there be thought given to delaying the hiring of that director until your city manager is in place. That's an important decision as part of building that team. Thank you very much.
Claudia Pettit. Good evening. Was that Pettit? But that's okay. Not a problem. Everybody says Pettit. I'm Claudia Pettit from nine forty-five Sheridan, Ypsilanti. When I was twelve years old, my temple was burnt down to the ground by an antisemite who was hired as our janitor. I'm sorry, because it's very emotional to me. We are targeted as Jews. I had my mat mitzvah in the basement of another synagogue because of the evil perpetrated on the Jews in this world. When this resolution was passed on eleven seven, I felt like I was twelve again. This is the only time I felt unsafe and not represented as a Jewish person in Ypsilanti. I urge you to retract the resolution adopted on eleven seven. The warning perpetuates the antisemitic tropes and does not represent the views of the Jewish citizens in Ypsilanti. It makes us feel unsafe, unheard, and uninvited in our own community. Please vote to retract the resolution. Thank you. Thank you. Arishay, am I saying that incorrectly? Regina? I'll just sign. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Carrie Pepperman? Carrie? Yeah, you signed. Okay, so you don't want to, okay, thank you. Jason Ringholtz? No? All right. Alex Pettit? Did I say it correctly? Good evening.
Alex Pettit, nine four five Sheridan, twenty-seven-year citizen of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti's Jewish community. Following introduction and passage of Resolution twenty-two-three-two-two on November seventh, I'm left thinking, what were my city council members thinking? I can't be sure. But it's either that they wished to express intentional disregard for the well-being of a large number of the Jewish constituents or that disregard was unintentional. I clearly won't find out the answer to that right here and now. In the spirit of goodwill and healing, I'd like to offer some comments based on the assumption it was unintentional. And in this case, it's good news. The good news is that first steps forward are quite straightforward. Step one is to remove the knife that remains lodged in the wound this resolution has created in the Jewish community of our city by retracting the resolution. I know my city council can do much better than for its citizens than it did on November seventh. And I encourage you to do just that. Please rescind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline Sand? Okay. Had to be sure. Michael? Uh-oh. C-O-H-E? Help me. McCall or Michael? Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Nancy Wiseman?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I reside at twenty-four oh four McKinley in Ypsilanti. Have been a resident since for about thirty years. I'm an active participant in the Jewish community. And I was also extremely offended and threatened by the Council's passage of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, two. We need a path to communicate, not to escalate. The world is upside down. And I feel that the passage of this is extremely inflammatory. And I would endorse the other comments that people have made about doing some training and how we can talk to each other and be civil and recognize how much we have in common. We all want to live, breathe, and have our kids grow up and be safe. But I see this resolution as a division. It's present in other parts of our city. So I would just ask that you rescind this and have greater participation to discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou Silver? Hmm, I'm sorry, I am trying to, it's an L. Oh, you know what? Lisa Zuber? Okay. Good evening.
Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council Members, my name is Lisa Zuber. I I live at one zero zero five Pearl Street, which I've lived there for twenty-two years with my husband, former council member John Gallas, and my son Carl. What I love about my or our city is our lack of sameness. We are not homogeneous. Most of the people, most people would probably say we're diverse. But I think that's kind of an overused word, and it doesn't really capture who we are. To be from Ypsilanti, you can't help but be involved in the community, whether it's with your church, your neighborhood, your children's school, or a youth or youth activities, and with any number of clubs, nonprofits, social services, art organizations, or boards. Does our work in and for this community always go smoothly? No, it's messy. And it's hard. And sometimes those feelings or beliefs have been around for so long and a very, very long time. But I believe our lack of homogeneity in the long run is our strength and bringing forth new ideas that bring us together and make us and make Ypsilanti better. Which is why when I heard of the unanimous passage of Resolution twenty-two-three-two-two on November seventh, just a few days ago, I was totally stunned. How could the legislative body that represents me and the people of Ypsilanti pass such a resolution? How many of your constituents did you talk to about this before you passed that resolution? How many of them were Jewish? How many of them were Palestinian or Arab? Because I can tell you, this is not a majority agreement on either side of this issue in this city. And this resolution, in my opinion, was one-sided until close to the end of the resolution. And many of the things that were in that resolution are believed to be inaccurate. The Israeli and Palestinian Middle East conflict is one of the most highly-charged foreign affairs issue of my lifetime. And it has been going on for a long time, long before I was born. And I know I'm older than pretty much all of you, except maybe Steve at this council table. I don't understand why city council felt the need to pass this, a resolution of this kind when there are many issues within our community that need to be taken. I would like to request that the council, one, retract this resolution. And two, review your process of resolutions. So a resolution does not get put forward on an agenda two hours before a meeting. I'd also like that the city staff also be, go through bias training, first of all, the council. And lastly, I would like to request that the Human Relations Commission develop a plan for community dialogue about this issue using the many resources that we have, EMU, Washtenaw County, and other community partners. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gallas. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Gallas. I live at one zero zero five Pearl Street and have for a number of years. And I'm a proud resident of the City of Ypsilanti. But as words can have consequences, I've made sure I've carefully considered my following remarks. I want to ask the council to be careful of the temptation to use your position to promote individual belief under the guise of official action. Council should be a representative body and so needs to respect your various constituencies through appreciating the diversity of opinion. Your prior action, however, did not focus on discussion or broader engagement. And I also fear that the perception of his signing disproportionate blame risks vilifying one side over the other. And we can see that harmful rhetoric has already caused an aberrant rise of antisemitism and Islamophobia in the United States. It endangers all of our communities. While I can embrace Israel's unquestionable right to respond to what was a vicious assault on its people, I can also insist that Israel abide by the same rules that make Hamas's targeting of civilians an unlawful way to fight against Israeli occupation. It is for these reasons I strongly urge council to rescind its previous flawed resolution to avoid further animosity and division around what is a tragic suffering of innocents.
Thank you. Thank you. Jason Codier? Codier? Is it, what?
Alrighty, hold on, let me get in my notes before you hit the time.
Good evening.
About to say. Hello, my name's Jason. You know my full name and address. I don't want to say it because there's so many people overdosing on pride and heritage. They might be passionate and do something. I I'm here about two things, freedom and war. Earlier, we talked about the freedom we deserve towards herbal medicine and the war on drugs. Now we're talking about the war for oil and profit. We plead for a ceasefire against mostly POC brethren that are forced into labor camps to work for free under protections of the Thirteenth Amendment. That's the war on drugs. Using violence to control others is the opposite of what it means to be an American, regardless of our history. It means that we're okay with the country, Israel, just as we're okay with South Africa, Germany, and our own in the past. But it isn't what we mean by freedom of religion. Being free to worship whatever imaginary dude in the sky, whether Yahweh, Allah, God, which are all the same person, is okay. But to be filled with such pride that you want to physically harm those and be okay with others being violently harmed is not. That's where freedom stops, where the nose stops. You can't swing your arms where the nose is. Who has freedom? Who can leave their country? Is it the Palestinians or the Israelis? Who can use locally sourced medicines? We use force in this country to maintain ideological dogma and profit. There is no difference. Oil reserves are huge under that land. If you're against slavery and the Confederate states of America, that doesn't mean you hate southerners or white people. It was a Confederate regime. To hate the Holocaust doesn't mean that you hate Germans. You hate the Nazi regime. To hate Netanyahu's use of force and genocide to gain land and oil does not mean there's antisemitism. The Jewish religion does not teach hate. Jewish people don't hate. Blind lust for nationalist identity molded with religious zealacy is what we hate. That isn't antisemitism. That isn't anti-people. That is anti-people that use power instead of education to get what they want. Using veiled threats don't is the same thing. The truth will set you free. One person's freedom fighter is another's terrorist. An outside perspective is the best way to get truth, and as pride and being stubborn blinds those from truth. So keep the resolution. Having a ceasefire is important. Pass the resolution against medicinal drugs. It doesn't create passion that makes you want to create violence because you don't want to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Those are the names I had signed up on the list. So now I will take hands in the audience. And I see the first, I can't see who it is, but please come. Okay, come on up. Good evening.
And I had no choice. My name's Jeffrey Maureen. I'm a resident of Itfield Town, or used to be Dexter Township, a member of, you know, Washtenaw County, and I've come here today, took a long ride because I thought it was worth coming here to address you, the council and the resolutions. So I'll move forward without my normal joke with only three minutes to speak. So I'd like to request you retract the current resolution as support and solidarity of the Palestinian people of Gaza. I'm in agreement with most rational people familiar with the Palestinian-Israeli issue that the current situation is both unacceptable and untenable. However, this resolution and this type of discourse is not only not helpful, but divisive and destructive. The attempt by any party in this conflict to attain the moral high ground is unjustifiable. And this one-sided resolution passed by the Ipsy Council is inexcusable. There is simply no more high ground here. There is no moral equivalence between attacking innocent civilians and defending your country and its citizens. The omission in this resolution of the horrific acts by Hamas on October seventh, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, and the fact that this was a terrorist act perpetrated by a highly organized group of terrorists against innocent civilians is absolutely unforgivable. To further exclude the information of this action To further exclude the information of this action is clearly considered a war crime and an act of, and your resolution is an act of disinformation intended to mislead, deceive the general public and community at large. The attempt of this resolution to reduce this conflict to the suggestion that this is a horrific act perpetrated by only one side against an innocent citizenry diminishes the truth and ignores the context. To have an open and honest debate about Israel and Palestinian conflict would be useful and welcomed. However, this type of rhetoric found in this resolution is harmful and destructive. It's essential to recognize that Hamas is a terrorist organization intent on the destruction of Israel. It attacked and killed over a thousand innocent civilians in one of the most horrific terrorist acts ever perpetrated. And it currently holds hundreds of innocent civilians as hostages. It is just as important to fully understand that there are absolutely no justification for this act. Period. You can be justified in your support of Palestinian people and the right to have their own homeland and to be treated with dignity and respect. I could not agree with you more. And you can disagree with the current Israeli political policies towards the Palestinian. Again, I'm fully in agreement with you. However, there are three things I can absolutely guarantee you. Israel's not going anywhere. The Palestinians, they're not leaving either. And violence will never solve this problem. I again encourage you to retract the harmful resolution. And instead, if it's your desire to address this issue, I suggest you consider trying to do this in a manner that is both productive and helpful. If you truly believe you have a moral sense of righteousness, you should not have to resort to omission, disinformation, and inception. Instead, it would be much more productive to have a rational discussion within the appropriate context. Again, please, I encourage you to retract this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Emmy Desotel. I live in Ypsilanti. I am speaking in support of the decriminalization. As someone who has been a victim of abuse in psychiatric hospitals, when something like psilocybin could have helped me, it's extremely important that we have options, just like it's important that Garrett Space is opening up in a couple of years. I am also the founder and primary admin of the Ypsilanti Mental Health Squad. And we deserve options. The people in Ypsilanti who living with mental illness deserve the chance to not be abused and to be not forced to take these harmful medications that have serious side effects and can make us feel physically unwell and mentally unwell. I was recently on a medication that made me feel like I was on drugs, but without visuals, which was no fun. In all senses of the word, but something like shrooms could have helped. And so I just want to really support that, and I urge you guys to really just take a look at the information and the presentation and be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Lakeisha Williams. I am a Ypsilanti Housing Commission Board member. I am the resident member. I am a recent graduate of Washtenaw Community College with a Human Service Associate's degree, and I'm currently working on my bachelor's degree in social work at Eastern Michigan University. I will be finished with that bachelor's degree by next year. And the housing board was kind enough to give me the opportunity to become a member. Since becoming a member of, since last year, I've learned a lot and I've experienced a lot, and I've also learned that this is an interesting and good field that probably speaks to me and probably will not only benefit my career, but also benefit me emotionally and, and benefit probably the world. I don't know. What I will say is that I am in support of the new appointee. The reputation that she has, I feel like I can learn a lot from. And I'm learning enough already, and I feel stronger already, even being on the board for, in my opinion, a short time. So I would like to say, I guess, that I am in, in agreement with this appointment. Not really sure how else to say that. But I would like to say that I'm grateful that you guys are looking to appoint someone with a background such as she has, and that I'm looking forward to working with someone like that that could help elevate me personally and professionally as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi there. My name's Emily Swan. I've lived with my wife here in the city of Ypsilanti at 331 Vinewood Court for the last nine years. So I'm in here as a capacity of resident, but also as the lead pastor of a local church that meets in Ann Arbor. It's the Blue Ocean Church Ann Arbor. We actually share a space with the synagogue here that's led by Rabbi Josh and Cantor Regina, who are also here this evening. I actually just read the Resolution 2023-222 this morning, and I was frankly a little bit shocked. So I cleared some space in my afternoon and I wrote a letter. And because I didn't have the time to, you know, consider more things, I'm just going to read the letter that I sent to you just before I came here. So, dear members of the City of Ypsilanti Council, I'm writing in regarding, in regards to Resolution 2023-222. I spent a few weeks in the West Bank in 2007, 2008. I can personally bear witness to the oppression of Palestinian people. I share the council's concern for the ongoing mistreatment of the Palestinians, for the current loss of civilian life in Gaza, for the inability of civilians in Gaza to access clean water, medical care, and food. The humanitarian crisis is deeply disturbing. The majority of Israeli citizens also share these concerns, as do the Jewish congregations that I've spoken with here in Washtenaw County. There just didn't seem to be a lot of nuance to be able to parse some of that Israeli government from Jewish people here. That said, the resolution passed by council on November 7th contained glaring holes that I fear contribute to antisemitism. First, the resolution lacked a condemnation of Hamas's initial assault and expressed no sympathy for the 1,400 civilian victims of that attack or for their loved ones who are still mourning their losses. There's an underlying insinuation in the resolution, I think. It's almost like the Israelis had it coming due to the Israeli government's treatment of Palestinians in Gaza. And the absence of an acknowledgement of the ferocity of those events on October 7th dehumanizes the Jewish people and demeans their grief and their terror. Second, I think the resolution lacked care in its use of language, which I also heard echoed from some of my friends earlier. Terms like ethnic cleansing and apartheid regime, they carry specific legal meanings. And I don't trust that the YPSY City Council has the expertise to assess those meanings, in spite of the resolution trying to place a definition of the former in the content. While I recognize the term apartheid has been used to describe the relationship between the Israeli government and the Palestinian territories and other places, I have concerns that language that's created to describe the sins of white supremacist colonial powers, such as Great Britain, who was the actual colonizer of what is today Israel, the Palestinian territories, Jordan, and parts of Iraq, between the end of World War I and 1948, and whose colonization of South Africa, along with the Dutch before them, birthed the term apartheid. I'm concerned that that language is being employed to describe Israel. We remember that the state of Israel was formed in the aftermath of the Holocaust. So there might be language for that relationship, but it's distinct from apartheid. I think it carries implications that are beyond the scope of what we can say. So anyway, I ask that we withdraw that resolution and also listen to the concerns of our Jewish friends here who have been deeply hurt by that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alayna Weisman. I have been living and working in the Ypsilanti community for the last 30 years. I have spent at least that much, but probably more time than that, as an inclusion and diversity activist, advocate, and educator. So I come to you with two, with wearing two hats, three hats. One is community member from Ypsilanti. Two is as an advocate educator for inclusion and diversity, and three, as a Jew in this community. And I have a question for you. And it has to do with those three values that I see proudly on the wall behind you. And I want to know where diversity was when you were thinking about this resolution, because I don't see it. In fact, I feel the opposite. I've always been proud to be part of Ypsilanti, to work here, to live here, to celebrate here. I've been proud of the heritage of this city, this town, this community. But I don't today, and I didn't, I haven't since you passed that resolution, because you you effectively tried to erase me. Like, I don't count. Like, my whole community doesn't count. And that's not pride, that's not diversity, and that's not recognizing the diversity of, and the the rich variety of our heritage. And so, please, respect me and the other residents of this community and the entire Jewish community and rescind this ridiculously offensive... What is it called? Resolution. Thank you. Last, last my words, please, because it's not a good reflection on Ypsilanti. It absolutely, literally doesn't reflect the, the values that you are all sitting in front of. It, you have done a disservice to yourselves and to your roles as the city council and to the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ellie. I did not prepare, so I put it on my phone. I've lived here for 25 years. I'm, I'm an Israeli. And I've seen the world, but this is what I've seen, I'm seeing here. My parents both are Holocaust survivors as well. And what happened in October 7th reminded me of stories that I heard about my, what my parents went through in the Holocaust. And I don't, I have an accent. Everybody knows I'm an Israeli. And I don't feel comfortable living here anymore. I don't feel safe. And the action you took, that resolution, did not make me feel at home here at all, and I hope that you withdraw it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. If I'm not finished, when that buzzer go off, I'm gonna keep on talking. Because I witnessed three people tonight. After the buzzer went off, they kept talking. Now, presentation that I heard tonight, all three presentations concerned some, had some concern with the police department. All Ypsilanti Police Department needs is a sufficient amount of policemen that will be trained to handle all these things that was in campus in what we're talking about tonight. And I think that we have a chief that can lead the department that way. So that's all we need. We don't need all, all that other mess. We, we, we don't need that. Council, you need, you all need to put a cap on a lot of things that goes on around this council table here. You need to put a cap on how long the meeting go. You need to put a cap on how long the people talk, because some of the people talk too much, and it's evident that they don't know what they talking about. And I've been hanging around here a long time. I know what I'm talking about. You know, I hear a lot of people getting up here tonight talking about the disturbance that they have learned over the years. I've been through all, over the years. But let me tell y'all about mine. Six years old, I was traumatized by a family member being castrated by them dirty white folks down there in Alabama. Dirty, low-down Ku Klux Klan. And I also read about them same dirty, low-down Ku Klux Klan white folks that would take black women, my black woman, and lay her on the ground and stake both her hands out, put a horse on each leg, split her open, and when the baby emerged, what would they do? They would take the heels of the baby and cut the head off, and then tell all them black men that stand around, if you get out of line, this was gonna happen to you. So don't come talking about all this other mess that I had, because if I can forgive them dirty, low-down Ku Klux Klan men for what they did to my family, I'm sure other folks can forgive also. I am not, listen to me. Listen to me. I am not Jewish, and I'm not a Palestinian. But I think what the council done to vote, they did it out of the human side. They would have did it the other way. They would have did it the other way. But let me tell y'all something. See, I'm, the resolution was passed, and I'm still waiting on a resolution. I'm waiting on a resolution for America to stop killing my black folks. America kills my black folks. If it's not by gun, it's by another means that they kill. They kill by job opportunities. They kill by discrimination. The American white folks do everything they can do to keep my black folks from going forward. And guess what? I'm sick of it. And all you black folks ought to be sick of it, and band together, just like the Jews and the Palestinians. And if you do that, it gonna be some changes. But as long as you set on your fist and rail back on your thumb, ain't nothing happening. Lee Touson is the same yesterday as he was today. Any black folk that I helped yesterday, I'm the same way it happened to black folks today. I would not change. I am America-born black man, but guess what? I take on the Hebrew attitude. I won't bend, I won't bow, and I will not budge.
Thank you. Um, okay, I, this young lady here, and then you. Please come. Oh, okay. You're like, okay, then you can come while they're getting their legs from sleeping. No, with the hat. Oh, who, which, either one of you, either one of you. They both have hats. Yeah, sorry. Good evening.
Hi y'all. Good evening. I don't, I don't have anything, some, anything formal to say. I am very Muslim here, so I, I don't know if, it seemed like I'm the, I'm the only one. I could be wrong, but I've been listening to a lot of my, a lot of my Jewish neighbors expressing their, expressing their feelings and sentiments. I'm not here to debate. I feel like a lot of us have, you know, we, we've heard it all before. I just wanted to sort of lighten the mood. I know that's in as, in as appropriately as I can. We hear a lot of stories about, you know, our, our Muslim neighbors feeling unsafe, our Jewish neighbors feeling unsafe, and you know, a lot of, a lot of cross, cross problems. I don't, you know, I'm nervous right now. Sorry, y'all. But the point is, you know, my best friend is Jewish, right? White Jewish guy. I'm a black Muslim. This is the reality of, of Ypsilanti. I, I want to, I want to highlight that component, right? Because I think a lot of times we get sucked into the media spin, right? And you, you have a lot of people expressing outright feelings of like not feeling safe. And I, and I really take issue with that, and that is really a tragedy. And I think that especially for our Jewish neighbors out there, Jewish, Muslim, gay, straight, black, white, you know, tall, short, whatever it is, everybody deserves to feel safe, to, to be heard, to be, you know, to have access to a dignified life right here. And, you know, we, we may not have all the solutions. They may not come out of this room right here today right now. But there are folks, right, in, 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 in our lives right here, right now. There's a lot of Muslim-Jewish strong solidarity that I wish we would, we would celebrate more. Because the fact of the matter is, when I say I'm Muslim, by the way, I'm not like some convert, or you know, I didn't like, you know, find Islam in prison or something like that, like born, born in Egypt. And my family fought the Israelis, right, in the, in the 60s and 70s, so. And my best friend is the direct descendant of Holocaust survivors. So when we talk about like, you know, personal proximity to these issues, this is it. Right? Arabic is my first language, by the way. I had a terrible accent until I was about like six or seven, so. But I don't, I didn't, I don't, I don't mean to ramble, y'all. I just wanted to, you know, like, like bring a little bit of positivity. I don't want to take us, you know, y'all figure out who's right or who's wrong. There's a, there's a lot of Jewish and Muslim solidarity. Ultimately, I think the biggest enemy of all of us is poverty and is injustice and poverty. We have poor Muslims, we have poor Jews. I want to give a big shout out, especially to my Jewish comrades, because they've been some of the most vocal warriors against poverty and against injustice. And I think that would be, we would be remiss if we didn't, if we didn't mention that. So I'm not gonna talk all night, y'all. That's all. Thank y'all.
Yep, yep, please come. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's John Page. I'm 54. I've been in the Marines. I'm a union pipe fitter. I've watched mental health with my ex-wife, suicide, shock therapy, my dad. I'm anti-pill. I'm also, I've been accused to be a professional mushroom hunter for edibles, not magic. I'm also, I've been accused to be a professional mushroom hunter for edibles, not magic. I've been on the travel channel. I used to run MichiganMorels.com. I never did drugs, but when cannabis came around with my beat-up body, the stuff works. So then I took my mushroom knowledge, experimented with, uh, magic mushrooms for my own depression. And it worked great. It's gonna help with alcohol, people, everything that Corn said. You know, I'm nervous, of course, but, uh, Corn is very eloquent. I've known him for about a year and a half, and I've been watching and learning, and I'm all for it. Because the main thing behind this is ignorance. So if you learn, you can't die, you can't overdose, and you can't become addicted. But you can stretch your mind a little bit too much. But if you go on the low end, which is a health benefit to every human being on the planet, I advocate it one hundred percent. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ready? Right here? No? Are you ready? Yeah, you. Good evening.
Uh, good evening. My name is Alyssa Nusam. I am a resident of the city of Ypsilanti. Um, I have this fun bit where every time I come up here, I remind people that I am currently studying my master public administration, fifth year now. Um, so I feel like I have some insight to say that I thank you very much for doing what I perceive as the bare minimum as we are experiencing violence of unprecedented levels overseas and breaking the illusion that there is a separation between what is happening in Palestine, what is happening here. We, for better or for worse, are a federalist, decentralized nation. And what we say here, there are thousands of municipal, uh, governments in this country. What we say here and what we talk about here matters. And I don't want to hear that it doesn't belong, this conversation doesn't belong here. There was a, uh, parallel that was brought to my attention. When Emmett Till was killed, his mother made the decision to put her son's body on display for people to see. And I get on social media and I see children that look like myself, that look like any child. And I'm reminded of the reason that she did that. And it's because we are, are, are subjects, she had hand wringing about language and things like that. And we need to talk about this and we need to move forward, right? But every day that we take inaction, another child, another person dies. And their safety is not separate from our safety. It's, it's tangible. We see what is happening as we experience increased policing in every city in this nation. And we have to speak out against what's happening in Palestine because it happens to us directly. And I apologize that there are words within this resolution that were hurtful or harmful. But we hear about this question of safety, the argument that was made in the wake of Emmett Till's death by white supremacists, by the Ku Klux Klan, as the NAACP was undermining the safety of our, of these residents in these small rural towns by keeping, allowing black and white and, um, Mexican people, people of Mexican descent like myself, to intermix because this would inevitably happen. And we know that's not true. And you can speak on that because we have experienced massive genocide. We've experienced slavery. To say that Israel has only, that Israel is not going anywhere, Israel has only existed for seventy-five years. What would we have done if we said slavery has always happened in this country? I come from a people, ninety-nine percent Native Americans in this country are dead. Gone. And you don't see, and I, and I don't want to leverage identity, because this isn't a conversation of identity. There are Arabic leaders and Arabic nations that are silent, and they are complicit. And there are people who have shown tremendous bravery that are white and people that I consider my allies. It's not a matter of identity. It's a matter of seeing something that is horrific and doing something now. Because what we do now, it's the difference between who dies today and who dies tomorrow. What we do today matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audi- oh, please come.
Hi, my name is Avishai. I was born in Israel. I'm a, I'm a also, uh, both of my parents Holocaust survivors. I have lived in Israel for thirty years, and I have suffered the atrocity that were uh, done to Israel by its Arab neighbors. I would like to ask you if the council has ever made any resolution about Syria that since two thousand and eleven, Assad has killed over two hundred thousand of his own people. I want to ask you if you have made any resolution about what's happening right now in Sudan, that over nine thousand people have been killed by the Sudanese fighting each other. If you have made any resolution about that. My heart is aching for the Palestinians. I have lived there and seen injustice done to Palestinians. But it does not even come close to what was done in October seventh. There is no parallel. I would like you to please withdraw your resolution. I'd like you to think about the both people that live side by side and don't know how to live together. I'm aching for all Palestinians, but my heart is bleeding for what was done on October seventh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are the other ma- oh, please come.
Good evening. Good evening, Nicole. Thank you. My name is Chloe Gray. I live in Ward Three and I'm the artistic director of Fun Girl Dance Company and School located on Pearl Street. First, I want to thank city council for voting to pass the ceasefire resolution on November seventh. As an out of citizen of Ypsilanti, I felt proud to report to my loved ones from Dearborn to Batruun that my city supported our people's right to live peacefully. Please do not take this morsel of hope from us. Zionism and Israel are not synonymous with Judaism, which is a beautiful culture and religion, one that centers among many things accountability and peace. The creation of Israel was a result of Western antisemitism. I would encourage anyone who thinks that Israel is the rightful Jewish state to study their own history and the history of our lands. I want to expand on what a call for ceasefire means. Mothers being able to birth safely and receive C-sections with anesthetic. Babies getting to know their names because their parents haven't been maimed and murdered. Journalists reporting without being killed by an airstrike like Farah Omar and Rabi Mamari, who were killed at the Lebanese border in the last twenty-four hours. Teenage boys being able to call their friends to play football rather than to locate their bodies under rubble. Palestinians being able to access clean water, shelter, and the beds they were forcibly removed from. We are employing language like ethnic cleansing and apartheid because that is exactly what we mean. I wish the Zionists who have spoken tonight were half as heartbroken watching my people die as they are over a city council resolution showing empathy towards a population experiencing the same horrors witnessed in the Holocaust. Please stand firm in your, the choice that you made on November seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the audience who would like to address council? Oh. Good evening.
My name is Chuck Boltman. I live at two twenty South Huron Street. Excuse me. Um, I am here tonight to quickly talk to you about the, um, city manager position. Um, there is quite a lot of, uh, okay, so I'll say it this way. I listened to the, to presentation that Ms. Sell gave, and I was, um, I'm very impressed that there are nine people who put their names forward. But I'm a little bit disappointed that there's a number of people who were reluctant to put their names forward, seemingly solely about money. This is not a time for the city of Ypsilanti to not have a strong city manager who knows what they're doing. So I would like to encourage council to have a deep pool of candidates and to not forego considering someone because it might cost a few dollars. We have a lot of dollars on the table in front of us that are going to be spent over the next months and years in, um, to set up a new DPS. Um, a change order for that project will be less than the difference in this person's salary possibly in someone else's. We need to be wise, not, and we need to be, um, penny wise and not, or not pound foolish. We need to make sure that we have a city manager who can do the job, has the expertise. I will give you one little concern. Most of the people, I could be wrong if I didn't hear them all. Most of the people are leaving a job after only about a year. That strikes me as a problem. We want a city manager who gets to know the city well and can operate here well and, and, and help to guide this city. So if these people are leaving a job in a year, what will they do in a year once we hire them? We need to take, take that into account. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. Any others in the audience who would like to address council physically in the audience? Good evening.
I haven't, uh, prepared anything and like everybody else here, pretty nervous public speaker, but my name's Danya. Um, I've lived in Ypsilanti for the last five years with my wife, uh, Kat. Um, we live in Ward Three and, uh, we do what we can to give back to our community that we love so much. And, um, yeah, leaving, leaving that November seventh meeting was, was really just amazing because for, for, for you guys to pass a resolution like this is, you know, it's, it, it matters. It matters what we do on a city level. It matters what our leaders in our, in our city, what they, what they think, what they put out there. It matters, um, more than you, more than you could know. Um, and you know, I, I've heard a lot from the people here tonight talking about, you know, words or language that were hurtful, but at the end of the day, uh, we get to choose to scroll by our news feeds and, and not, you know, look at the children dying and the, the cities being torn apart. Um, I think, um, you know, I, I think language is important and what's happening right now is an ethnic cleansing. It is capital punishment. Um, the language that we used in that resolution matters. Um, and I, I hope that, uh, you know, I, I just hope that we can, uh, come to agreement that at the end of the day, when a country says they're going to flatten and make into a parking lot, you know, we're, I'm, I'm not sure why ethnic cleansing and why that word is being debated right now, and that's literally what, what was said. So, um, anyways, I've rambled and yeah, just support the resolution, please. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Okay, we can move to Zoom. Um, no. Oh, oh, okay. I was gonna circle back, but. No, you're good. Good. You're here. Here. Hi, Brian. No, it's okay.
Um, Brian Garinger, uh, word one. Um, I think that you should not remove Oma from YPAC. And I think that instead you should work harder to get people to fill those roles. Um, anyway, so I am the grandchild of Holocaust survivors. Um, I've never been more disappointed in my community than I am tonight. Um, like some other brilliant people said, um, we are witnessing a, uh, genocidal actions on an unprecedented scale, things that we have barely seen in our lifetimes. Now, of course, uh, things that are happening in other places, wherever it may be, are terrible. Um, that there's something called whataboutism. This is not, we're not talking about that. Um, part of what is so, um, intense about the, the conflict happening in Palestine right now is that we have a lot of, uh, video evidence of it. So we are talking about hospitals being bombed over and over again. And you all are pissed about the resolution. You are losing your children.
Can you address council, please?
They are losing their children. Thank you. Sorry. Um, I'm so heated. Um, I, I appreciate you all so much for, for passing this. Um, I'm just like, this whole time I've just been thinking about like, like some, some other people brought up some great comparisons with, um, um, Emmett Till or, um, slavery in the past or the apartheid in South Africa. And what were, what were people saying then? We have to have a view of history that recognizes power in a way that is not just, well, you gotta like support everyone. Of course, nobody wants, uh, innocent Israelis to have died. Do you know whose fault it is that innocent Israelis died on October seventh? It's Israel's fault. It's Israel's fault.
Okay, order, please. Can you finish your comment? And can you all please be respectful? Because everyone else was respectful.
Hospitals have been bombed over and over again. Hospitals have been bombed over and over again. My comment. Israel, it is not even, it is not even, it is not, it is being admitted by Israel. It is being admitted, Israel. It is being admitted, Israel, that hospitals have been bombed over and over again. There is a policy in Israel called
Brian? Thank you. So, okay. Excuse me. Excuse me. What we're not, excuse me, pardon me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I understand, and we understand, that this is hard for a lot of people. We do. But this meeting is not gonna turn into that. I apologize, but we are not gonna do that here, okay? I appreciate your perspective. I appreciate everyone's perspective, but we're not gonna do that in this meeting, okay? Thank you. Thank you so much. We're gonna move to Zoom. I'm gonna preempt that. Oh, you do? Oh, yes, please, please come, and then we'll move to Zoom, and then I have something to say about Zoom. Okay. Good evening.
Hi, I, my name is Madden Litton. I actually, uh, live in Ann Arbor. And, um, I talked yesterday to my city council in Ann Arbor and mentioned you all as idols in Michigan. I encouraged them to follow in your footsteps. Um, I'm so thankful that you guys passed this resolution, and I really, really hope that you uphold it. There are many advocates that support you. Many of them felt too scared to come today. So know that we recognize that you are not anti-Jew. I urge you to stay strong in your continued support against genocide. This is not about religion. This is about human life and preserving culture. I applaud you all for standing against genocide, while you are wrongly accused of being antisemitism. Know that you are giving many of us hope where there is little among the world, and little has been um, found for a very long time. And lastly, I just want to say it's time to start caring about black and brown people in our community, and this is a great step to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You can only speak once. Okay, we're gonna move to Zoom. And before we do that, clerk, I just want to be sure if we hear anything that is inappropriate, derogatory, racist, we are ending the comment. So I want folks to hear that right now. We know what has happened in previous meetings, and we will not have that this evening. Um, and so we'll start with the hands that are raised and proceed. Thank you.
As the mayor said, I'll start with hands raised. Anybody else who wants to speak on Zoom, there's a raise hand button to press, please. Georgina Hickey, you are first.
Good evening.
Hello, sorry. Um, uh, thank you all. Um, I wanted to speak to the city manager issue. Um, the pool of candidates that we were presented with at the start of meeting, um, I think show us what we could get with the lower salary range that the city has posted. There are certainly potentially good candidates in that pool, but a, um, you know, at least based on what we heard, we're not seeing people who have a lot of experience or experience at the city manager level. Um, the salary posted by the city is low. Just to provide some context, Brighton has posted a city manager position at one thirty to one fifty. Um, and Traverse City just hired a city manager at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're low. Um, and I think this is a problem for us. City, um, Ypsilanti has a strong city manager structure. So we're low. And I think this is a problem for us. City, Ypsilanti has a strong city manager structure to the city. And that means the position carries significant responsibility. And I think the confusion, I'll use that word, around the DPS decision last week shows us just how much we need an experienced city manager. This person's going to carry an enormous amount of work to rebuild staff. And I think you, city council deserve much better support. So I'd like to urge you to consider raising the salary range and slightly extending the posting so that you can see what a pool with a better salary gets you. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Next, and I'm gonna do my best with your name. Mozgon Zavabias Fahani.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Brown and the Honorable City Council of Ypsilanti. I was in your meeting a couple of weeks ago when you passed that resolution, when you discussed and eventually passed it. I want to give you my respect. And I want to tell you that you have led the way to protect and support Palestinian people who are being murdered with the tax dollars that the United States provides for Israel. There is no doubt in anyone's mind, if you read the scholarly material, if you listen to the people who are experts at what a genocide is, there is no doubt that this is a genocide. It is not a mistreatment of Palestinians. It is a genocide. It is an attempt to exterminate Palestinians. And I can't agree more with those people who came and spoke to you in person when they say that it is our job, it is our duty, we must speak up. And what you say does count. It will echo across the United States and many, many more cities, just like Detroit, that just passed a similar resolution to yours. It will resonate and it will make the tanks and the bombs stop. And we save lives that way. Right now, there is no count of how many Palestinians are dead. In six weeks, more children have died in Gaza than have died across the globe for the last three months, three years in all war zones. Let me repeat that. In six weeks, more children have died in Gaza than have died all across the globe in all war zones for the past three years. This is a genocide of monumental proportion. We cannot turn our back. Don't be pushed to, to call back your resolution. You've been brave, you've been human, you've been strong. Stay strong, stay human and stay powerful. Thirteen thousand people have, have died. That is the statistics. But we don't know how many people are under the rubble. We don't know how many people will die by the end of this. It's a genocide. Don't go back on your humanity. It is, it is horrifying. No water, no food, no medication, no anti, no medicine for the children, amputations without, without putting people out. I mean, this, this is a, this is a situation that we cannot, we cannot stop and do nothing about. And you have done your share. We appreciate it. And we just ask you to hold on tight. And thank you. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
This is Amber.
Good evening.
Hello, counsel.
I turned her off by mistake. Sorry about that, Amber. You should be back on now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, counsel. I am, yeah, glad to see a couple of things come up on this agenda. I'm supportive of the decriminalization policy. And I do hope that we learn the lessons of recreational cannabis and see that we, at least in the city and hopefully maybe in the state, just stick to decriminalization. Maybe not legalize it and turn it into a capital commodity as we've seen with cannabis. I'm full supporter of decriminalizing of plant medicines. It will keep people safe and possibly a cottage industry could come out of it and that would boost our local economy here, rather than like a recreational commodity or recreationalizing would make just like huge capital interest comment and kind of corner the market. So just something to consider in the long run. I didn't get to see the care-based safety presentation sadly, but I am in broad support of challenges and alternatives to the cultural system. So I'm looking forward to seeing the next steps there. And hope that you are in support of CBS's efforts too. And, you know, maybe we can move some of those unhired police positions over to give more funding to efforts that help actually stabilize community. And then I wanted to comment on the Open Meetings Act decision. So I have heard about this going on for a while. You know, I don't get paid to come to council, so I, you know, didn't come for a while. And I've always just questioned why this was happening. It doesn't make sense to me on a gut level. You know, the path toward public trust is to make the city more accessible, more transparent, more democratic, not less. I understand staff and council members have put together something that they see as a good placeholder and without like having some of the quote unquote burdens of OMA, but I do think this should probably go into like a special work, working meeting, working session to hash out and put back the OMA on the commissions that I was removed from. I mean, really what this is, is not a problem of OMA. It's a problem of just not reaching out to committee members to ask them to serve. Like if each of you on council and staff reach out to some of your neighbors and friends, these commissions would be filled. That's what happened with me. Someone asked me and then gave me, you know, what to expect, basic expectations, and then showed me the link to how to sign up. And that's all it took. So I'm just like, why, where's the, it just feels a little bit like no one's doing their job at a basic level. So my personal history with trying to follow both discussions and decisions of the city has been, when I first started, it was really great. There was, you know, meeting, a full minutes instead of just action minutes.
Thank you, Amber. Your time is up. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, okay. Ceasefire now, free Palestine. Love to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Levi Hubbell.
Good evening. Hi. So yeah, my name's Levi Hubbell. I'm a longtime resident of Ypsilanti. I'm an EMU student. And I grew up going to Temple Beth Emech. And a lot of congregants are here today. So I cannot speak for all Jewish people and I won't attempt to, because we are a diverse group of people with even more diverse opinions. But the resolution that was put forth, I'm in full support of. It's simply the bare minimum. You know, we are seeing capital punishment. We are seeing an ethnic cleansing and it would be simply a lack of reality to say anything else. So I'm here as a Jewish person in support of that resolution. I urge Jewish people in the audience to simply do more research if you do not think what is going on is ethnic cleansing. I'm not generally in the habit of thanking politicians, but I do thank you for putting forth the resolution because it does make me feel proud to be a member of Ypsilanti. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ason.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts. First, I want to applaud you. You have shown a lot of courage. You're a torchbearer for weak and oppressed people of Palestine. And thank you for passing the resolution. And for people who really want to understand the, the issue, I encourage them to listen and watch Norman Finkelstein. He, he clarifies the issue, explains what Gaza is. It's basically refugees that were kicked out of their homes 75 years ago. Those kids have never lived in anything but occupation. So when I look at an issue, I always try to put myself in other people's shoes. And so the people who, the resolution is about ceasefires. We won't have more dead kids. I, I don't fully understand how someone can come out and say that they don't support indiscriminate bombing of civilian population. How, how can they support that? That's, that just doesn't make sense. Again, I would encourage everyone to go listen to Norman Finkelstein and other people who have done research. They've spent all their life on this topic. And, and the 75 years of being occupied, what would you do? If you were occupied? It is an occupation. To, to put it in perspective, if Jews were subjected to the same treatment by anyone, we would support the Jews and the oppressed people who are occupied. In 21, 21st century, we still have occupation. And, and people are cool with that. And that's just unfortunate. I, again, I thank you, the Ypsilanti Council. I appreciate you. And please stay strong. Thank you. Thanks for giving me the time to share my thoughts.
Thank you.
Next is Diane Schulman.
Good evening.
Diane, if you're saying anything, you're on mute.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. Good evening, city council members. My name is Diane Schulman. For over 45 years, I've been a resident of Wasana County. I hold an undergraduate degree from U of M and a master's from EMU. I own property in both Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. Professionally, I'm a, I'm a publishing executive and I'm an author of historical fiction. For nearly 20 years, I have worked with a 50-year-old company to develop vetted, unbiased, global research products that we sell to the education and library markets. That include 14,000 sources that range in coverage from USA Today to the Jerusalem Post to Al Jazeera. I am shocked and dismayed that the elected officials of a city council have taken it upon themselves to create a resolution on international affairs. Further, the unanimous adoption of Resolution 2023-222 affirming Ypsilanti's support and solidarity with the Palestinian people of Gaza is filled with biased disinformation and inappropriate rhetoric against Israel. I am obliged to comment on this resolution due to the gross omissions. This document is offensive, hurtful and anti-Semitic. It fails to acknowledge the following facts. One, Arab leaders have repeatedly rejected Israel's offers for peace and a two-state solution. They stand by their famous Khartoum Resolution declared at the 1967 Arab League Summit known as the three noes. No peace with Israel, no recognition of Israel, no negotiation with Israel. Two, Hamas, the elected government of the Palestinian people and a designated terrorist organization, has stated their intention to kill every Jew and destroy the state of Israel. Hamas has a genocidal goal, not Israel. Three, Hamas acted upon this goal in a barbaric attack. Beheading babies, torturing and abducting children, raping and dismembering women and burning civilians alive on October 7th. Hamas has stated they will repeat this barbaric and monstrous behavior again and again. Four, Hamas has violated international humanitarian law defined by the United Nations Security Council by killing and maiming children, abducting children, rape or other sexual violence and denial of humanitarian access for children. Hamas holds over 239 abducted people, including a nine-month-old baby, a three-year-old girl, an eight-year-old boy.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Three minutes is up?
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we have C. Holland Quest.
Good evening.
Evening. Please let me know if you can hear me. Okay, thank you. So I just want to start out by thanking the city council for passing this revolution. I think it's very important and I think it's imperative that the city follows in suit of Detroit by setting this precedent, by aligning ourselves with oppressed people. I myself am the direct descendant of, I am a direct descendant of someone who was of slavery. I am, you know, a descendant of survivors of genocide. And the Palestinian Freedom Movement reminds me a lot about the civil rights movement and how intertwined the struggles between black Americans and Palestinians are. And I feel to ignore the cries of Palestinian makes me think of what would have become of black Americans if our cries were ignored. I also want to say that to have, to, to be able to debate this, this resolution is a, is a privilege because there are women, men and children who have to dig themselves out of rubble every day. They have to dig the bodies and body parts of their friends and family every day. And we have the ability to sit up and, and have conversations about semantics, which further distracts from the purpose of the resolution, which is to bring awareness to the atrocities that are happening in Palestine. And I, I just really want to echo some of the things that are being commented on in, in the resolution, which is speaking to the, the lack of equity, being water, healthcare, et cetera. And, and I think I, I ask everyone to really take the time to look at the resolution. And I think it's important to address why you are feeling angry about this being passed. And then finally, I want to speak to why it's important that Palestinians gain freedom. Because when you acknowledge the plight of Palestinians, you are setting the precedent for other social justice movements. Because Palestine, Palestine is at the, the center of oppression on multiple, multiple intersectional levels. Apartheid, white supremacy, fascism, religious supremacy, settler colonialism, ethno, ethno supremacy, red lighting, segregation and the creation of ghettos. Palestine has been at the center of all the things that impact Americans today. Nelson Mandela himself even said that freedom is incomplete without the freedom of Palestine. And so I really ask that moving forward, we center the voices of the oppressed and we learn how we can better support them instead of centering the voices of people with privilege. And I also want to acknowledge the genocide that is impacting the Congo and Sudan at this time. And my hearts go out to them. And I hope that moving forward, the city of Ypsilanti, the, the city council, release resolutions that acknowledge those things. Because with acknowledgement, breeds awareness and it breeds, it, it breeds movement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jen.
I'm sorry.
Jen, just Jen.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Heimberg. I'm a registered voter and a resident of 48198. I want to voice my support for both the decriminalize, decriminalize Michigan, as well as the Care-Based Safety Response Program. Since we are all participating week tonight, we all know that there is a lot of suffering here in Ipsy. And both of these programs are steps in the right directions to help alleviate some of the burden of pain that our neighbors are carrying. And I just want to applaud both of those presentations. And again, you know, throw my full support behind that. In addition, I applaud and fully support the statements of Chloe Gray, as well as my neighbors who are calling for a ceasefire. So thank you to council for meeting this moment and supporting a ceasefire. So thank you to council for meeting this moment and supporting a ceasefire with Resolution twenty-two-three-two-two. Thank you so much. All of that said, the rise of both Islamophobia as well as antisemitism is very real and very serious. And I do fully support the call of our Jewish neighbors for cultural competency training because there is always more to learn. But I will end reminding any of my fellow citizens who, like me, you identify as white or European, European-American, that there is always more unlearning to do, especially when it comes to topics of colonialization, imperialism, resistance, revolution, and, and white supremacy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alyssa Marie Bose.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Alyssa and I'm just coming here to thank the council for being change-makers and pathmakers in the United States and passing your resolution urging a ceasefire. Many other countries have been in support of this, but the US as a whole has been gravely behind. I'm hopeful that the work that the council has done in this resolution will help other cities fall into soup. I also want to echo what someone said about the resolution belonging here in this council, in this space, because of this being a federalist state. It was amazing to see Detroit passing some, something similar today, and I just want to affirm your decision in this resolution. It is needed and necessary, and please do not retract it. A genocide is happening, and I'm thankful that this city will be on the right side of history when the United States ultimately, finally, fully accepts this for what it is. This will be in our history books as a genocide, but the US has a history of not accepting things for what they are until later. I've heard people say that this resolution does not represent you well, but it does. I agree, agree with all the specific language such as apartheid. This city will be on the right side of history with this resolution. I also want to echo that solidarity with Palestine is not antisemitism. Just like feminism is not hatred of men, and anti-racism is not reverse racism. Oppressive states find a way to appropriate and manipulate the language of the oppressed to justify their violence as self-defense. You cannot keep saying that October seventh is a justification for the Israeli government to continue killing innocent Palestinians in the name of self-defense. Just like someone said earlier, there is a huge resource difference and you cannot call it self-defense anymore. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Blaine Coleman.
Good evening.
Blaine, if you're talking, you're on mute. We'll try coming back to Blaine.
Here, I'm right here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, does anybody think that Nat Turner's revolt against slavery in Virginia in eighteen thirty-one was any kind of justification for white America to massacre black people? No, of course not. Let me tell you, apartheid South Africa bombed countless black people to death all over Africa. I remember it was exactly the way apartheid Israel is bombing tens of thousands of Palestinian children, women, and men to death all over Palestine and beyond. We demanded boycott and isolation against apartheid South Africa in the nineteen-seventies and eighties. Today, we likewise demand a total cutoff of all military aid to Israel as well as a boycott against apartheid Israel to the maximum extent allowed by law. We don't forget that apartheid South Africa was closely allied with apartheid Israel for many years. And guess what? The South African public doesn't forget either. Today, South Africa is demanding the arrest of the Israeli Prime Minister Netanyahu because he is massacring tens of thousands of Palestinians. They have no way to count the dead anymore because Israel has bombed all the hospitals out of operation. That is a war crime. And Netanyahu will end up in The Hague together with Biden. Whoever helps Israel massacre thousands of Palestinians will end up tried in The Hague for war crimes and crimes against humanity. So don't join Israel in murdering Palestinians. Thank you very, very much for your pioneering resolution that simply asks for an end to Israel's mass murder and bombardment of Palestinians and simply asks for a cutoff of military aid to Israel. This is really the very least we can do. And you're in good company. The city council of Richmond, California demanded the same things. And soon, other city councils will as well. Thank you again for standing up against racism, against apartheid, against genocide, and against war crimes. Now, the gentleman who said, "What about our resolution?" Yeah, there should also be a resolution for reparations. Yes, and there should be very large checks made out for reparations to black America without delay at the local level, at the state level, and the federal level.
Thank you.
You've got to fight against racism.
Thank you.
Next is Sumaya.
Good evening. Hello, hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I just want to say that what is taking place in Gaza, which is occupied by Israel, is a genocide against the Palestinian people. Men, women, and children, the young and the elderly are dying as we speak right now from the carpet bombing by the apartheid state of Israel. Israel has cut off food, water, electricity, and fuel to two million people who have been put in a concentration camp for many years. Hospitals, homes, and schools have, have been bombed. Thirteen thousand people have died thus far. Please, and I beg you, please, keep the resolution. The resolution saves lives and helps the people of Palestine from ethnic cleansing that is taking place as we speak. Passing the resolution is a humanitarian act of bravery and helping the oppressed against the oppressor. By the way, the beheading babies, raping women, and all the violence stated earlier has been debunked by the Israelis themselves. It was never, there was never enough proof. As such, the rape and killing and the violence that has been taking place towards the, by the apartheid state of Israel towards the Palestinian people themselves, who are the victims and not the aggressors. Thank you for passing. I, I just want to thank you for passing the resolution that gave hope to the hopeless. Thank you so much, and I hope that the resolution stays.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
There's a Matthew Strang.
Good evening.
Oh, he disappeared. Uh, next is Giselle Ariaga.
Good evening. Can you be heard?
Yes, I can. We can hear you.
Okay, I apologize for the noise in the back. I am actually on a plane right now. But I thought it very important to reach out to you guys, to thank you guys for passing that resolution. I know that there's a lot of people out there that have been waiting for this, especially, you know, in Michigan. Right now, Detroit just called for the ceasefire as well. And I just want to say thank you so much for listening to the people that have been on the streets chanting for you to call for a ceasefire. It may seem a little bit difficult right now, but I want you guys to know that you are supported one hundred percent of the way. We'll be here for you. I hope this resolution stays on and free Palestine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Arlie Ebersole.
Good evening. Hi. I will be quick. I just wanted to express my support of the ceasefire resolution. My understanding is that this resolution was brought to the council by constituents. Justice can be done by any constituent, constituent on any issue that they care about. And so contrary to what some people have suggested, it does reflect the interests of the people in Ypsilanti. And I think it's a really powerful thing that you have all done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Venus.
Good evening.
Venus, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, you got deactivated and reactivated, but you're on mute again. I apologize.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, I'm here to affirm the resolution, calling for a ceasefire in Palestine. A ceasefire is the bare minimum at this point. Even so, there are still so many people that are gonna die of hunger and thirst in their wounds and injuries because the Israeli government has cut off food, water, electricity, has bombed hospitals, admittedly bombed hospitals. And this is not the first time they have done this. This did not just start this year. So how? How badly have you dehumanized Palestinian people to see genocidal apartheid as justified? I see these same racist ideologies dehumanize black people in our own backyard, dehumanize indigenous people in our own backyard, dehumanize homeless people in our own backyard. And just remember that white supremacy is a system that anyone can uphold. Zionism is a white supremacist ideology. Not every Jewish person is a Zionist. And I just want to say, free Palestine, boycott, free Sudan, and free Congo. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back to Matthew Strang.
Good evening.
Matthew, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Okay.
Matthew?
Okay. Yes, I got it. Technical difficulties. Thank you. I'll keep this short. My name is Matt Strang. I, I work with Cornelius with Decriminalize Michigan. I'm also a student working on a neuroscience degree. And I just wanted to share a brief testimonial about psychedelics and then my path to recovery. So I had opioid use disorder. I was addicted to heroin for ten years. And I came to Ypsilanti in Ann Arbor at first through the recovery programs, which are great here. But I knew psychedelics could treat the underlying condition, which for me was like treatment-resistant depression. I got here and I had post-acute withdrawals, which is like long, it's a depression that just kind of never lets up after opioid use. So I was able to use psilocybin to treat, they call it PAWS, post-acute withdrawals. And it, it was able to lift that almost immediately. So I've maintained my sobriety now, living in, I'm now living in Ypsilanti for two and a half years. I've been able to treat depression successfully, two, two remissions of depression twice now. Effectively with low-dose psilocybin. And I'm an active member of the recovery community and I advocate for responsible use of psychedelics. And to kind of answer the question earlier, I do think people can treat themselves with psychedelics. Microdosing is pretty accessible. There's low risk involved. So I would encourage council to vote to decriminalize psychedelics. And I, to everyone else, I just want you to know, I, I hear what you're saying about the other issues, and I've been actively listening. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
There's nobody else on Zoom. So if there is anybody else who would like to speak, this is your last call to press the raise hand button. There is a statement that was sent that was asked to be read into the record. Lisa Wozniak from Ten Eighteen Congress. Dear Mayor Brown, Mayor Proton Wilcoxen, and members of council, I write in advance of tonight's city council meeting to voice my concern about the recent resolution in support of the Palestinian people of Gaza. While I am deeply troubled by the violence ensuing in the Middle East, the resolution adopted by Ypsilanti City Council fails to take into consideration the history and context surrounding and defining the situation. As elected officials, I believe it is your duty to be well-informed before casting votes on any and all issues, and certainly ones of international significance. The actions on the part of Hamas that resulted in the deaths of twelve hundred people and the kidnapping of more than two hundred were nothing short of terrorism. The retaliation by the Netanyahu government has been horrifying. Each and every human life lost is a tragedy. This war benefits only those who are waging it, with thousands of innocent people on both sides impacted. The resolution you adopted could have focused plainly and simply on that, acknowledging the pain and brutality inflicted on both sides of the border and calling for a cessation to this violence along with immediate global involvement to support humanitarian aid. If there is a rationale for a small Michigan city to make a public statement of any kind regarding the situation, I would much rather have a statement like that on the record. Thank you for taking the time to reconsider the resolution tonight. I urge you to be very careful in choosing the words you use, understanding there have been both Palestinian and Israeli babies, teenagers, mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, uncles, aunts, and grandparents lost in the horrific violence. And there is now a hand raised. Michelle Donaldson.
Good evening. Hi, hi, I'm Michelle Donaldson. I am hoping to speak out in advocacy for the decriminalization of entheogenic plants. I am a member of Decriminalize Nature Michigan, an advocate for the use of entheogenic plants and the work that they do with harm reduction. And I have seen it change my life and so many people's lives, having access to entheogenic plants and harm reduction services. I was in a severe alcohol abuse situation for twenty-plus years of my life. And when I eventually stopped that, there was a lot of shame and guilt, depression, anxiety that came along with quitting this twenty-year habit. And my options were to seek a pharmaceutical intervention or I did some research and came across these entheogenic plants and the potential for what they could do. And so I took the opportunity to choose a different path. And that was two and a half years ago, and it has significantly changed my life. I've been sober this entire time. And seeing the, the wonderful work that these plants can do for trauma survivors, veterans with PTSD, addiction. There's just so many avenues that decriminalizing these plants and making them available to other people will, will only benefit the community and the larger state. So thank you for hearing my voice, and I hope we can heal more people.
Thank you.
Last call for anyone else on Zoom? There is none. I would just like to quickly say I did also submit my resignation in haste and anger on November ninth. I never submitted it in writing either. I would like to apologize for that. And since I never submitted it in writing and made it official, I would hope that you can accept my apology and consider that resignation rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not speak during the first round who would like to address council? Please come.
Good evening.
Good evening. Should I say my name?
Yes, please.
Adam Brody. Just felt like I needed to say something because of how sensational tonight's meeting has been. To start, I don't, for the Palestinian resolution, I wouldn't want it withdrawn. I would rather want it revived. Start on Jewish, raised reform, largely secular. And this conflict has been one of the few issues where I'm disappointed by most sides in the last month. In the past, I've been appalled by Netanyahu's push for settlements in the West Bank and general disregard for the value of Palestinian lives, especially in military or police operations. And the current humanitarian crisis in Gaza is an extension of that. And in the past, I would have joined groups pointing that out. Then October seventh happened. Israeli citizens died inexcusably by the hands of Hamas. And I was scared because And I was scared because I knew this would be pretext to an attack on Gaza by Netanyahu and his government, and many more Palestinians would die as a result, and I thought most people would agree with that sentiment. Then I saw a side I hadn't seen before, pure vindictiveness. On the very, very far fringes, no one in this room is aligned with this. When Israeli casualties came up, I heard the response, "There are no citizens, only settlers." That shook me. Many Jews see this, and many Jews are scared. I believe your intent for the resolution was good. It's an issue that should be addressed, and you shouldn't feel like you shouldn't address it because you're a city council. The statement is symbolic, and I appreciate that. But I also believe that the fright from the Jewish community was not considered in the resolution, and how high tensions are. I think a small acknowledgement of that could have prevented this. And I also believe most Jews are appalled by what's going on in Gaza right now. And the violence should stop. No one is, I believe, dismissing that in this room. What's happening right now is horrid. And I am proud that this council addressed it. But I don't, but I think it should be addressed without our fears being mistaken for arguing over semantics or our fears overshadowing what's happening in Gaza. Thank you for your valiant attempt, and I hope the council corrects it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not speak before who would like to speak now? Oh, okay. Good evening.
Hello, Desiree Simmons. Um, I know there's some things I can say officially, but I want to speak this as a member of community. Um, starting with just saying that I love all people. Um, and so this is really difficult because I also see this in a large picture of a divide that the status quo is trying to build in, um, to separate us as we build power to topple it all. Uh, Jewish Black solidarity has a long history in this country. Um, and it's really difficult talking about pain, um, because I feel it, um, as pe- of people who have been displaced, people who cannot go back, people who have, for generations, had trauma born into our bodies that still continues as state-sanctioned violence continues in this country. Um, when talking about October 7th, one of the things that I know is true is that the story keeps changing. It reminds me of weapons of mass destruction and that we will look back and see that there are more than one truth that has been put forward. When I think about words that, when I'm talking about state-sanctioned violence, I'm talking about words that people in positions of power said and have done since that day. Just a few things. We have, uh, our prime, the Prime Minister on October 8th saying, "We will turn Gaza into an island of ruins." We have an Israeli politician of that same party on October 7th saying, "Now there is only one goal, Nakba, one that will dwarf the Nakba of 1948." We have the Defense Minister of Israel on October 9th saying, "There will be no electricity, no food, no fuel. Everything is closed. We are fighting animal people. We are acting accordingly." Animal people, over and over and over again. We have the Minister of Women Affairs on October 13th saying, "I don't care about Gaza. I literally don't care about Gaza. They can go swimming in the sea." We have the Major General of the Army on October 9th saying, "Animal humans will be treated accordingly. You wanted hell, and you will get hell." My people have been called animals. And so when I have to hear that calling into question these kind of accounts makes me anti-Semite, I feel that. I don't believe that the city council resolution went far enough. I don't want it end to war aid only to Israel. I want it end to all war aid, period. When talking about the shared values of this country and Israel, I do not share, support the shared values of colonialism, imperialism, and continuing to move toward the, toward right-wing politics. When people were marching in DC and had some of those speakers alongside the Jewish Federation who literally hate me now, speaking because of this one shared, that brings me pain.
Thank you.
Because who will be coming next? Who will you turn back to?
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address counsel? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Okay. Um, I know some of you have been here a long time, and so if we, we are gonna have to extend our meeting because it's 9:36 first. And then second, I would like to take a short recess, um, before we move forward because I think we need a break. So can somebody move to extend?
Move to extend to 11:00 PM.
Just for our first day. All right, move to 11:00 PM. Uh, all in favor?
All right.
We are gonna adjourn till 9:45. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Um, and we will move on with the agenda. Uh, Mayor Proton, you have our one and only ordinance on the agenda this evening.
Resolution number 2023-229, resolved by the Council of Ypsilanti, City of Ypsilanti, be it resolved that an ordinance to add a new Division 9 to Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Departments of the City of the City of Ypsilanti Code of Ordinances to create the Department of Community Services, create the position of Director of Community Services, establish the functions of the department to provide for the prescription of departmental rules and regulations be approved on first reading, and I say move.
It's been moved and supported. Um, do you want to give us some presentation before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, this is, these, all these, uh, departments were combined in 2012 by a previous city manager. They were never codified into ordinance, which is the right of council. Um, and then they were separated by the last city manager and is following a, uh, study by Carlisle Warman. It was, uh, suggested that they function well together, so I'm just asking that, uh, council codify this, uh, practice that goes back a decade.
Great. Thank you. Um, I'll open the public hearing and then we'll do discussion or comments from council after. So the public hearing is now open. If there's any member of the audience who would like to speak to this ordinance, uh, please raise your hand. Um, I will call on you to approach the podium, or if you are on Zoom, then I will have our clerk, uh, look for hands there. Mr. Garringer?
Sup, everybody? Um, I actually, um, I'm gonna make a really quick comment, which is just that I would love if, uh, you all would give a brief synopsis of what this entails um, before making decisions, because I, this is the first I'd seen it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to talk to counsel about this? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak to us about this?
Is anybody on Zoom? Uh, please press the raise hand button.
Nope. All right, thank you. Uh, seeing none, Mayor Proton, you can close the public.
Hmm. Resolution number 2023-230, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, the public hearing for an ordinance to add a new Division 9 to Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Departments of the City of, the City of Ypsilanti, Departments of the City of Ypsilanti Code of Ordinances to create the Department of Community Services, create the position of Director of Community Services, establish the functions of the department, provide for the prescription of departmental rules and regulations, be officially closed, and I say move.
Support.
It's moved and supported. On favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so, um, this was presented, uh, to us two, one meeting ago, two meetings?
Seventh.
On the, on the seventh, but is it possible, city manager, you could just explain kind of what this looks like?
Sure. Essentially, um, this department will be separated into two divisions. One would handle ec- economic development and, uh, planning. The other would handle building and code enforcement. This was merged together back in 2012, and actually Teresa Gelati was the, uh, was the director of this initially. Um, and this is following, uh, like I said, a, an audit, and this creates better efficiency from project start to project completion. Um, and also it provides each division has their autonomy under the director so they can do their own things and coordinate together. Um, this would also, um, the, we, we still have to negotiate this with the DDA, but the intent is to have the DDA director separated from, um, uh, the, the city completely and have that funded completely by the DDA. Um, and the audit also produced that the department is lacking admin, so in the savings of this, we, we added an admin that has, uh, half, half city time, half DDA time. And it's really just to create greater efficiencies and really make the director just the director and not have to, um, take on other responsibilities as has been practiced in the past.
Right. Thank you. All right, discussion, questions from council about this update or addition to the ordinance? Councilmember Sweet?
Uh, I just want to say that I'm looking forward to this new form department and how this will be a better service and operation to the city. Um, I think that this assessment kind of brought some things to light that we needed to look at, and I think some, um, the way that it came out and the proposed, uh, plan, um, I think will help get us in a better place operationally. Um, and I like the, specifically the DDA portion too, um, that they're able to fund their own full-time directors will be very beneficial, um, to the DDA, but also to the city as well. So there's a win-win, I think, for both entities there.
Um, yeah. Uh, is there a hand on there? Oh, Councilmember D Simmons.
Um, so this is actually just a repeat question. So, um, when looking at the these different departments, so we have our building manager, division manager, and I'm just wondering if we have an update of our current person who will be in that role?
Um, that, that's a, an HR issue, so I can't really discuss that in open session.
Okay. So, um, one of the thing that, the reason I ask is I think one of the, the benefits of this, um, combination is to think about how our, our, um, code en- enforcement, our rental inspections, our building inspections can be connected with as we think about, um, how we plan our space. Um, and, um, think about equity and economic development, and so I think that that makes a lot of sense. Um, and I definitely feel like we have been hamstrung in our ability to do so um, at the way things are working currently, and so I have a lot of hope that we can get better and we can have, um, staff in those positions.
Thank you. Um, I guess what I, what I will say is I'll just echo that I agree. I'm, I'm happy to see this. I think one of the things that stand, stands out to me the most is the conflict that it has created with the DDA having a split that staff person. Um, and I like the restructure, especially, um, because we, we, we had it similar, um, at the top, uh, at one point, outside of the DDA, um, director being a separate position, and I think that will also allow for the DDA to be able to maneuver differently and advocate for themselves in a way and not feel the conflict for that person representing both parties, um, at the table when decision are being made that, you know, require the city and the DDA to have to come to, uh, consensus or agreement on things. I think that's always been a difficult position to put someone in, and I'm glad that we are, um, hopefully going to remove that, at least as a barrier, um, from forward movement and our collaborative work together. I think, remember time you had your hand up?
Yeah. Um, um, I agree with those sentiments, uh, about the separation and the previous conflict of interest on those. I also advocate that, that, uh, the director, when this person is hired, um, should have a planning background. Um, we've had people in that position in the past that have not have a, had a planning background and learned it on the job. Um, and that was not sufficient for a lot of the things that we were doing, and then having that person supervise other people that didn't have planning backgrounds in those roles was problematic. I also, uh, advocate for waiting to hire this director, um, and do not post that until we finish our search for a, a city manager, and at that time, that person can build this team, um, from the, from the ground up. We have people in some of these positions, but these were also not just the director, but the other, there are other positions, um, that report to that director that, that will need as well, and I think it's important to have, um, that team building happen after the city manager is hired.
Yeah. Any other discussion comments from, oh, yes.
I would just like to, once this ordinance takes effect, it will be into the new year, so hopefully the new city manager will be in place by then.
Thank you. Anything further from council before we move to voting? All right, seeing none, uh, Clerk Smith, please call the roll.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons?
Yes.
Six yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember King, you have our consent agenda.
Resolution number 2023-231, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, that the following items be approved. One, resolution number 2023-232, approving the minutes of the November 7th, 2023, and November the 9th, the city council meetings. Number two, resolution number 2023-233, approving special assessments for the winner of 2023 property tax bills, as I move.
It's removed.
Support.
And supported. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Member Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
It's yeses, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are now on to our discussion regarding the city manager search. Um, so as you recall, uh, Barbie gave us a overview of, um, our potential candidates. Um, redacted, redacted, of course, um, for us to make a decision about how we would like to proceed. Um, the options, I'm gonna say them, and then if I mess them up, I hope you can help clarify, but that one is to proceed with the, uh, calendar as planned, where we will get the full slate of individuals sent to us on 11/28. On December 5th, we would determine who we want to interview, and December 14th, we would interview, and then so on and so forth. Or our second option would be to, um, extend the application deadline. Um, and then the dates will bump to December 10th, 15th, and 19th, and Ja- into January for interviews. The other question is about salary range, um, and what we would like to do about that. Do we want to stay where it's at and go with what we got, or do we want to expand that, um, and see who else we may get, um, to apply? So I will open the floor to council to make comments or ask additional questions, um, on this to give some guidance. All right, Councilmember Sweet?
So, um, from looking at our, um, so previous city manager salary, um, this perspective was 127. Um, and that's what's currently budgeted in the current, um, fiscal year. So, looking at that number and looking at what our current range was, which was, I believe, 103 to 117, I want to say. Um, so looking at that and, and no, we will have some, well, long-term realized savings with the new consolidation of, um, the Department of Community Services, not having two directors in that area and, uh, some other reassignments that will give us, not a significant cost savings, but some cost savings in that area. Um, and then to look at taking that 127 potentially up to a 130, um, as a, as a top As a as a top endpoint potentially for this position and then reopening to see what our candidate pool will bring at that salary range.
You're offering that as a?
Suggestion.
You just say that again, sorry, I just.
Um opting to reopen the position with a um max salary range advertised as one thirty per year. Um given that one twenty-seven was the previous city manager salary um that's currently budgeted in the fiscal year budget. And then taking that twenty-seven up three thousand with some realized savings that we'll have from the new uh Department of Community Services from not having two department heads in that area. Um and some restructuring there to give us some opportunity. So we're not having to have extenuating funds from other areas and kind of moving around some wage budgets.
That's that's an idea.
Yes.
You're not offering?
I'm not offering a motion right now, no.
All right, anything else? Okay, any anything else?
No, that was my thoughts.
Um I agree that the with reopening this or extending that um and increasing the salary, I was gonna go for one forty. Uh I thought about adding thirty thousand to the to the range and that would take it one thirty-three to one forty-seven. I think one forty is is sufficient to to at this point, yeah, that's that's more than the last uh city manager made. But you get what you pay for. So I'd be I'd be interested in in uh option two with a one forty max.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons? Dee Simmons, because only Simmons.
We don't have to separate here. All right, um. So uh I'm trying to like digest what y'all were just saying, but I'm also thinking about um. I know we wanted to get a sense of um some peers. So and I don't know if that's something that you have Barbie in terms of um like and I I I feel like we might have talked about this maybe, but like, because you know, when somebody was sharing, for instance, the uh amount the city manager is getting paid in different places and name like Traverse City as an example. Um I had, we had the opportunity to go Traverse City, I my first time there for the MML conference. And it was really interesting being in that space and also recognizing how different of a community Traverse City is for Ypsilanti to Ypsilanti. Um in in some really important ways. And so like I wouldn't consider Traverse City as like a direct peer. Um so I don't know if we have a sense of what where what the uh salary ranges are or what people are currently making in some of our peer cities.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, please.
Yeah.
Yes, please. No, go to the mic, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I um listening to public comment, there was someone that commented about the Brighton city manager. And I would say you absolutely Traverse City is is a different community. But I would say, you know, most most communities are probably thirty to forty, fifty grand over sort of the current range. So I think one forty would be fair. You know, one thirty, you still might be on the edge of those more experienced people not wanting to put their name in the bucket. Um but I think one forty gives you just a more some more applicants or more candidates that would be more open to it.
Uh um another question I have, and I mean, this is um you know, kind of thinking forward, but um are there any kind of stipulations or um kind of performance outcomes or things that we could have as part of a negotiation for contract with somebody coming into that position?
Yeah, so we would we would help with the like onboarding and something that we also offer. So let me back up here. All you're you're we give it like a year guarantee. So if something should happen performance-wise and you're not happy within that year, then we would relaunch the search um free of charge. We do offer three hundred and sixty-degree feedback evaluations after someone has been on. Yeah, after six months, um and our staff can help with that. We'll reach out to you, you know, once we get close to that six-month mark. Um we help with onboarding, we help with negotiations. Um so we're here to, you know, to help and and make it as easy as possible.
Any more questions, Councilmember Simmons?
Um the only other thing is I'm just looking at, you know, trying to read at the same time. But um just looking at this email from our finance director. And I don't know, just I don't know, Steve, as you're thinking about your numbers, if um yeah, if thought about like that year-over-year difference and also what that would do in terms of benefits. Um as well, so I don't know, like when we're talking about these ranges, these are all before benefits, right? And so when we're really talking about it, we should talk about like the total compensation um and not just the salary. So I don't, I don't know, I mean, that might be something for us to figure out like what that percentage or what that is added on to these different positions. And what that would look like for these, what the overall compensation would be that we would be um you know, adding for ourselves for the foreseeable future and also would be a baseline then moving forward too, right?
We have had was when we were doing outreach and and reaching out to our network. But one of the questions that came up was what were, you know, what are your benefits and how does that add to like total compensation package?
Yeah, so I think maybe even being clear more clear about some of that too um could be important. For folks and then the only other the last thought or, you know, in terms of the different options that we're considering. I'm wondering about whether um and I don't know, like just in terms of your experience. You know, the option where we uh kind of move forward and we get a sense of um who we have in our current pool, that's the that's the word, um who we have in our current pool. Um and then, you know, in terms of process for if we wanted to reopen. Um you know, in order to deepen the pool or to get a better sense of comparisons, maybe. If that's something that y'all have done in previous kind of searches and how you've seen that, you know, support the process or not.
Yeah, great question. Um I would say it's rare that we have to do that, but we have done it in the past. The only thing I would advise against relaunching like a complete new search for the full four weeks is you may lose some of the current applicants, so some may fall off. Um hopefully you some gain, you know, come back on, but there's never that guarantee.
Further questions, do you have any? Are you done?
I'm done for now, I think.
Yeah, we we got this brief synopsis here and and you know, the what we got was the last position. And what we don't see is, you know, and I get that's where we are in the process, but what we don't see in this is is what they did before that. And so how much administrative uh experience they may have if they work in that role. So some of these people were planning directors and deputy city managers and interns and things like that. But what what kind of deep experience do they have before that? And so that's that's kind of going blind on our part. And it's just like, you know, none of these positions are that long, twenty to twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty to twenty-three, you know, they've been in these positions. We don't know if before that they were in comparable positions or lower positions with less responsibility. If they got these positions right out of their master's programs and things like that. And so that's why I'm I'm asking to to extend this because um we've all seen, we have issues here that need to be solved. Um and we need as much experience as possible doing that, building teams as well, you know, that is that is you know, I'm not saying that people with this amount of experience can't do that, but um you know, there's missing information for me to be able to make that call on these people. Um so.
Yeah, very fair um comment. And I will say, you know, most of these candidates are light in the municipal, they have some municipal experience. They don't have that deep depth of experience. They don't have the experience of, you know, broader issues. It could be their first, you know, position in a village manager type role or a city role. You know, some the people that we were doing outreach with, they had greater than five or six years of municipal experience in that leadership role. Um and that's where we were seeing the feedback regarding compensation. Which is why I wanted to, you know, be able to share the information with you of early municipal candidates in that are comfortable with this compensation range. Are is this, but if you're looking for someone with a deeper experience, more depth. It's the they're they're asking for more compensation.
Thank you. Uh other questions, comments from council?
When you think about doing the outreach to other people, what were their qualifications?
Uh city manager experience, um assistant city manager experience. We look at population size, so trying to find those similar, you know, um areas that have population. Um we did a that, we do national outreach because we do find city manager positions, people, you know, are open to to relocating. Um we have a wide network within Michigan. Uh we we've done a lot of city manager placements, assistant city manager placement. So um we have a lot of people that we do reach out to, we go on LinkedIn as well. Um so.
One more. And so um when reaching out to these people, I know they said, hey, this this wage does not work for me. Did they express interest in coming here other than just the wage?
Yeah, I was, you know, we reached out to roughly thirty people. We heard from about, again, these are all estimates. About ten of them just said the compensation would be too low for them to look at based on, you know, cost of living and other factors that they know about the area.
Thank you. Um I think for me, I would have to, uh I agree with Mayor Portem in terms of just this snapshot. Just doesn't give me enough information um about previous history, um work experience or any other, you know, things that might be useful to us um to know about candidates. I think when we originally spoke, I I said that I thought the salary range was too low, like, I mean, it's a big job. Um and so I I would be open to figuring out how what number we should get to. But I I guess it's more for our folks in-house around how do we get the total compensation number? Because I feel like that was, we asked for that, not from you, Barbie. Um and don't really know what that looks like because I think, again, as stated, that could push it above the number that we've thrown out. If we don't know what that equates to. But I think total compensation is very important, even when I've negotiated my own roles, right? Total compensation is not just what my salary is. Um and that's important, so uh I know interim here, um but I don't know, can you take note or try to maybe notate this, we can get with our finance director or our HR director to come together to give us information on that. Um but I do think we have to make some type of decision tonight um to reopen. If we're going to reopen search, I don't know definitively that's gonna happen, but I think it's important to have that other information too. To make sure that what we're what we're doing and putting forward actually makes sense. I don't know.
I'm on board with, I agree that this, sorry, I agree with the snapshot that was, right? I think we'll know more as things progress, but I also am on board with Steve's thoughts in regards to uh the amount that he suggested and uh reopening of the position. Barbie, can you give us again what the timeline was for reopening that you would suggest?
Sure. Uh so we would extend the posting for another two weeks. Um so that and then that would give us time to to reconnect with people. It also gives people time to apply. We would close that search on Sunday, December the tenth. And then we would present to you those candidates, our finalists, Friday, December the fifteenth. And then review and determine your finalist to interview on the nineteenth. And then push interviews to January and that date could be determined.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I gave you that before Barbie came back. I said all of them. I did. It's fine. The only thing I just want to make sure that we keep in mind is that uh not that I'm in disagreement, but to remember that some of these other roles that we're waiting to fill will likely not be filled until we fill this one. So um making sure we keep those that timeline in mind.
Yeah, I I mean, that is hopeful, that timeline, I mean, it's very tight, like that turnaround. So one is like, we have to, I'm just looking at it, because it's like, oh, we have to be committed to it. And also know that we have council meeting that nineteenth, so it's kind of like double, like knowing that we're gonna be both looking at council business for that day, which we know also includes some other big ticket items as well as this, so.
Because the fifteenth is not an actual meeting, that's just when we get the the information.
You'll just, yes.
Correct, and I'll send that via email.
The nineteenth, we make the decisions on.
Yeah, so we'll get it on a Friday and then turn it around the Tuesday. And how many and how many applications might we be trying to go through in that time?
So on average, we have usually it's seven to eight.
So you all will take both the folks that are in this current, this current pool as well as folks who might come in and then narrow those down to seven to eight.
Yeah, we like, we would give you our top seven, eight, nine. I mean, we've gone as high as ten, usually seven to eight is a sweet spot. Um otherwise, you're overwhelmed with information. We do share a lot of information with you, so you can make a really detailed decision.
You'd have a weekend, basically.
Yeah.
Review all of that and come ready to make some decisions on the nineteenth about who we would like to interview. I mean, been through it before, can do it again. I'm more so wondering what folks are feeling like about this salary range, because in order for this to even make sense, what we're saying. It's it's dependent upon an increase in salary.
I'll make the motion. Uh I move that we uh consider option two to extend this to two weeks. Um so that the closing is on December tenth, uh with presentation on the fifteenth and determination finalist on the nineteenth. Um with uh interviews in January. And I propose a range, uh our current range is one oh three to one seventeen, I would uh propose the range of uh one twenty to one forty. The one hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty thousand dollars for the uh salary with a um instructions to the to the um finance manager to give us uh what that total compensation package looks like. Before the close of the um application period.
Is that okay? Should that be maybe separate motions or is it okay as one long one like that? You know, I just want to make sure there's clarity in it.
I guess let me read it back to you. Um so extend the city manager search to December tenth. Receive a list of candidates to consider December fifteenth, choose which candidates to interview on December nineteenth. Salary range is increased to one hundred twenty thousand to one hundred forty thousand. And um the finance director and I'll I probably I throw in the HR director um will uh get with Barbie ASAP about a total compensation package.
There's a motion.
Support.
There's support. Discussion, questions about the motion on the table, floor, whichever. All right.
And I guess the only thing, I know they're gonna get together as soon as possible and then the information will be sent to us via email, I guess. Right, so we know.
The fifteenth rolls around or you mean the the total compensation package? It it'll it'll be sent to us, I'm sure.
Yeah. It should be. Send it to Amy Sell and the the uh city council.
That's why I stipulated before December.
Before the tenth, okay, perfect. All right. Is there further discussion on the motion? And please call the roll. And please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
I think his question is after.
Yes.
Member King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Yes, as the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you again soon.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good night. Uh, council member Tucson, you have our, our next resolution.
Indeed. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two one three, it is resolved by.
All right, council, you need to have motion to untable this first.
I would like to make a motion to untable resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two one three.
Support.
There's the movement supported. Um, clerk, please call the roll on that.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Six yeses, the motion has been on table.
All right, so resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two one three, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti that the ordinance named Moving the Open Meetings Act requirements from the Ipsilanti Police Advisory Commission be approved on second and final reading, and I so move.
Or, or moved and supported. Discussion. Thank you. All right, is discussion on the second reading?
Yeah, um, the last, um, Y-PAC meeting, Ipsilanti Police Advisory Commission meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum. Our commission chair and another commissioner were out of town at the time. And if the OMA was removed from Y-PAC, it would give, um, the commission the ability to meet, because I believe it was three meetings before the last one. Um, the meeting was cut extremely short because a commissioner had to leave. And I feel like it's important for this commission body to meet, so if taking the OMA from it would make it, would allow it to meet without quorum restrictions, then yeah, I think will be beneficial.
Thank you. Other comments? House member Sweet?
Just had a follow-up question to council member Tucson. What, um, how many meetings have we, has the commission missed because of or concerts?
I can speak to that if you want.
Oh, sure.
Um, so it's been two that were flat out canceled. The one that council member Tucson mentioned that was cut short, which would not have been. Um, and there was one that was canceled due to inclement weather where city hall was closed, that could have potentially happened on Zoom, which is not possible under OMA. So for just in the time that I've been, uh, working with them, which is just over a year.
Thank you.
Wasn't one of those meetings canceled by request of the chief of police?
I, I wasn't.
Because he was out of town?
I was not counting that one.
Oh, so that's on top of it.
That's the fifth one on top of it. House member Simmons?
There's, I have so many thoughts, but one, one question I think is thinking about, um, or observation maybe is that, um, is thinking about what, um, one, I think that folks are looking for, um, more transparency than I think the OMA requires. One, I think that people actually want more than what the OMA requires. And so that makes me think about what kind of things that we could put forward around that. I think, two, especially within this commission, um, given some of the things that are in the charter that this commission could, should, would, do. Um, whether that has happened to this point or not, um, if this, if this, uh, commission were doing some of those things, recognizing, um, the high import of what that would look like. And also it makes me think about when there are specific, you know, um, some folks talk specifically about, um, for instance, if there were things where there was like investigations of misconduct or things like that, and it makes me wonder whether there could be some additional, um, measures of transparency and openness for folks around those, some of those things. So like, that would go above and beyond what the commission's currently doing, um, but some things in their charter where people would want to have specific kind of notice if, you know, if there was something coming before them. So it just made me think about whether there's things that we should name specifically as well, um, for those kinds of instances.
Mayor Protem?
Um, to that point, I thought it was, uh, clearly spelled out multiple times that, that those investigations were not the purview of this. Beyond the scope for a couple of different reasons, for, for HR and for, um, issues with the, with the union. And I know that some of that was, was just blustering by previous chiefs, so, um, if we could hear from the current chief about the actuality of, uh, the negotiated contract and, and what that means in terms of having a commission like this, um, privy to, uh, internal investigations.
Good evening, Chief Moore. Go that way. All right, good evening.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. Uh, to answer the question, there are, uh, restrictions laid out in the collective bargaining agreement, which would, um, you know, restrict the dissemination of, of certain information. And that's, you know, that's part of the, the agreement. We can't circumvent that. Now, depending on the severity of, of allegations, then that could, of course, change, but, you know, for normal, uh, things, we have to, uh, abide by the collective bargaining agreement. So, you know, our Y-PAC meetings aren't, um, you know, we discuss complaints and, and those type of things, but we don't get into, uh, allegations of misconduct and discipline, you know, as a result in those meetings.
That could only be discussed in a general sense. Not as a specific case.
Correct.
Which I think is, uh, what a lot of people in the community think is that was the, the primary charge of, of that commission was to deal with those. Thank you.
I think, I think that's what people think, and we've tried to kind of reiterate what the body is charged to do. Um, but we know from collective bargaining that that can't happen, um, at least not as it stands today.
Correct.
House member King, is your hand up?
No.
Okay, all right. Anything further for chief before he goes back to? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion from council?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so is what I'm hearing that things that are currently in the charter for Y-PAC are actually not able to happen due to the contract.
They're not in the charter for Y-PAC. It's not, it's not there.
Code of ordinances only allows them to review the complaint to make sure they were handled correctly. And if they were not, then the commission could, could either send that to the city manager or to the city council to review. The body itself is not supposed to actually review the complaints, only that they were handled correctly.
What, what information would they have to be able to do that? I'm just wondering, cause I'm trying to think like.
So there's typically, when I was liaison, you get like an overview of what was submitted and what happened, and if it was, um, like substantiated or not. Um, you don't get details about like who the officer was, if there was something that was substantiated against an officer, what discipline may have happened, or any of, we, we, you don't get that information. So you get an overview, um, a summation of kind of like what was complained about and was it, um, substantiated or not? How many complaints do you get a year? You know, are they, what are they aligned with? Like, were the topics, like, it's it's an overview from my.
And, and like, would you be able to get information about like, oh, this is a pattern, like this person's come up multiple times?
You're not getting information about who it is or anything like that because of collective bargaining. You're getting about the topic, the issue maybe, and was it substantiated, um, for the person who filed the complaint? We did, in the, Y-PAC does not get information about particular officers and their personnel issues. Come back, please come back.
I'd answer more specifically. What is it? That you want specific?
Oh, no, I was, I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know, and I, of course, didn't bring the charter this time. I should have probably brought them, um, just in terms of recognizing that there's some things in the charter that I think lean toward more of, um, you know, obviously this group is not, does not have oversight, um, capabilities, but there are some things that lean more toward that than other things, right? There's some things that are like, you know, tell us about what's been going on, and then there are some things that, you know, like this review or, or things like that. So I'm just trying, I was trying to think about whether there are some, um, for places where there might be more opportunity or more question about what's happening within the police department in terms of services in that way. Um, or in terms of complaints, so when people bring complaints, um, you know, is that something that people bring complaints to the, to Y-PAC? And like how those are addressed, what that looks like, if there's, um, additional, um, additional things that we could put into play. So that's, that was, I was just raising this as like a possibility, um, as we're talking about OMA.
Uh, I think there's, there's a lot of other discussion that can be had about, uh, you know, what we're doing and what I'm planning and working through in the police department. We want to make it easier for, uh, to take complaints, right? So that's one of, you know, in a strategic plan, that's one of the goals. We want to make it so that people can, you know, it's easy for them, so it's not a, a, a arduous process of, you know, trying to make a complaint. And we want more feedback and more immediate feedback, so we can act upon that feedback, you know, accordingly. Another piece, we, uh, we looked at some software, in fact, today, uh, pertaining to, it covers a wide variety of things, but since we're, you know, we're talking, one of it is what I would, we call an early warning system. So if I have officers who are, uh, you know, repeated behavior or use of force, we set the parameters, then I get an early warning that, hey, this, I need to look at this particular officer. And we're gonna get granular in terms of, you know, what we're looking at. So all of those pieces take times, but all of those things are being put in place so that we can be more responsive to the community and so that we can be more responsive into, you know, what officers are actually doing and how that translates to operational. So we're working through all of those pieces. Just takes a little time.
Do you have additional questions for the chief? Since he's up here, anyone, or council member Simmons?
Wait.
You can wait, okay. Um, further discussion, um, on this ordinance?
So much, the Open Meetings Act, the rules that council approved were essentially the Open Meeting Act. What we could do, if council wants, we can add a fine structure that we can assess to members like the OMA does. If that's what council wants to do, if we hold people accountable, we can set up a fine structure for that.
The OMA had a fine structure in it that nobody?
The OMA would be a five hundred dollar fine, um, and that would go to the members of the body.
Who have violated.
Correct. Let me, that's what the OMA is.
Never used it in my, well, in my time.
What, what violation do you see would likely come up?
Well, the, one hasn't come up yet, cause no one's necessarily, someone would have to file that. So really, if, if council sets a fine structure, there'll be more eyes on the bodies to ensure that they're transparent. Rather than waiting for someone to file a complaint, we could, if council wanted to do that, it would make it more transparent, but I mean, the OMA is set up as a punitive thing, so if you aren't following it, you are fined.
We just have never done that. Okay, I didn't even know that was a thing.
Yeah, they typically would have to file a complaint with, uh, and file a lawsuit. If this is something that council wants to review, the complaint could come to council, and then they could determine if they want to assess a fine or not. Or the ethics board, or whomever you'd like it to go to.
Okay.
It does, it just can't meet.
All right.
You are the ethics board.
Um, other questions? So, so thank you.
This, I mean, this, this is one of these big challenges because, I mean, for a couple of things, one, and lots, for lots of things, I prefer to have more local control than to have to hold on to what the state does, especially if it's not actually useful. It's not actually doing what it is, and it's actually getting in the way of the city doing business, which is what I see is happening. So that's one thing. So that's, it's just, that's a challenge I'm sitting with, which is that we're not, we're not able to do a lot of business. And I know people say about, um, doing more outreach. You know, I think there's different things we've talked about, um, how to do some of that. I mean, I talk to people all the time. I know a lot of people. I tell to them all the time about joining commissions. And so I don't think it's only about whether people know about them or not. I do think there's things we can do a hundred percent. A hundred percent, there's still more, but I know I talk to people and ask people all the time. I meet with people who are new to the city and try to invite them to commissions all the time. So that's one thing. I don't think it's only that. Um, I also think that one of the challenges, one of the things with OMA that I do not like, especially for the commissions, is that general population can be held to some of these punitive measures because people make mistakes. And people are on, on text threads, people are on Signal, people are wanting to do work on a Google Doc. Like, these are real things that I know I experienced and saw, and it creates actually a lot of uh, nervousness, uh, either nervousness or like, and, and or if nobody has gotten caught at that yet, like, if somebody does, it will be a big deal. Um, and I don't, I don't really think that the general population should have to sit with that responsibility. I, I really don't, um, especially since they have no real power. I think if they had power, that would be different. They have no real power. Besides sending things to council, and that was, that was one of the other pieces, I think, that was named, for instance, with Y-PAC, is that the, like, that they could work directly with the city manager to make, um, some suggestions, um, um, around policy pieces. And so that would be another place where maybe that means that that needs to be addressed, like edited, so it doesn't, that it still has to go through council and not directly to the city manager. So that was another kind of specific, like, a way where it kind of get, it got passed, kind of having to go through that.
Council's not supposed to have authority over administrative policy that is a city manager. You, you, you develop ordinances and pass resolutions. Any administrative policies is, is at the authority of the city manager.
And so you're saying that that part is only focused on administrative policies that would happen within the department?
If it were ordinance suggestions or resolutions that they would want to send to council, those would come to council. Any administrative policy on how the department functions would be at the discretion of the police chief and the city manager.
Just, just for clarification on that as well, so there have been, uh, it's not just Y-PAC that that happens on. So there are, there are staff liaisons to, uh, to all of our commissions. Sustainability commission has come up with things that have gone straight to the department head, who has implemented those things without, uh, without those things coming to council.
It depends on what those are.
Right, but the, the simple things that.
Sure, yeah.
Department policies, things like that, that don't, do not need a, um, so just to, to, to say, that's not just Y-PAC that. To say that's not just Y pack that has the ability to get staff to make changes. You know, they can suggest things and then it's up to staff to, to determine whether that's reasonable or not.
Further discussion?
I was gonna wait if you had something.
I know, I thought I did, but it, it's not coming right. So, go ahead.
Um, the other, though, I think maybe the last thing I'll say, which is that, you know, this. In general, like. Like, it's just like I'm tongue twisted because I have very many feelings, like, I could see these different directions. And I'm hearing what folks are saying concerns are. I'm looking at what we actually have in front of us. And I'm also just thinking about. That, you know, when I think about, you know, for the, the different commissions and. You know, some of the reasons that this was brought forward is also, you know, in terms of how much stat, like, how much time staff is spending on doing statutory things. That then put, take them away from doing a lot of these other pieces, a lot of things that we need to also have done. Um, but also, you know, maybe, um, and I'm not sure in terms of. Um, you know, maybe the other thing to think about, I'm not sure about adding it back to the other commissions, like, I think. Um, that maybe really what, what I'm kind of leaning toward now. Is being able to um really watch and see within these other places. How these changes actually have impacted them, how does it increase ability for participation? Does it bring more interest? Does, you know? And what kind of worker people are able to do in that space? Um, and, and then maybe revisit it for Y pack. And, um, but being able to have maybe some more specific information from the other commissions. That will be operating under the um, the rules that we've put forward. And, um. Yeah, and then we can have more information just about effectiveness of those changes. Um, and also taking into account the full changes that we, you know, we're putting forward.
Just looking around to. Further discussion, questions? There are no more questions or discussion, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Tucson? Councilmember Dee Simmons?
No.
Councilmember King?
No.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
No.
I have noticed the motion fails.
Alright, thanks. Hope we come back with some ideas, more of them.
Yes, everybody who wanted, please, uh, apply for one of our commissions. Thank you.
I also just want to state that we removed this from the all young, didn't we?
The advisory bodies.
Right.
Yes.
Alright.
So for clarification, the other three advisory bodies never have followed OMA. It's only ever been Y pack. It's, it's in the ordinances that that's, they're not subject to OMA.
Oh, interesting.
Well, to, that, that's not factual. Um, advisory bodies. They were on, in two thousand nine, council passed a resolution that all advisory bodies became under OMA. It's not required by law, since they don't make any real decisions. Right, there is an attorney general opinion about that in the late nineties indicating such.
I was going to move to extend to midnight.
Moved and supported. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, um, Councilmember Sweet, you have our next resolution. Alright, why are you looking at me like that?
See what you said, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that the following residents be appointed to. The seat of, city of Ypsilanti boards and commissions, commissions as indicated below. Teresa, Teresa Gilati, four oh seven Forest Avenue and Teresa Urbanic, seven nineteen Oxford Road. For the Housing Commission and Police and Fire Pension Board, and I saw move.
Support.
Moving, supported. Discussion. Councilmember Simmons?
Just, just, just quick, quick, click. Um, I know we had, uh, folks come and speak in favor for Teresa Galati. I'm really excited. I think Teresa's great. I do want to just name, just because I know, um, and I brought this up in some conversations. But I just want to say publicly, because I know that there's been this conversation of the tendency of council to. Decommission, uh, people of color in particular. And, um, and recognizing that, you know, there are lots of really great reasons. For Teresa's appointment. And, um, that, you know, that I was, did try to follow up with conversations to understand what the issues. Uh, were with the current um commissioner who applied for reappointment. But that we're appointing someone else instead, so.
Thank you. Further comments?
Yeah, that's on me. I had, I had, uh. Well, it's on all of it, but the, I had conversations with that person as well, um, and. Followed up on those kinds of first stations with that person, but didn't bring the name forward. And that's oversight on my part, it's not intentional.
Further comments, discussion? Alright, seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
It's yes as the motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons, you have our next resolution?
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the rehabilitation of Spring and La Forge bridges are programmed for construction year twenty twenty four. In the current three-year TIP. And whereas it is necessary to enter into a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the implementation of this project. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ypsilanti City Council approves the Michigan transport. Approves the Michigan Department of Transportation Contract Number twenty-three, five, four, six, five. And furthermore, that Mayor Nicole Brown and interim city clerk Aaron Smith are authorized to sign this contract. Subject to approval by the city attorney and any change orders may be approved by the city manager to facilitate completion of this work. And I so move.
Been moved and supported. Good evening, Director Westler.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and City Council. Um, it is a pretty straightforward proposal. It is for more construction. Uh, which everybody's, uh, really looking forward to. Uh, for calendar year twenty twenty four to do some deck rehabilitation on the Factory Street Bridge. Um, also known as the Spring Street Bridge, also known as that bridge on the road between Maz and Harriet. Uh, down by the old Ford plant and, um, La Forge Bridge. So. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? I don't.
Is any of this, um, like the La Forge Street project gonna have any, like, are we gonna have to revisit this bridge once the dam comes out? Or do we anticipate anything with that?
So from my understanding, La Forge Bridge may be scour protection. But the scour protection would be at the level of the river and in the river and what we're looking at here is mainly.
Oh, deck surfacing?
Looking at the top part, not the bottom part.
Um, just in terms of timelining, um, some of this, I'm also wondering about. There is the construction happening at Clark Road. Is that, is, and where La Forge, is that? Is there any overlap in what those might be in issues for a timing of these projects?
I do not have a great grasp of the project schedule for Clark Road because that road is not our road. And overall, it's a development project that's done under permit work, so it's a little bit out of my hands. As far as the two bridges themselves, we're gonna be doing our best to make sure that they're not overlapping closures. But they will likely overlap at some point because as we've seen with the Forest Avenue Bridge. There's always more stuff that you find. It will be impactful. It will hurt.
And what, I mean, just in terms of for folks to know or how we can think about. What we can do, like, in terms of better communication or figuring out. Um, you know, better estimates for when things are starting and stopping, um, and how it aligns with. Other things that might be happening in the city.
So this is gonna be a lot easier to do that than downtown was because downtown we had. Two overlapping projects plus three sets of permit work going on at the same time and a lot of stakeholders with a lot of interests. Um, here we have. Five residential complexes that'll be primarily, um. Affected by this work. A lot of the detours are gonna be the same as they were with the La Forge and here on River Drive intersection work. But people will be at times sort of cut off from their main connection to the city or their main connection out of town. But, uh, I'll work with the communications manager in order to get the word out. And part of it's gonna be a little bit complicated by. The eastern half of La Forge Road there being in the township, but a lot of those complexes are actually under the same management. Um, but we've also run into issues on Green Road to where we communicate with the management. And we put notices or rather the contractor has Yakub, one of those things, put notices on the doors for every building. But somebody doesn't communicate with maybe the owner or the other property manager or, you know, it's been interesting. Had some very angry calls from people we did not expect to have angry calls from because we told you. Well, Rain has told you, or OHM has told you, or Yakub has told you. There's always gonna be a mess up.
Not the same one, okay.
So to that point, what Councilmember Simmons kind of questions just had, so we anticipate these being full closures then? Okay.
A significant portion of the expense in any bridge work is just the staging of the stuff to actually. And in order to do the work, it is safest and best.
And likely, cap, have, are they gonna happen simultaneously?
Uh, we will minimize the overlap, but they are in very different parts.
Yeah, they, yeah.
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 We wouldn't do forest and cross at the same time.
Oh, thank you. But and then, and then what was the kind of general, like, time, like, is it like three months they'd be closed or six months?
Um, these should be a lot less work than forest.
Okay.
And so forest, we initially thought would be a, we, we were pushing it at ninety days, but we thought we could get it done in ninety days. You know, been a little bit more than that at this point. But these, I believe, we should be able to keep for ninety days. So far.
Not relevant to this conversation, what is the timeline for?
For what?
For forest, yeah.
Uh, right now, we are looking at, uh. Before Christmas.
Be open.
Be open, to be open, be open, but not complete.
I'll, I'll settle for open. I'm good with open.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Thank you, seeing none, please call a roll.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson? Member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
It's yes as the motion carries.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Alright, um, next, we have our discussion on Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two two two. Okay, so what I will start with. I was just looking at, I think is positive, um, that. Uh, news reports are sharing that Israel has approved a ceasefire with Hamas over the next four days. Um, to release hostages from both. Community, well, both countries. Um, and so I think that. While temporary. Is positive news, um, and it's been shared pretty wide, so I'm, I'm assuming it's real. Because the New York Times has reported it as well. Um, I know, Mayor Protem, you asked to have the discussion added, so I'll give you the floor.
Sure.
Begin, and I will jump in there.
So, since the. Since the, since the vote on this, um, I've been contacted by lots of people in our community. Um, and overwhelmingly have asked for reconsideration of this in multiple different ways. Not everybody asked for rescinding, some people asked for reconsideration and changing language, some people asked to just have certain language. Removed from it, um, but overwhelmingly, there was, there was disconcert with, uh, with this as it stands. This came up rather quickly on our agenda, um, and some of the comments here tonight, um, were about. How we do that and what, what kind of timeframe we have to look at these things and what kind of time that people have noticed to come. And so on the night of the, uh, night of the vote. A vast majority of people in the room were in favor of this and they knew about it. A vast majority of the people in the room tonight were against it and most of the people that I've talked to were against it for various reasons. Um, they didn't know about it. Um, because it came on to the agenda very, very shortly before, um, the meeting. At the time of the discussion in that session. I brought up and, and the mayor brought up, uh. You know, things that we thought were missing from this and didn't have the language for it at that time and at that time I voted for. With conversations that I've had since then, I think this is, isn't, is an imbalanced statement. Um, and. There's, there's truth in the things that are in this, um, but it doesn't tell the whole truth of the situation. Um, you know, and the atrocities, um, on both sides were not acknowledged. Um, and that is a big problem for me. And it also is a divisive, uh, measure. That doesn't support everybody in our community. Um, and that has been one of the, the things that has been most consistently brought up. Um, that we can denounce the, uh, the actions of both Hamas and the state of Israel. Without, uh, denying the loss and. Damage, uh, to the Palestinians and to the people of Israel. Um, and so I. Wanted to have this discussion, um, and hear what other people had to say.
Thank you. I think I'll just, I'll follow and, and, and say a few things. Manly repeat what I said the first, the first night on the seventh was that when I saw the resolution, it was already on the agenda. Um, and I don't think that all of council properly had, um, the ability to read, digest. And provide feedback, um, on it. I also stated that my biggest concern was how do we communicate to our community broadly? In making sure that folks feel safe, feel heard, feel seen. Um, and I think at that time. Similar to what Mayor Protem stated around the overwhelming support in the audience that night of folks who were aware that this. Uh, resolution had been on the agenda even before council members were aware that it was on the agenda. Um, and folks who did not know and overwhelmingly did not support it in its totality. Uh, again, there is truth in the original resolution. a- again, there is truth in the original resolution. I think there are also truths that are missing. Um, but again, one of my greatest concerns was the acknowledgement of folks in our, in our community who, um, would be deeply impacted on one way or the other by, by the resolution and it's why I didn't necessarily want us to take a stand in totality around the details of what was happening in the Middle East, but also lift our voices around how do we make sure that we are focused on those in our backyard, right, in our community? And I think that that was also missing, um, in the original resolution. I spent a great deal of time fielding, I mean, one hundred, like so many emails and so many calls of folks who felt invisible and erased and that deeply impacts me while also recognizing again the atrocities that have happened to both Palestinian people at large, um, as well as, uh, Jewish individuals and folks, um, in Israel. And so I spent a great deal of time thinking about what, what do we do, um, to correct this? Is there a way to even correct this? Um, I am apologetic about, um, the feelings of those who felt unseen and unheard in this because again, I think there is a, a difference between individuals living in community, um, who have hi- historical ties and roots and family, um, and those who are actually committing the acts of, of war and crime, um, in the Middle East. And so I spent time with our city manager trying to craft a different response even and a different resolution. Um, that was more balanced, but still holding true to what we believe was happening and is happening. Um, I don't know, you know, again, it's going to be the will of council, what we do, um, going forward, but I did want to acknowledge that and say publicly that November seventh, number one, was a very long and contentious meeting, um. And when we got to that resolution at the time of night, almost as late as it is right now. Um, maybe it was a little earlier tonight than it was two weeks ago. Um, there wasn't a lot of bandwidth for folks to wordsmith and add additional language, which is what I wanted to do. I wanted to bring forth another resolution. I think I even said the word balance. I said centering community, um, and you know, aligning with our values in this community. And I don't think that, I think words mean things and I think it's okay to name, um, the terrible things that have happened and that continue to happen while also acknowledging those who are equally impacted. Um, so again, I, I have other thoughts, but I think it's going to depend on what the will of council is tonight. Um, in terms of if there are any changes to be made, um, to either again, recall, reconsider, resubmit, whatever the case may be, um, a new resolution or, you know, rescind the one that we've already passed and/or do nothing. Um, so I'll pause and give other people an opportunity to speak and, um, as we move forward, I'll offer some other, other things. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. Um, I think, you know, just in terms of some of the responses, um, and things, you know, I think one of the things that's a challenge for this is one, um, what I, I see is that there's an intergenerational divide um, on this issue. I've had really hard, painful conversations with many of my Jewish friends who, um, actually, um, you know, feel silenced because every time they say anything, they're called, they've been called self-hating Jews. And so when, and so even with some, in different spaces, I'm asked when these things are going to come up, I've been asked, are the Zionists going to be there? Because of concern that they are going to be targeted and actually that they're erased. And so I, I, I feel like this is such a complication because of, of some of that. People have also asked about why this, you know, one, for sure, like, I'd be like, let's, we can, let's, let's denounce all, a lot of things happening in this world, including here. Um, I think this one stands out because of the direct complicity of this country directly, um, supporting these actions with no accountability at all. That's what we've been seeing, um, and the idea that we don't, the other thing is that I've also been part of other, um, statements and I've seen other statements that have come up that have included different parts of what people have said. And those also were called into question. So what that also says to me is that there is no one perfect thing. If we had said, we could have said, yes, like, you know, we can add, we condemn Hamas, Hamas. Would that fix it? It wouldn't fix it because at the same time, some of the folks that, that said, oh, why is the locality even saying anything? And at the same time, supporting, um, other resolutions being written in Ann Arbor, that's more to the liking of, of this group and population. And so that makes it, that makes it murky. Should we say something or should we not? Um, and to me, when we understand also democracy and like the danger of silence, I get really nervous when people are basically saying, oh, there, these are topics that you shouldn't touch. Um, and really I start to hear the same language that oppressors use and that to me is a concern. I am all about caring for the fullness of our community and standing against antisemitism, Islamophobia, all of these things very clearly and also to recognize that, um, that harm can, is like, that we're also, that we're dealing with a lot of harm and trauma. And so that's part of what makes it so difficult because everybody's experiences, their lived experiences, their learned experiences matter. Um, and that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's eyes are open. It doesn't necessarily mean that we can look at, when we're talking about missing information, a hundred percent, there's a lot of things that we're missing. And like a lot of that will require actually debating some of these facts. I know I asked for what were the inaccuracies in our resolution directly? What are the things that we put forward that actually people, because people said, oh, there's these, but what were those things? Sure, some people talked about the language of ethnic cleansing, um, which, you know, I would definitely be open to, um, maybe using some more precise and clear language, um, for that, to take away some of the insidiousness. But one thing that I feel is really clear, at no time in this resolution do we talk about um, civilians and on all of these different things. And I also have a challenge of taking, you know, when we have news, um, accounts and things that have come out that have called into question, some of the very tenants that people brought forward tonight that were used as fact. And those have been called into question multiple times by multiple news agencies, by the Israeli government itself. So that becomes a challenge to me. So because when I see, oh, well, the Israeli, you know, that they've claimed like, yes, that some of those people who died came from their own, their own bullets. And that, and then also naming that the majority of those people were not civilians, that they were actually part of the Israeli defense. So they were actually part of the military. So then that, so those things call those things into question. And so to put those as fact into these spaces, to me creates a challenge. It's a big challenge. So I, I don't know, um, you know, a, agree that, um, you know, tonight, some folks, they, they still, without knowing, um, people, I, you know, I would say, um, that I think it was actually almost even tonight in terms of the comment. And that included people not knowing that this was going to be coming back forward and being another big issue. But still, people who were here still spoke to it. So I think it was still like, even without the organizing that we saw at the last meeting that, um, and I know, and I don't know if other people know, like, got this too, that after we passed that resolution, I also got not only emails that called it into question, but I also got a lot of people comment emailing me, sending me messages thanking me, thanking council and appreciation who weren't at those, that, that meeting. And so I will just say that I got people come, co- um, contacting me from both sides after, after that resolution. It wasn't only one-sided. And I still want, I still want to name that I call into question when some things that uphold right-wing extremism for anything. And to see that some of the, you know, some of the folks, if we were to say, are we going to care about what white supremacists feel and think when we put things forward? I think that no one up here would say, oh, yes, let's be careful. I think that we would say, we say directly what it is that we feel and say. And I, I, I feel that, um, I feel that we can just be in danger trying to kind of hold, like, to remove it totally, that makes us more complicit. I would be open to making some, um, changes and, you know, being able to have something that people are able to feel comfortable with, um, in terms of um, some of the language while maintaining, um, a lot of the, you know, the specificity of, you know, what people are calling into question, which includes naming some of those humanitarian specifics. And it includes, you know, we didn't talk about the, the movement, you know, that people have been constantly, that this has been an ongoing thing, that this, um, and so that's a lot of that history that we also didn't talk about. And I will just say that for me, this has allowed me to also like study and learn more about this, um, you know, in the past, I probably would have been like, oh, people talk about two-state solution. Oh, yeah, that sounds nice. Without actually understanding what that meant. Without really understanding that since nineteen forty-eight, that there's been, uh, a deliberate and really clear diminishment of space and land that Palestinians are even allowed to exist within. And, um, and to understand what that means. And, um, and so I know, I'm definitely sorry for not being able to have that full understanding. And that when I learn more, it makes me want to do more. And so, um, that has been really hard and to know that, um, to recognize that, um, people that, to recognize what's been happening in terms of, um, in, at the U N and how things have been upheld to continue these peace talks that keep being denied. Denied, denied, denied. You know, how do we move past that? Because at this point, the way the country upholds the State of Israel, which on a globe, you can't, Palestine does not exist. It's just Israel in that space. And so what do we do about that?
Thank you. I, I think the only, what I will say, not necessarily in response to what you, you've said, but just thinking about what is being shared is, but what it, what does it mean to council? And again, this is not a rebuttal to you, um, Councilmember Simmons, but in general, what does it mean to us to have community members who feel unwelcome? And feel like they are not, they should not be here. And when I think of, there's two different scopes here around, you know, us being advocates and yes, lending our voices to global and international issues. And I do think there is a space for our voice there. I do. And also I think the primary commitment in this role is to this community first and then it reverberates out. And there's something to be said for individuals who are in this community who feel like they, they're not welcome here and shouldn't be. And that to me is what rises to the top in this conversation for me beyond, you know, the lack of education that many of us, I would say, have on this issue. Or even wanting to again lend our voices and advocacy to whichever part of this resonates most. But what is our actual commitment in terms of sitting at this dais, right, and representing the people of this community fully? Um, and I think that that to me has, was lost or has been lost in this state argument, whatever we want to call it. And I think that is our primary goal or that should be our primary focus is to this community first and then beyond. Um, and so again, I am not at all saying that there are not, not truths or that there are not things that, um, are real issues to be discussed and, and real things happening, um, and named in the initial resolution and also things that I have also learned, um, from the many, many, many conversations that I have had. But it brings me back down to what is, what is my job here? What is our responsibility? Um, and I think our responsibility is to the community as a whole, um, to make sure that people feel again, seen, heard, safe, um, and welcome in Ypsilanti. And I think that we missed the mark in terms of not having a full discussion and full understanding, um, when moving forward on that, that resolution.
Comments from council? So I would just say with that being said, um, we want to make, you know, we want both parties to feel that. And so I feel like if we completely rescinded, we will not be doing that for the other party as well. So I am, I, I'm, I'm for reviewing it and making changes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Um, this is a very large and complex issue that was undertaken in that resolution that was presented, right? Um, I feel like I had a personal misstep by not being able to do enough research, um, and process thought behind, um, the vote and the resolution that evening. Um, I do also, um, personally, um, I think it's already been stated, but just wanted to also clarify that, uh, I think this presents an opportunity for us to clean up our process. I don't like that how it was added, um, and when it was added to the agenda, I don't think gave everyone on council enough time to process what, and actually digest information appropriately. Um, you know, I think this resolution caused a lot of harm and pain to a lot of neighbors and residents in our community. Um, I think by no means that was never anyone's intention, um, with that, um, but I think that was what the perception, uh, was. Um, and perception of, and is reality, right? So that is how it was taken regardless of how it was intended to be. Um, and for an international issue such as this, I feel as though if we're going to take a stance as a city and as a body as a whole that we really need to be on board with kind of what Councilmember King just mentioned as well, but to have the whole community on board and, and not divide a community on an issue such as something this large. And I feel as if after tonight's comments that the community is definitely, we're very divided on this topic currently, so.
Thank you. Other comments from council discussion?
Um, you know, out of all the comments tonight, the, I, comments I got, uh, before tonight, um, as I said, there was a range of, of requests from full rescinding to, uh, changing small parts of language to making this a balanced thing. I don't, I don't know how we can take the language that's there and, and make it balanced. Um, one of the last people to speak tonight, a young man who had been standing in the back, I think kind of touched closest to what I, what I was thinking, you know, and very calmly and, you know, acknowledged that, you know, uh, certainly not in favor. Certainly not in favor of the Israeli government's actions, um, now or in the past, um. But. Recognize the, the fact that this, this leaves people out and, and creates, uh, division within, within our community. Um, to the point, this is a generational thing, and I, I, I heard a great summation of this, that there's actually three generations. And, and within the Jewish community, there are, uh. One generation that, that experienced Israel as a young and weak country. And was very much, uh, seeking power, um, to maintain their survival. Uh, there's a middle generation that knows a time when Israel was interested in peace and negotiating for peace. And that has gone, the younger generation has known only the right wing government of Netanyahu on and off. For the past several years, um, and they react differently, um. To, to all of us, right? Um, and, and I see that within this country, that, that, that is very much true. Um, and there are hardliners that are, you know, we need to support Israel at all costs, and I certainly don't agree with that. Um, and I think I'm someplace in that middle where, where, you know, I came up with Israel and Palestine. Having conversation. And, and that. Went away. You know, and there are things that, that they need to be called out on, but there are also things that Hamas clearly needs to be called out on, you know. And the legitimacy of that as a, as a, um, as a government. You know, I don't even think the people of Palestine agree that that's a legitimate government. And so, you. My understanding of this has, has peaked in various times and I, you know, I had. Conversation with Zion's friends and lost friends and lost a girlfriend over that, actually, um. So I can appreciate that, you know, those are, those are hard conversations to have, but it comes back to, to our community and what we're saying to everybody in our community. And trying to be inclusive and, uh. Yeah. One of the things in the master plan is, is a place for everybody to be able to live. And I think this resolution has, has not fit with that, that statement in our master plan. Um, so I would suggest that we rescind this and if we were going to be thoughtful about the language, we come back in another time. Because it's late right now and I don't want to, there's a. Proposed language here from, um. The clerk on it had put out our, our clerk, sorry, manager, I had put out, I'm really sorry about that. Um. Had put at our places and, and first blush, this, this covers most of what, um, what I'm looking for. And. You know, it calls for the ceasefire. It condemns the violence on both sides. It states the fact that, that, uh, for forty years, this has been. Well, for more than forty years, this has been going back and forth and, and the, the US government has, uh. Definitely had a hand in, in thwarting any, any peace process in this, you know, and, and part of why. I voted for this was. My dissatisfaction with the stance that our government took immediately afterwards. In, in seeing one side and, and supporting that. And I have serious issues with our current president for the, for the actions he's taken and, you know, I don't know. You know, I've listened to people talking headsterize about what that, what the end game is on that, but. The end game doesn't justify what's, what's going on in the meantime, um, so, um. You know, I. Read through this, it, it covers most of what I would want to cover, but I am leery of making this decision that. For the replacement at, at eleven twenty thirty at night, um, so I would move to, I will move. I move to rescind this, the. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two 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 as stated on November seventh.
There's a motion, is there support?
Support.
The movement supported discussion. Um, I guess what I'll say is that the document at your desk is. The, the work of the city manager and I tr- trying to come up with something that, um, represented more fully, um. Our community and the stance that we. Can take, um, as a council that also recognizes the harm. Um, from both, again, our Palestinian neighbors as well as our, um, Jewish, um. Neighbors as well. And I, I, I recognize too that, you know, again, I don't, I wouldn't want to, uh. Push something through again, late at night that only folks had seen, um, at their desk, because that to me is the. First major issue that came from the original resolution was that there was just not enough time, um, and notice. For folks to know what was going to be presented, uh, in the meeting. But I do think that this potential resolution that we brought. Um, as a replacement. Feels closer to what I would like a statement from the city to look like if we make one at all. Further discussion, oh, Councilmember Simmons?
One of the things that I learned, and Steve, you might know this more, just, I mean, I don't know, I don't know this. Anyway, one of the things I learned is that as this all was happening. That the president of this country first in dealing with Saudi Arabia, because they were go- going into a, uh, oil, um. Enterprise together, um, was that originally this country said, yes, we will stand and support Palestinians. And then that president died. And then the next president that came on said. Well, you know what? There's a, a large Jewish, uh, voting block in this country and there's not a large Palestinian block in this country. And so then, what happened? Is what we've seen now, which is that we didn't stand and support. By that time Saudi Arabia and this, this country were so deeply in the oil bed together that they said, okay, never mind. I guess we won't stand up for those people, um, and the, and, and we've seen a lot of, I think. Repressive policies that have come because of lobbying from. Different Jewish groups in this country that have impacted our foreign and our national. Laws. And so, a challenge I have, I'm just saying again with rescinding this. Is to say that what happens if we do that and then, uh, do we have an outpouring of Palestinian folks that? Can say, hey, I don't feel seen anymore. You took this away. What does that mean when we are? Only moved by who can speak? Who feels free to speak, who knows that they have power to speak and for action to come because of the threat. Of being called something really ugly, because no one wants to be called a racist, no one wants to be called anti Semitic. No one, well, some people might want to be called fascist, right? But these threats of these labels stop us. So I just want to, I want to say, I'm just going to say strongly that I cannot support a rescinding. Of a resolution on the basis of who can show up and speak with power. Because part of how we've gotten to this space is by leaning into that and, um, and not leaning into justice. And, um, I know a lot of the folks who spoke up tonight believe deeply in justice. And I know some of the people who spoke tonight do and have done work and, and, and care about. People, um, you know, both Palestinian, Israeli, et cetera. So I know that that is true. And I don't think that they are understanding the totality and the fullness of what is happening. And to think that they speak as one voice when that is very clearly not true. It is not true. Some of the people who helped to work on this are also Jewish. And so I think that I just want to say that clearly. Thank you.
Further discussion? On the motion on the floor.
I just want to say, just to honor both parties, I do not want to rescind. I definitely want to be able to review it. And just make the appropriate changes. And Mayor Brown, I think you already said. The resolution we have in front of us, we didn't have time to really, you know, look at it thoroughly. So I am for reviewing it and just making the, making changes.
Thank you. I'm thinking at the same time. Uh, sure. Mayor Pretend, can you repeat your motion?
Uh, the simple motion was to rescind the resolution twenty twenty-three dash two two two. Until such time that we present another res- resolution, um, that acknowledges the balance of.
So it's both to rescind the current resolution and consider a replacement?
Yes.
What you said until there might, we might replace, that's not rescind.
All right, let me be more clear. I, I take your point of the statement, um, to both Palestinians and, and, and to Jews, um. To rescind the, the. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two two two, um, and to bring forth at the next meeting, language, um. That is, it is more balanced.
Who supported that the first, okay. Just want to make sure that you all are in alignment on the, the statement, um.
As I do agree that, that some of the comments here that this is not a space for us to be talking about these, this, this impacts people and, and. This is how you get momentum going up. In government. What that has been said before is like, this is, this is a place for that to happen.
Agreed. I do, I do think that. So. I think that the resolution that, that the desk could be a good starting place. Um, and we can have that emailed out to everyone to look at it, to be able to review it, um. Further comments, discussion? So. Seeing none.
Do you mind if I just clarify what I have? Um, so to rescind resolution two, two zero two three dash two 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 and to bring forth, uh, new or. Um, altered resolution with more balanced language at the December fifth council meeting.
What does balanced mean? I want to, I just want to know what does balanced mean? Like, all sides are bad, both sides are almost good sometimes. I just want to know what. You know, because balance is not always fifty fifty. I just want to be clear about what that means.
I don't know if there's ever true balance, but I think for me, what I would. Say and what I tried to work with our city manager on is an acknowledgement. Of, um, the impact that it, that this is having on both Palestinians and Jews. While also naming the atrocities, um, and acknowledging what our government as a whole contributes to this. That is my one opinion, for, as an individual.
I just want to know what people are going to be looking for. That's why I'm asking for the clarity, because. I think, you know, like I am fine with looking at this. I just want to know what, you know. And maybe this will be parsed out when we are looking at what, uh, changes folks are bringing to it. But I just wanted to just have clarity about what we mean by that, um. Because I don't want to work on it and then. You know. Whatever.
I think this is also gives us all an opportunity to work on it, which we didn't have, um, originally.
Bring forth more balanced language at the December fifth council meeting, acknowledging, um, the impact on both Palestinians and Jews. And to acknowledge the US government's role in current conflicts.
That was my language? I don't know.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Oh, yeah, I know. So you can say if you want to, you want to add what I said, but I don't think I can, I can't. Thank you.
So what was just attached?
That's the resolution that's at the desk.
Okay.
That folks can review it, look at it.
I think this is balanced. And you ask what, what, what I mean by balance. I think this, this addresses both sides. It addresses the, the. The plight of both peoples and, and their contribution to the, to the, um. To the conflict. And maybe we need to put more language into it about the, the path they, or the, the roles that they play in, in ending that conflict.
So. I mean, I will say we've spent a great deal of time. To find something. Also. We imagined it all the, I could type it, so.
I guess, that's what I was about to say, just trying to move the conversation on.
Yeah.
Are we, I mean, I guess is everybody in agreement with that? I know we have to officially do a vote, but. I mean, I think the point is we definitely just want something to come back because it was already put out there and we don't want to just take it away.
Yep, that I support. I agree with that.
Well.
I mean, it is temporarily, I guess, being taken away.
I know, if we're going to bring it back, why wouldn't we just know that we're bringing something back as a, to replace it?
You're saying leave it there for now?
Yeah, it's already been sent, right, to folks?
Yes, it has.
I mean.
Oh, is that another way we can go? Can we leave it and, and then?
Now we have this on the table, so.
Something else on the, there, there's a motion on the table.
Oh, mhm.
So we have to either vote it up or down or remove from the table.
And then to be clear, we're voting to rescind and then revisit. So to be clear, we're voting to rescind and then revisit this, um, this resolution at our next meeting with better language. Um, if it's not this or as is, okay.
That's what the motion on the table is.
Right, right, right.
Which mayor may not pass, right? I mean, that we can bring something forward, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to pass.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Right? So if we take, that's, so that's my point, right? We could take it away, bring something back. And it's still not passed and then not have anything in place. As a possibility.
Always.
It is possible, yeah.
But I want to make it clear.
Right, and I'm not, um, and. The way I worded it, the way I worded it is because I'm not willing to leave this one in place.
The way I worded it, the way I worded it is because I'm not willing to leave this one in place.
So we need to move something forward? There's a motion on the table. So, um, the current motion is to rescind the current resolution. Back with another resolution on December fifth for consideration. Are folks ready to vote?
Councilmember King? Mayor Pretend Will Coxon? Mayor Brown? Councilmember Sweet? Councilmember Tucson? Councilmember Dee Simmons? Councilmember King? Or yeses the motion carries.
Thank you. Hopefully folks can review the resolution, the proposed resolution that was emailed and that was at your desk that we worked on. Um, and I welcome any uh, feedback on that. Before the next meeting. Liaison reports, police advisory commission.
We did not meet, um, when is, when is our next meeting? I'm sorry.
December twenty-first.
December twenty-first, please be there at the Y-PAC meeting. If you would like to be a commissioner on the Y-PAC, please apply. Thank you, that's all.
Human relations.
We still have not met yet. We have not heard back from all of the members. I believe after the Thanksgiving break, we will reach out via phone.
Parks and Arts.
Uh, met last night. They're working on their annual report to present to council, and they've set their twenty twenty-four meeting calendar.
Sustainability. Uh, the commission had a presentation um, from Elevate, um, which is a group that will help. Uh, the, create a subcommittee for resiliency hubs. And, um. Yeah, that was one of the biggest parts from that meeting. Planning Commission?
Uh, the planning commission meeting was canceled.
ZB A, oh, nope. Alright, well. Yeah, no, ZB A, nothing. Okay, SMCOG?
I don't have an update. I've, I've. A lot of their stuff happens in the middle of the day in Detroit, and I haven't been able to get to it. There, there are a number of uh. Webinars and, and meetings come up that I will be attending, so.
Urban County? Isn't somebody else? Oh, she's gone. Well, the next meeting is uh, after the holiday, so. There's nothing to report right now, anyway. Um, DDA?
I went.
Alright, you, you wanted to report on?
Had a conversation with uh, Public Service Director Westler, who gave some details about. How um, the DDA and DPS can work together. They reviewed downtown relief appeals and approved a holiday lighting contract for the business districts.
Uh, Rutherford Pool?
Haven't attended their meeting recently. Bury the time capsule yesterday, um, at the base of the water tower. Uh, on Earth July fourth, two thousand seventy-three, um, and thanks to our partners at Yucca for helping make that happen.
Alright, thank you. I heard lots of good things in there.
It was a cold windy day, but it was good.
Alright, council proposed business, council member King.
So first, I wanna say thank you to all the different organizations and the university for passing out turkeys. In the last few weeks, I was able to attend a couple to the families in need, so I appreciate that. I did re- receive a complaint about recycling from a few residents. They stated that when their recycling bins are being emptied, everything is not being emptied out. There are still stuff left in the bottom. One thing for me personally, for our agenda, we used to have page numbers on there. And for me, I was hoping to get those page numbers back, cuz whether I get it in a paper copy or online. I would like to know exactly what area I can jump to or what page number. And um, I noticed we have a council member that has not been here a few meetings. And I think that is worth a conversation. And I wanna say happy Thanksgiving, but I'm wondering if we can have that conversation tonight. I know it's late, but.
I, I'm sorry, I don't support that right now. I don't, I wouldn't be open to that.
I do have a question. When do we redo our, um. Like, when do we re, like, consider our council? Ways of being, et cetera, like our rules and things like that?
Reorganization?
Yeah, it's when the new council is seated, but council can change the rules at any time.
I'm only one voice, though, in terms of. I, I think it's almost twelve o'clock. And uh, yeah. Other members of council?
I think it would be appropriate with that person here.
I don't know that when we, we don't know when that will happen. But I do think that it would make more sense for us to have maybe a conversation. About our overall, like, rules. Cuz and also, is there not? Like, I thought that there is, like, do we not have elections for mayor pro temp each year too? Like, reorganization as well? Okay, when is reorgani- so when is?
When an election happens and the new council is seated.
Oh, so it's only like every, like, two years? Okay, thank you for that.
And I just would say, I think is important because when you have a council member constantly missing. That word is not being represented properly. So that's why I think it is a conversation worth having.
I would support adding it to a future agenda for us to relook at our rules and things around. Some of that. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and I, I think this is probably like, again, like a larger conversation for us to have. Is just how we build accountability and trust um, in the community and work better as a team. Um, and so maybe this could go into that same conversation about uh, the council rules and the ways that we work together. Um, so that we can have a more specific conversation about it. Um, I also um, want to. Uh, and I guess this is something I just, I could bring forward as a resolution. But I'm interested in using some of the money we have for barrier busters to support the daytime warming center. And so to do that, I just need to put that together. As a budget amendment, or a. I guess it's not an amendment, cuz it's just to disperse money that we've already, I don't know what, I just wanna know what I'm supposed to call it, like. Or allocation, a budget allocation?
There's funding budgeted in the housing trust, um, that could be used for that, but that, that uh, is already currently fully funded. So that, those contracts, those MOUs were, were paid, were, they were approved with fifty thousand apiece.
Well, the daytime warming center is literally doing a fundraiser to be able to fund. To com- actually complete funding for. For the daytime warming center, I, as, as I've seen, um, that they don't have enough actually to fully staff.
The city's already put in a hundred thousand dollars to that.
Oh, it's for a different one? Alright, well, I'll try to look for more, but in general. Just in general, for trying to, wanting to try to allocate some of those funds. It would just be to do like a budget allocation. Um, from this, from the housing trust fund to be used, and then like have who it goes to and an amount. And then, um. Let me just see here. There's a couple of things, I guess they'll come up later. Just another update, just to be, so folks know that, um. For the state of Michigan, for the presidential primary, that our election. Um, has been moved to February twenty-seventh, and so we will be an early state. And so just trying to make sure that folks know that, um, and know that we'll, we'll start to see all of the people earlier this time. Um, and then the last thing I'll just say is, um. You know, we got notice that we're being sued again, um. For reverse discrimination and. Just um, noting how many of these uh, laws that are meant to protect folks, like the civil rights law. Um, so this was the Elliot Larson uh, law, um, hate crime laws. A lot of these things are actually used more against um, the people that they're meant to protect than, um, and. Then that they actually do protect. So just naming it as like another example. So that we should be careful of that, and that's something that I saw, for instance, in this resolution, that I would wanna. Sh- change, like, some of that language, but. That's all for now. Thank you.
Simple things. I talked with Bonnie about having that extended, um, looking outside. Um, we have that. Have nothing on trees. I don't know. Um, I haven't heard back from the constituents that, that were. Asking for that, and I'll check in, but I think. If we've got two more weeks or another week on this. I think we should be alright. Um, where do we stand on the, um. Sinkholes? In terms of the bidding and things like that for that contract? If we can get the steel plates, I think that would. That would be awesome. People, you know, putting skeletons in them for Halloween was kinda funny, but at the same time, um, you know, that. Move to extend to twelve fifteen?
Alright, yeah. Moving support all in favor of fifteen, say I. Anybody who poops? You have more things?
No, I'm done. I was just, we're, we're giving you time to make your comment.
Oh, okay. Um, first, um, I wanna say thanks to Chief Moore and YPD. Um, for their targeted speed enforcement on River Street. There was some large concern from residents about that, so that was nice to see. Um, some response there. Um, council member Simmons and I had the opportunity to take a tour through Corner Health Center. Um, and they're looking at, ideally, if they can get some of the funding they're applying for expanding their operations in Ypsilanti, which would be. A very dynamic move for them. Um, and then I'm glad to see some dirt being moved at the Dorsey Estates site. Even if it's not actual construction yet, but at least there's things happening currently, so.
Yes, today I attended a funeral for an Ypsilanti resident uh, by the name of Ms. Ruby Bradley. Um, she served the Ypsilanti community for many years in the seventies, working um, the voting polls in my ward, Ward One and Precinct One. She was also on the mental health board, uh, and the housing and development board in the seventies, and I just wanted to highlight. Um, her work in the city of Ypsilanti. And um, yeah, show appreciation towards that and, and, and love towards her and her family. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for representing us. Um, quickly, uh. Very happy to have attended turkey giveaways, um, within the community. Folks were very grateful. Um, it was quite a joyful experience, so. Um, kudos to the organizations and organizers, um, who, you know. Think enough of our community to make sure that folks have, um, items, to have a full and whole holiday season. I always forget the things that I want to say when it gets this late, um. Council has to make really difficult decisions. And, you know. We press on. Hopefully, we can continue to work together again. To be. Inclusive and aware. And true representatives of the community that we have sworn to serve. There. Uh, city manager?
Uh, just real quick, I'm working on the uh, report about the, the financial status of the city for this purchase. Um, and AKT Peerless has been engaged to do the uh, phase one of the five ninety-nine site. That's it.
Alright. This is our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to address council, please. Raise your hand. Hello, good evening. Nice of you to join us at this hour.
Okay, um. I think you guys are doing a good job. And um, the reasonable. Citizens among us actually appreciate what you are doing, no matter how you vote on particular issues. Unfortunately, most of us don't come to meetings. And uh, I got to uh, speak with a, a few of you, not as, not all of you, and not as many as I should have, just to. Thank you for. Shifting the city in a new, in a new direction. Um, one which previous mayors and council have just. For whatever reason, not been able to grapple with. Um, you know, be that in terms of our infrastructure issues. Um, or taking, you know, major stances, which um, I can only imagine what your inboxes look like. Yes, and as someone who's sat on that side, um, one thing I wanna say is that. You know, I know it's thankless. I know it's difficult. I know there are a lot of damned if you do, damned if you don't decisions. And uh, you know, some of us appreciate you. And also, you know, I'm. A bit ashamed of other people who have sat on that side, who have only seen fit to trash you in the past several weeks. I think that is uh, unbecoming of anyone who has served. And is certainly unbecoming of, uh. Just any normal citizen. You know, I wish I could speak more forcefully, but I'm dodging bullets myself, as, as you may know. But once that's all over, I will, I will definitely have, uh. I definitely have more to say, but uh, you know, just know that not everyone out here is out to get you. Um, as Ms. Simmons said at the last meeting, you know, what you're hearing from here is usually a. Small minority of citizens, and uh, you know, most of us appreciate what you're doing. So, thank you.
Mr. Tucson? Good morning.
Now you guys see why I said you need to put a cap on some of the things that go around, you know? I'm sure none of you all up here. Were old enough to participate in the Vietnam War. So I will have to say, you don't know nothing about war. You don't know nothing about how war starts, and you know nothing about why war starts, and how war ends. So I'm gonna leave that one alone. But now, listen, I want y'all to understand one thing. I want you to pull your blinders off. I hear tonight that council says, we didn't know nothing about. That things gonna be put on the agenda. Let me tell you what, my grandpa, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a farm fella. We used to go in the barn and we see little droppings, and my grandpa would say, hey, boy. There's some rats in here. Now, for you all did not know anything about what was going on agenda, and I don't care who put it on there, don't make me no difference. But for you all not to know anything about it, know what that means? It means you have a rat in the barn. You hear me? Y'all hear me real good. You got a rat in the barn. And if you didn't know that was gonna be voted on, you got a rat in the barn. Now, when it comes down to, uh, uh, to city managers. I've been, I've witnessed several city managers in the city of Ypsilanti. Matt Hennessy, he was a black man. And Matt Hennessy was a Bojangles. He danced, he danced, he danced. Listen to me. And then when he finally figured that he should not dance, they got rid of him. Okay, Matt Hennessy. Then you had Bob Sloan. He was a white man, and he only dealt to that side, white folk. Then after that, you had Herbert Gilzard, and he only dealt with that side. Understand me? Then after that, you had Ed Caris and all. He only dealt with that side. But then you had Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane, a white man. He dealt with the black side, and he dealt with the white side. So I see Ypsilanti moved in a direction, a good direction like that. Now, watch this. I see Ypsilanti has got a black fire chief. He can deal with white folks, and he can deal with black folk. That's what you need. You got a police chief that's intelligent enough to know how to deal with white folks and black folks. You got a DPW director, she know how to deal with black folks and white folks. Now, wait, wait, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get my little minute. I'm gonna get my little minute. Now, selecting a city manager, you need to be real careful. As selected, I don't know why MML got knocked out the picture. But selecting a city manager, you got to be real careful in doing that. You know what you got. You got a, a, a interim here that know how to deal with black folks, and he know how to deal with white folks. You don't know what you're gonna get. So you know what? Y'all be very careful in selecting. I don't care who bring them to you. Be very careful, cause you know what you got.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you very well.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to laugh, but I might. Good evening, good morning, good night.
I just wanna say to all of you. I just wanna say to all of you, thank you so much. Your work is hard, but your work is meaningful work. And even though you don't all vote the same way, you're still our council, and we appreciate you. We pay attention, we listen. So continue to do the work that you guys are doing, because we appreciate you, and it's not easy. And I've sat here last time and this time, and it, it's, for me, it wasn't easy. And I cannot imagine what it must have been for you guys sitting up here and hearing and having to vote on things. So continue to do the wonderful job that you're doing. We're here in the community to support you, to support your staff. And we just want you to know that even though it's hard. You guys will all make the right decision in the end, even though everybody does not vote yes. Just know that. Thank you. Good night, good morning.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Is there anybody online?
There's one.
Alright.
Alyssa Newsom?
Hello, Council, um, Alyssa Newsom, again, can you all hear me okay? It looks like it. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank you for your time and commitment to the city of, uh, Ypsilanti and seeking it out again tonight. Um, I do wanna express my disappointment as a constituent for the rescinding of the resolution without a replacement being passed the same evening. I really don't fully understand all of local government processes, and I guess I don't understand why. An amendment could not be made or a decision could not be made today. And by rescinding the motion and not replacing it, um, and pushing it off to the next city council meeting, now there's an opportunity for. The goalpost to be shifted. And what I fear is that they're going to be more pro-Zionist. And I, and I wanna make a strong distinction between Zionist supporters and Jewish, who will continue to argue that the damage has already been done. And they will want more, and they will want more apology, and they will want more added, um. That a continued resolution calling for ceasefires, evidence of antisemitism. And there are also going to be people who are hurt on the other side, who fear that this sets a precedent. That this shows that people can show up and they can express tears and fears. And that means that the city, these will be walked back, um. And I'm not saying that there is an easy or clear solution here, um, and I thank you for all the work that you're doing and taking this very seriously. And revisiting it very seriously, um, but I. While I agree that, you know, it, it's reasonable to want to make some changes in, in light of hearing what your constituents have to say, that is very. Uh, noble and is in the spirit of the civil servant, I also just struggle to understand. Why the decision was made for rescission to revisit it another day. When it sounds like what you had in front of you is something that you all felt pretty good about, um. We had an abundance of public comment today, um. I just kind of confused, um, but thank you again, and, uh, have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom we'd like to speak? Press the raise hand button. Don't see any.
Alright, uh, oh, Councilmember.
I just wanna make sure what I requested is gonna be added to the next agenda. Being that Deseray supported it, or is that something I have to send an email for?
If it was supported by two council members, it would be on the next agenda.
But you both said different things, so if you wanna add something, I, you both did say something different. You wanted to talk about a specific. Situation, and I felt like Councilmember Simmons said we should revisit our rules.
Yeah, she did, but she said I support what I said. That's what I.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, the meeting is adjourned.